Ready to give. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, to the end of this world.
And our next item is the minutes of the meeting of July 26th. Do we have a motion? Great. Our next item on the agenda is our... Someone has not voted.
There we go.
Who? No. Who is this person? Our next item is Agenda Five, our Agenda Review, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Michael Powers.
Thank you, Chair Parks. Yeah, right. Oh, no, that's right. Item 16, healthcare agency. Approval of a contract to provide prosthetic and orthotic devices with R&amp;J. Prosthetic appliance revised Exhibit One has been submitted. Item 17, HCA. Approval of the establishment of four grant-funded position allocations for the chronic obstructive pulmonary disease access to community health grant. A board letter and Exhibit One have been submitted. Item 21, HCA. Approval to increase the aggregate contract amount for temporary nurse staffing services. Board letter's been submitted. Item 22, HCA. Approval of the First Amendment to the contract to provide additional linen services with Crothall Laundry Services. Revised board letter and Exhibit One have been submitted. In addition, Agenda Page Six was changed to reflect the changes in the board letter. Item 23, healthcare agency. Approval of the Second Amendment to the contract for reference laboratory testing services with Quest Diagnostic Nichols Institute. A board letter and Exhibit One have been submitted. Item 32, Department of Airports. Approval of the quitclaim deed to accept real property from the U.S. Navy. A PowerPoint's been submitted. Item 36, CEO's office. Receive and file the quarterly service recognition for employees with 25 years or more of county service. A board letter has been submitted. Item 37, Resource Management. Receive and file a report regarding short-term vacation rental units. A PowerPoint presentation and 16 comment letters have been submitted. Item 38, Fire Protection District. Approval of agreements for the consolidation of dispatch services with the city of Oxnard. Agenda Page Nine. Agenda title was changed to reflect that there are two separate agreements. Item 41, Public Works. Approval of plans and specification for the Fillmore Fire Station. Number 27. A revised board letter and a PowerPoint have been submitted. And there's an addendum agenda. They're all consent items. Item 45, HCA. Approval of the agreement to provide student health and dental services with California State University Channel Islands. Item 46, HCA. Approval for the purchasing agent to execute several purchase orders for various hospital services. And finally, item 47, healthcare agency. Approval of the agreement for VCMC Emergency Department Director and Attending Physician Services with Seaside Emergency Associates. And that's it.
That's it.
Yeah, other than that, no changes.
Okay. And does the board have any changes? If not, could we get a motion to accept the agenda as revised? We have a motion. And a second, if we could please vote on the revised agenda. Good job. That passes. I'll go on now to our moment of inspiration, Veteran Farmers of America. And we have Julie Sardoni and Mary Marrenville here this morning. These ladies are co-founders with Lawrence Parkhill, right? Is co-founder and Julie Sardonia Program Coordinator of Veteran Farmers of America. It's an organization that connects veterans to agriculture. VFA offers a paid two-week, 80-hour internship at a variety of local farms and agricultural facilities in Ventura County. And the veterans will gain on a hands-on educational experience exploring farming and agriculture as a potential vocation. And we know Mary here is also founded the Students for Eco-Education in Agriculture, CIAG, in 2008, an education program that provides kids and field trips to local farms to increase the understanding of food and the journey from field to consumption. And it connects our schoolchildren to the farmland in their own backyards, who are so fortunate to have here in Ventura County. And I don't see Lawrence here, but a decorated Combat Marine Corps veteran and currently a National Maintenance Support Manager for Mission Produce. So, welcome, ladies. Thank you so much for coming and helping to get our meeting on the way with some good inspiration.
Thank you. Thank you. I thank you, Linda, for that wonderful introduction, and I wanted to thank all of you this morning for inviting me, Peter, Kathy, Mike, Linda, Steve, and John. It is a privilege for me to be here. I will be talking about the inspiration behind Veteran Farmers of America, and Julie Sardonia will be talking too about the program. And I know we only have about seven minutes, correct? As you know, in 2008, I founded CIAG, which stands for Students for Eco-Education in Agriculture. In 2007, I was at a Christmas Eve party, and I met a young gentleman by the name of Lawrence Parkhill. And right away, if you know me, you know I ask questions that cut to the chase. And I was...noticed his very short hair at this party. And I asked him who he was, and he said, "I just got back from...I just was released from being a Marine." And I said, right away, I said, "How many people do you know that have died?" And he said, "11 personally, 33 in my battalion." And I could feel...he wasn't a broken person, but I could feel an extreme amount of pain from him. And I said, "I'm so sorry," and I hugged him, and I vowed to myself that I was going to help him one day. And in 2013, I saw the movie Ground Operations, which is about helping veterans find employment in agriculture. And it's by Delaney Ellis. I don't know if you've ever seen the movie, Ground Operations. Well, I saw that movie, and I was like, "Light bulb." And I called Lawrence and said, "What do you think about coming to Ventura County..." He lived in Temecula. "...about coming to Ventura County and starting a program with me?" And he said, "Okay." And I contacted 10 different CEOs in the county. One of them was Steve Barnard. He's not...I call CEOs a lot. They don't usually call me back. Steve Barnard, the first time he's...he called me twice that day. I was like, "Wow." I told him this idea, and he said, "Mary, this is something that I've been thinking about for a very long time." Lawrence came...he did a two-week internship at Mission Produce. After the two weeks, he went to Lehmanera. In that time that he was at Lehmanera, Steve Barnard called me again and said, "We want to hire Lawrence Parkhill and right now," as you know. So, my first person that went through the program got hired. So, I was like, "Wow, this is working." It worked a little too well because he was going to run the program. Since that time, I believe we've gotten up to about 15 veterans that have gone through the program. Some of them have said that it's the best thing that's ever happened to them. Our main purpose, our main mission, is to fit the veteran to the right...to the right farm. And so, that's the story behind Veteran Farmers of America. Lawrence and I, we wrote our first grant in 2013 together. It was at that time that I learned that he has two Purple Hearts and received a V for Valor, which is the V Device, which is one of the highest honors that a Marine or an armed service person can receive. So, I picked the right person to help, and I didn't even know that when I met him on Christmas Eve in 2007. So...Julie?
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, everyone. As the program coordinator, I've been working a year now. Mary hired me to be able to move the program forward. And my background is 23 years of a licensed marriage family therapist in Ventura County. So, I bring in a different level as well as trying to help heal our veterans, because I feel that's a huge aspect, as long...as well as bringing in employment, is to give them a place to heal and to be nurturers instead of destroyers. And this opportunity really allows our veterans, men and women, to come and learn a trade that's going to help give them a new opportunity for employment. As Mary said, we meet the veteran. I find...I interview them. We work out what was their military background, what are their current skills, what are their needs, what would they really like to do to make it a win-win. Then I find a local farmer who's willing to shadow or mentor, or an agricultural business such as Mission or Lehmanera or Gill's Onions, a larger corporation, and find what is the best match for the veteran and the farmer. And then they go into the internship. And like Mary said, so far, we've had nothing but positive experience. We have...I'm leaving here today to interview another veteran, and at the end of the day, I'm putting a veteran over at Craig Underwood's farm to do sales in their farmer's market. So, not only do they learn how to, you know, work organically in a farm, if that's their choice, but they can also do transportation. They can do sales. One young lady is waiting to start her internship at the middle of the month in accounting at a private farm. So, we need to really look outside the box and realize employment pathways for agriculture is huge, just like with our seniors, juniors and seniors in high school. Mary's really trying with CIAG to open the doors to allow these students to realize there's a huge, huge need for agriculture and agriculture business. And bringing these young children to schools, as well as these veterans who want to come back to school, now they'll have a purpose. They may want to go back to Ventura College, which will hopefully start up an agricultural degree again soon, and then go to our state schools, our UCs, and then come back to our county and say, "I have an ag degree in soil science now," or "I have an ag degree in sales," or "I want to come back and be an organic farmer and hopefully lease some land." As we know throughout the United States, our farmers are aging. You know, it's 58 and above, and they need help. They need to teach our young men and women who are coming home to our soil so that they can grow agriculture and produce on our soil to protect our...it's like food security. We need...we all eat. We all need to eat. And so, if we can provide that here in our community, in our county, then we can also do that throughout the United States. It is a farming movement. So, you know, on behalf of Veteran Farmers of America, we appreciate the time here. We are becoming our own 501(c)(3) anytime now with the help of Mary CIAG and her board. So, we're really excited about that. Lawrence and I are going to meeting various stakeholders in the county to, you know, help us move forward in that. We are writing grants and visit our website, and again, we appreciate...oh, we did receive our first grant, July 1st, from a San Francisco-based nonprofit that works solely for veterans called Swords to Plow Share. And it's a $20,000 grant to help outreach in the community and bring in more veterans to the program. So, we're really excited for that collaboration.
Wow. Isn't that...that is just a great story, one person meeting another and seeing how you can help our veterans. That is just wonderful, and I can think of someone to send to your program to help you guys too. So, thank you so much for coming this morning.
And Lawrence Parkhill couldn't be here this morning because he's working.
Excellent. Excellent.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Madam Chair, and Mary and Julie, I just want to thank you so much for helping our veterans. And it's really important that we get involved with the veterans, coming from a family of veterans and meeting a lot of veterans. And we just opened up a center out here on Rolston, and I just want to thank you for the excellent work that you're doing. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. My father was a veteran in the Korean War for Navy, as well as my grandfather and my uncle. So, I do have a personal heart for our veterans, and thank you, sir, too, for your service.
We started from the Second World War, and I have...my grandson is now in the Navy as we speak. So, thank you anyway.
And let me just...let me just say, I appreciate you also explaining all the different jobs, because a lot of people think, you know, "Veterans go farming. We're going to grow something." But there's, you know, CEOs and office managers and HR directors and accountants and mechanics, and there's so many other...just like any other business and product, there's a lot more that these veterans have the opportunity when you do that. So, I think that's...
Exactly. One of our latest...well, back in December, we got a call from a young man who had just lost his job, right before...you know, beginning of December. And he found us through Kim Evans, who you all know through the Ventura Military Collaborative, and she's a friend of mine. And she said, "Please help this young man." So, we met, and he just says, "I don't have time to learn how to work in a farm. I need a job. It's almost Christmas time. I have two young babies and a wife." And he is a, you know, a veteran. And I said, "That's just not right." So, I went to the HR department, and Lawrence at Mission, I said, "We don't have time. We need to get him in, like, now. Get me an interview." So, I got an interview with the HR department. With Paul, we worked together, and then we got...he got a second interview, and he went on his own with the two supervisors. They hired him right then and there. And he's been working since December full-time as the Dry Goods Supervisor at Mission. Full-time benefits, and his quote we used, because he said, "Tell everybody, this is the best thing that has ever happened to my family, for me, and I want to help other veterans be able to experience this too." And again, not everybody wants to be working on an organic farm. He's in production in Mission Avocados, and he loves it. So, I appreciate you saying that, Mr. Foy.
No, no. I think it's great, because a lot of people think, "Oh, well, veterans farm." Well, I'm not sure the guy was farming. It's just another product. I mean, it's like going to Apple, they make a phone. But they also have all the other kind of business requirements within that, you know?
An important element of this that I'm so glad that you're asking these questions because...an important element that I forgot to mention is that they were in the war because they wanted to do something for their country. That's it. They wanted to give service and protect their country. And being part of the food system now, it also makes them feel like they're doing meaningful work. And that's what this is...this is also important for them. It's really difficult to go...Lawrence fought in Fallujah. He was in the battle...in the Special Forces Marine Corps. So, you can imagine what he saw when he was there. And it's really hard to go from that, protecting your country, doing absolutely anything that was necessary to protect our country, and coming here and working at Walmart. Not that those jobs are not good jobs, because they are, but that...to go from that to that is difficult. But he, working in the food system, that's what he told me. He's like, "I feel like I'm still doing something meaningful for my country." And so, that's why it's such a good fit.
That's great. That's a great story, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, ladies. Thank you for coming. That concludes our moment of inspiration. I've been fully inspired. Item seven is our consent agenda items. And we...those are items 11 through 30, plus the additions from our addendum agenda. Mr. CEO, you have a comment?
I do, thank you, Chair Parks. I just want to mention, I see we have our co-director of the emergency room, Seaside Emergency Associates, Dr. Marty Erlich is here, and I just appreciate you being here. And I think I speak for Barry and Kim in saying, "We could not ask for better partners in our emergency room physicians, and Dr. Erlich, Dr. Robinson, and the whole group." And they run the ERs in both VCMC and Santa Paula, and this is...this contract is part of a very innovative billing partnership with them, and it just reflects the ownership that they take and the quality of care in our whole system. So, we're just very fortunate to have such great partners. Thank you.
For the record?
Yes, please.
Consent agenda items 11 through 30 and 45 through 47.
And if we could vote? And that passes unanimously. Now, go to public comments. And our first public comment speaker, Councilmember Bert Perillo from the city of Oxnard.
Good morning, Chair Parks, Board of Supervisors, and CEO. I'm speaking as a private citizen, but I am a councilmember for the city of Oxnard, and I also serve as the Chair of Ventura Regional Sanitation District. But again, I'm speaking as a private citizen. I was not able to attend last week, but I want to thank Board of Supervisors for the approval of the SCR III levy and the work that the county has done in that over the years, the involvement with the neighborhoods of Oxnard, specifically the Sierra Linda, South Bank, Windsor North, River Ridge neighborhoods, the chairs from those neighborhoods, Mr. Chuck Baumann, Dave Harris, Herb Smith, and the organization that was created when this issue first came to light, Flood Zone Justice Association. Mr. Powers, I want to thank you for the people that you've had in watershed protection over a number of years, the heads in watershed protection, and the excellent staff you have and what they've been able to accomplish. I would like to reach out also to my supervisor, Mr. Bennett. You allowed Flood Zone Justice to sit in on some hearings. Sometimes it was a little contentious. I remember a phone call with Mr. Barney Frank. It was...it all ended up good, and I want to thank you guys very much. I would also like very much to inform the public, when a small group of very motivated individuals, residents, citizens, whatever it is, are willing to stand up for their rights, put up some money, get an attorney. In this case, we got a Mr. Richard Tentler. Mr. Tentler got us in touch with PBS Television KCET. KCET had an air...a group called Southern California Connected, and they were able to research the information we had. They were able to find out that FEMA had made a mistake, but FEMA is connected with Homeland Security. And it was a small group of residents versus Homeland Security. The outcome was in our favor, and we were very fortunate. It was able to take out the entire Santa Clara River Valley from going in that flood zone. So, again, I just want to thank you all very much as a resident of Oxnard, as a councilman, the appreciation from my city...I'm not here speaking officially, the appreciation of my city with your involvement is tremendous, and your staff's work. Thank you very much.
Democracy works, and Bert is certainly very skilled at making democracy work. So, thank you very much, Bert.
And that's all we have for public comments. We'll go now then to our board comments. And Supervisor Aragosa, would you like to be first?
Yes, thank you so much. And I had the opportunity last week to attend Kathy Connell's retirement celebration over at the county yard. It was excellent. You know, there was good food and a lot of sharing from individuals that were there to thank her for her 26 years of service. And I understand that Dave Fleisch is really...he was wearing a black band...no, he wasn't. But anyway, he really going to miss her. And also, yesterday, I had the opportunity to go over to the ribbon cutting for the adult night reporting with the...with the probation folks, with Mark Varela. It's a reporting resource center on telephone road here in Ventura. It's excellent program, and we have a good company that's going to help us. It's CEO Reentry is the name of the company that's going to help us out, and it's just an excellent opportunity for our probation people to go out and report, and it's a multi-use center, which is, I think, really great. So, I'd like to commend the probation office and Mark Varela for their excellent work. And that's all I have, and I have...I'd like to adjourn in the memory of the folks on this list.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Bennett?
I'd like to adjourn the memory of the people on this list, and we're going to be dark now for a number of weeks, and I don't think that our firefighters are going to be dark for a number of weeks. I think it's as tough a fire season as I'm certainly been aware of. And it's really, you know, let's hope we have early rains, but it is going to get really dicey as the real Santa Ana's come up here and stuff. So, just want to thank our firefighters. I know they're going to be working a lot, and encourage our citizens to do everything they can. Normal fires that they've been able to contain in the past, it's much more difficult to contain those things. So, just good luck to you guys, and thank you for...thanks to Chief for doing a good job of keeping everybody posted. I'm trying not to respond every time you send a text, Chief, because if we all five respond every time you inform us of something, you're going to be overloaded just getting responses from us. But thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Supervisor Lang?
Yes, good morning. Thank you. I'm going to submit this list to adjourned memory. And just calling out one, Santa Paula resident Bill Orcut, William Logan Orcut, as he is known to many. He's a Santa Paula native, served as president of the Rotary Club. He is a member of many boards and committees, Santa Paula Historical Society, Museum of Ventura County, Santa Paula Theater Center, Santa Paula Elementary School District, Santa Paula Hospital, and Santa Paula Art Museum. Very much a community-engaged individual and loved by many. He'll be missed. So, that's the list. Had the opportunity to participate in the Women's Economic Ventures, WEAVE, and it was a fun event that took place last week and helped to raise some money for WEAVE, and that was fun, and I painted a lovely picture. I think it's in my bathroom. But it's a great organization. They work to start and build small businesses with women. They help 800 clients annually, help start 2,000 businesses in 25 years, and 81% of the self-employment training participants move out of poverty in 12 to 18 months. Excellent organization. Also, I also attended Taste of Camarillo. I was...I just was part of my job. But I do that because it is put on by the metalwork organization in Camarillo, and it's the 29th year of doing this. And the point to be made is that they raised $250,000 over the year in various things that they do. They have no staff. It's 100% money given back in scholarships into all of Ventura County. They do a great job. So, kudos to them. I want to also just say that the California Energy Commission was in town again to hear the Mission Rock Calpine Project proposal. They did a much better job organizing it, putting it in a bigger venue, having plenty of three interpreters, and over 300 folks participated. And I thought it was very well-run. They heard some wonderful...well, they heard some very genuine comments from the community about their concerns with the project, and they spent five hours listening. So, it was well worth redoing and doing it well. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Foy?
Thanks. Real quick, just adjourn the memory of the people on this list, and Steve, to all the rest of you, I called the chief yesterday, just to say thanks to you guys for doing a great job, and I know how hard everybody's working. I just want to say publicly, thanks to all you guys for making us proud. So, thank you, and enjoy the summer. We are going to be off for a few weeks, which is great. Thank you.
All right. I would just...it was delightful to go to see all the people at Kathy Connell's retirement, people from the past, but so many...so much of the public don't realize what goes on behind the scenes, but she has just played such an instrumental role in our...helping our transit system in Ventura County and the Canaan Shuttle out there in Oak Parks. We're all very appreciative. Let's see. Also, was able to go to the retirement of John Prescott, which has been a city planning director for the City of Thousand Oaks and longest-term employee, I think, over 44 years, and just a also incredible turnout to just see what a difference these staff members make in our community, and great that we recognize it and appreciate them. Also, attended the Emergency Planning Council, and we had a presentation of some repurposed military equipment that's going to be used to provide water transport in case of emergency. They got a big bladder that they can fill out, major trucks to carry the water. It was a nice example of how we can benefit from our tax dollars that would have gone to the military, but transferred back over to domestic use for something really important. I remind everybody, tomorrow starts the Ventura County Fair, so go out and enjoy the ocean air in the Ventura County Fair. With that, I ask that we close in honor of the people on this list, calling out one individual, Tony Lindsay. He served in the Navy during Vietnam and also a Coast Guard Reserve, and then went into working in the...as a maintenance supervisor, both for the Caneo Valley Unified School District and also the Caneo Recreation and Park District, a true public servant. Tony Lindsay will be very much missed. And with that, we'll then go on to our CEO's report. Mr. Powers?
Thank you, Chair Parks. Just real quick, I was able to attend the Gold Coast Health Plan's fifth anniversary and speak at it and express your boards and the county's appreciation for the work. You know, it's been a challenge and a bumpy ride sometimes, but here it is. It has 220,000 members now who are getting great care, and it was wonderful to see the 180 or plus or so employees who are there, and they're really, really just very committed and passionate about coordinating care. And we know how good they are because some of them used to work for the county, not that we're bitter, like Dr. Reeves, who's their medical director, and just great, great people there. And I want to thank your board... medical director, and just great, great people there, and I want to thank your board, and in particular, and Supervisor Long, for, you know, this was a journey that started 10 or 11 years ago, and to get this model, the single-plan coordinated model, and we see it working, you know, we see it working, so it was great, great to be able to attend that. I also attended Kathy Connell's retirement, it was neat to see the other cities and VCTC officials that were there, the countywide impact that she had. And then just lastly, I understand that there was a special day at the assembly yesterday when Assemblywoman Jackie Irwin, on the floor of the assembly, recognized our very own Supervisor Kathy Long for her 20 years of outstanding service and 20 years of advocacy for our county, but all counties statewide, and it was a remarkable day, as I heard, and it was a great luncheon held with many legislative leaders, including Matt Kate, the CSAC Director, and as well, apparently, according to Sue Hughes, Supervisor Long's longtime legislative advocacy partner up there. Many, many assembly members came over, former supervisors who had worked with Supervisor Long, and came over to congratulate her, and it was just a very special moment, well deserved.
It was nice, thank you.
Thank you.
Started the long goodbye.
Now you can transition on to the state, right?
Madam Chair, I'd also like to commend Kathy, because I've gone to CSAC meetings for about the last seven, eight years, and she's always been very instrumental in helping the county, and she was an urban caucus, you wouldn't have been in everything, right? What are you, by vice, vice president for this, or chair for that, and, but I want to thank you for the good work that you've done with CSAC, you know.
And with NACO and LAVCO and leadership roles and a lot of the state organizations and national organizations. And that concluded your comments, okay? Let's go then to our agenda item, our regular agenda, and we'll go to our Fire Protection District, item 38, and we have Chief Lorenzen here, pointing out this is two agreements.
Good morning, Chair Parks, members of the board, Mr. Powers, for the record, Mark Lorenzen, County Fire Chief. Item 38 is what I will enduringly call a passion project. It's been, really, this is the culmination of many years of efforts, and the reality is four Oxnard Fire Chiefs have all touched this, as well as me, and what I am before the board requesting today is really for us to regionalize our dispatch services for all fire and EMS. Currently, we, the Ventura County Fire Department dispatches for all of the fire departments within the county, with the exception of Oxnard Fire Department, and all of the ambulance providers, AMR, Gold Coast, and Lifeline. And what this will do is include Oxnard into our dispatch center, and really, what it ultimately does is it supports our county's strategic plan goal number one, and that is just the concept of good government. This is truly one of those hallmarks of good government and government efficiency in regionalizing this whole process. Probably one of the most important benefits that we are going to see from this is the true value associated with closest resource dispatching. This is where we blur jurisdictional boundaries, and we lose all the parochialism that used to occur in the past between, you know, different jurisdictions, because ultimately at the root is Mrs. Smith, and Mrs. Smith doesn't care if it's a red fire engine or a yellow fire engine, she really doesn't care who comes to help her when her husband's in need, just as long as it's the closest emergency responder. And that's exactly what this dispatching agreement will do, is it will recognize, and in part, we do that already, but it really will streamline it so that even with Oxnard Fire Department, it will be true reciprocity going back and forth over jurisdictional boundaries. This will eliminate our jurisdictional challenges that we currently have. Oxnard Fire Department is currently dispatched through their police department dispatch, having them under the umbrella of the one roof there eliminates virtually all of our jurisdictional issues and challenges. It doesn't eliminate jurisdictional responsibility. Those always stay with the agency whose jurisdiction it is, but the help and the timely response basically is improved, and also eliminates our, our challenges with communications, in that we will all be responding on a common set of frequencies, all coming out and being dispatched from one dispatch center. I did want to address very briefly an email that all of the board members received over the weekend from Mel Smith, who was a former Ventura County Fire Department employee and actually was instrumental in our current dispatch center and oversight of that, and the questions that he posed actually are, are really good legitimate questions, and interestingly enough, they're virtually the same questions that Mr. Powers and Scott Powers, our budget analyst, asked of me when I first approached them with this idea and the concept, and that was really asking me to come back and show them how the trade of services, because most of it's done through in-kind trade, and how it, it balances out, and so it's equitable for Oxnard and for the county. The, the one big item that Mr. Smith really didn't address in his questions is the value that we get from the potential of being able to relocate one of our fire stations. And just a little history, when the collection at River Park was developed, we used to have a county fire station there where the, I think it was the GSA or the Public Works Yard was. The developer relocated our Fire Station 51 to off of Vineyard, and Oxnard City actually conditioned a fire station to protect that new development, and it's kind of ironic, and it's just evidence of, again, goes back to those jurisdictional challenges and people not wanting to share services. They put two fire stations right next to each other, just off of Vineyard, so we have County Engine 51 and Oxnard City Engine 67, literally 50 feet from each other, and they both respond into our own jurisdictional areas, but in all actuality is the number of calls that that area could, or actually has, you know, the two areas combined could be handled by one fire engine. And so as part of this agreement, Oxnard has agreed that should we decide to relocate those resources from Fire Station 51 to someplace else in the county where they can be better utilized, they will cover that entire area for us at no cost. So that is an area that currently costs us $2.4 million to serve. And so that is the, the huge value that Mr. Smith doesn't recognize in his letter. He recognizes the $64,000 current agreement that we have with the City of Oxnard to cover Hollywood Beach for us, but it doesn't recognize that value and that leverage that's associated with that annual cost of $2.4 million. Now, I'm not proposing that we eliminate that expense, just that we basically repurpose it and put it in an area in the county where it can be better utilized. We are in the process of a service study with City Gate LLC, consultants doing a, basically a gap analysis for the entire district countywide, and that should help us point to an area where those resources could be better utilized. I think that was really the, the essence of Mr. Smith's questions that he had and the questions that I had to address and show the value to Mr. Powers earlier in the year before I brought this proposal before you. So basically, what we are asking for today is the approval of a couple of agreements and also three additional allocations. Bringing Oxnard under our umbrella will increase our call volume in there by approximately 23% now. The reality is, since we already dispatched for Gold Coast Ambulance, which accounts for probably about 70% of Oxnard's total calls, since that's the approximate percentage of medical calls compared to total calls, we already touch a number of those calls that we're gonna be taking on, but the workload involved with actually processing all those calls will increase, so we are asking and requesting those three allocations. So what I will do now is actually open it up to questions so I can better spend my time doing that.
Madam Chair, I, I just want to thank you, Chief. One of the things I think that's important for the board to know, and even Oxnard's, is that the dispatch, dispatchers are gonna be certified, medically certified, and I think it's important that people understand that, because somebody calls in and they're having a heart attack or whatever, those dispatchers can then share that information with the other person on the other side, and I think that's something that's really needed in Oxnard, is that correct, Chief?
That is accurate, yes.
And, and also you mentioned good government, because we have the mutual aid, you know, that, that helps on, for example, we have the two stations there on Vineyard and Simonway, and now that one Oxnard station's gonna stay there, is that correct? And they'll service part of the county area also, and that's, I think that's important. Mrs. Smith doesn't care if she's having a heart attack or with the family members, we're there, whether it's a red fire engine, a blue one, or whatever. I think it's important that we understand that we help each other, and I think you mentioned to me before, they also help over in Wanimi, in Wanimi Bay, and also if somebody's having trouble out at the ocean, somebody's drowning or whatever, instead of sending two fire trucks, you send one fire truck, and that's good government, supposed to sending two without realizing who's doing what. With a dispatch center, I think that's gonna take care of it, but I want to commend you for that. And if it was mentioned earlier, I want to thank the firefighters also for all the good work you've done with all the fires that are happening around us, you know, and as mentioned by the supervisors. Unfortunately, you know, we're just in the middle of summer, and that's gonna happen some more, but I think it's a good program. Thank you.
Supervisor Bennett?
This, this is right on the border of Supervisor Zaragoza, my district, so I know we both appreciate it. This, looking forward, this is really good government. It's unfortunate it's taken us this long to get to this, and that we have that, to Councilmember Parello, appreciate that this marks sort of a, a new change in, in that cooperation and taking us to another level, so thank you very much for moving good government forward.
Supervisor Foy?
No, I appreciate it, Mark, it's, you know, we hope it's the beginning of a lot more of these opportunities to look to see where we can do it. I mean, you got your own agencies, everybody wants their independence, there's no question about it, but if we can find these kind of things, I think it works, and just the idea that, I'm sure the public's looking at two fire stations right next to each other, it's, sometimes it's a little bit, it's tough, but, no, it's, it's great stuff, and again, hopefully we'll see more of it, so thank you.
Mr. Powers?
Just to echo the chief's comment about the value, you can see the value of this additional coverage and the fact that if, for some reason, and unforeseen reason, the city's unable to cover it in the future, there's a significant financial commitment by the city to, to pay the district to continue to cover those areas, so it's a very well-thought-out agreement, and very much appreciate the city fire and their partnership and the city in bringing this together, because when you're in that dispatch center, the fire, if you've seen it, all this big bank of TVs that you can see every response vehicle in the county for many years, the chief and others have, if only, you know, everybody could be in there, and now they are.
And Madam Chair, Michael says something important, if you have not seen the center over in Camarillo, it's just, it's fantastic, it's like a space-age center, really fantastic. You can see all the trucks at the different locations and how to dispatch from the closest area and so forth, so if you have not seen that, I think that's something to, to see.
Well, you know, the, the agreement says it reduces response times and improves emergency services for residents of both jurisdictions, I mean, that's, what more could residents want, to have reduced response times? And additionally, you look at good government being able to achieve this with both, both jurisdictions, I mean, that is exceptional, so I appreciate that. I think about, at the LA County line, we have a fire station right, you know, basically in the City of Thousand Oaks almost, you know, sitting there at Westlake, and, you know, that's a, a bigger line to cross, I realize that, but you realize you got resources there, and being able to have access and communication between them, and, and efficiency that you've achieved here is just remarkable, and it is a milestone, so congratulations. I can see where it took three fire chiefs of Oxnard's handprints on this one.
Well, thank you, thank you very much for the support. I'd also like to recognize and thank our partners with Oxnard City that are here today, and First Step Oxnard, Next Step LA County.
Yeah, that would be very cool.
And thank the councilmen for being here today, Parello, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
And it does save money, too. So with that, we have a motion. In a second, if we could please vote. Good job, congratulations.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is with our Harbor Department, item 39. And this is, after you've been to the Coastal Commission, you're back, right?
Yes, this is the normal trip back. Good morning, Chair Parks, members of the board, Mr. Powers. This is the very normal trip back after you in March, on March 22nd, just of this year, which is kind of a new thing with the Coastal Commission, adopted a Public Works Plan Amendment to allow for the replacement of the hotel. It was heard by the commission on July 14th, and as is the normal way, there are always modifications which then need to be accepted by the board by resolution. The most significant change, although we don't regard it as that significant, is that we were successful in, in arguing with the commission that because this was a like-for-like replacement of a hotel, that no in-loe fee was going to be required. We'd been working on that sometime before we even came before the board. Many times now, in fact, there are several hotels that are not being built, because if they're replacing a lower-cost hotel with an Intercontinental or something, there's a very significant in-loe fee that has to be paid, but in this case, because it's like-for-like. So, we had written protection into the Public Works Plan Amendment that you adopted, that if the hotel was ever converted, that it would have to be replaced, or the in-loe fee that was in place at the time would have to be paid, and they made some slight changes to that. I just want to make sure your board understands, it's a very unlikely event, or if it is likely, it's in the far distant future, because it requires significant change in the market, number one, and number two, this is an all-suites hotel, hotels are designed for a brand, and the room, I mean, the room shape, everything about it is designed for a brand, so finding another hotel that will flag you is very difficult. It generally requires a lot of reconstruction, so that would not be happening anytime soon. And the good news about that is, we just heard the end of last week, that Hyatt has approved this hotel for one of its Hyatt house members, so now that issue is resolved. The only other two issues are that equipment at the top of the building is limited to 10 feet, which is actually more than we thought we needed, so that's fine, and the others are just minor language changes that you've had, so we are asking for you to accept the modifications adopted by the commission. It was a unanimous adoption, so we're very pleased to be moving forward.
Madam Chair, I, I'd like to thank you, I think this is a textbook-perfect project, you know, as approved by the Coastal Commission, and there's plenty of opportunity for the community to, to share their, their comments, and I think that this is well-received, and in fact, some of the comments that we got is, how soon are you gonna open it? And the Casas Arena and the Lobster Trap, you know, are gonna be replaced and done, so I think it's extremely important that, that people understand that, it's just another project at, at the harbor, and we're looking forward to the other project soon. But I, I think you've done an excellent job, and I can't wait for the groundbreaking ceremony.
Me either. I can't wait for the demolition, that'll be first.
Demolition to start off, and also hopefully maybe we can have a little dinner then when we have the groundbreaking ceremony.
Yeah, I think, I think there's gonna be a soft opening for the board, that's what I've heard.
First, first, okay, but I want to thank you anyway.
Question that I have is, who gets the in-loe fee, and it's to develop more low and moderate-cost accommodations, is that?
Well, that's the other part of the argument we made, it is retained, my understanding is, it is retained by the Coastal Commission, but it's been difficult, given the cost of oceanfront land, to find takers who are able to develop, I mean, they're just, it would take a lot of subsidy to develop a lower-cost accommodation on, you know, in Newport Beach, for example. So, so there is money in the fund, but I don't believe any of it's been used yet.
So the Coastal Commission, as far as you know, would get that fund, is it something, then, that the county could apply for, or cities, for example, Oxnard could apply for?
Yes, yes, and there are some possibilities for the county with that.
And that could go to low-cost housing, for example, or just hotels?
Could go to low-cost housing, or, well, not to low-cost housing, it has to be coastal, but it could be visitor-serving accommodation, for example, we've been talking for some time about perhaps an RV park in the harbor on the east side, which, you know, since you can rent those vehicles or have a small vehicle that you haul, would be considered low-cost visitor accommodation, we could potentially apply for some help with that, on the Victoria side.
Okay. All right, well, this is, I guess, the way it's supposed to happen, right? Goes to the Coastal Commission, comes back, gets approved. Motion from Supervisor Zaragoza, second from Supervisor Foy, if we could all please vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hyatt builds nice hotels. Our next item is item 40, and this is from Supervisor Foy.
Yeah, I'd like to recommend we appoint Bill Saunders for the outreach, eventually semi, cemetery district. We really like the guy, really. I think he'll, he'll do good, thanks.
Okay. And he has to stay until January of 2019, he's locked in now. That passes, and we'll go to item 41, our last on the regular agenda, and this is with our Public Works Department and the Fillmore Fire Station.
Good morning, Chair Parks, members of board, CEO Mike Powers. For the record, my name is Chris Cooper, Deputy Director of Public Works Agency. I'm here before you today to ask for approval of the plans and specifications for the Fillmore Fire Station Number 27, and also for delegation of award to the Public Works Director to award the contract, construction contract to the lowest responsible. award the contract, construction contract, to the lowest responsible and responsive bidder. If the bids come in within 10% of our estimated, engineer's estimate cost of 83, or $8.3 million. Bid openings are scheduled for Thursday afternoon, and so we knew there was a break with the board, and so to keep the project moving forward, we're asking for that from you today. To give you a little background, back in January of this year, your board awarded the contract for the Newberry Park Fire Station. That station is a two-story facility that has, oh, three fire stations, six dorms, and it's currently, excuse me, it's under construction now, we're roughly 15% along. Here's a photo looking eastwardly, and you see the block wall, perimeter block wall going up, and on your right-hand side of the photo, you can barely see the rebar and the block being started for the station itself, the apparatus bay in the back of the site. And this is another photo looking towards the south, and the wall going up, and the building also under construction. All the fine grading has been completed on the site, and we're moving forward. So, before you today is the Fillmore's Fire Station, which has a theme, which is agriculture that fits well into the community of Fillmore. It's a large, one of our larger fire stations, and it's located here between the new, it's on the corner of C Street and River, which is between the new development and the stop along the 126th, and to the south of our site is the Fillmore Skate Park. Some of the features of the new facility at Fillmore includes nine dorms. There's three apparatus spaces for three of the engines, the big portion of this facility has a training and incident command center. The, I'd like to point out some of the environmental enhancements we made on this project for sustainability. We're installing a 26-kilowatt PV system that will be in the parking lot for coverage of some vehicles, with the option at the later time to install phototake on the apparatus bay, if that becomes a desire in the future, and we have funding to do that. And also, we've included multiple stormwater improvements on the site, which include cisterns, bioswells, pervious pavement, so basically, all of our rainwater will be staying on our site. And the landscaping is going to be native and climate-chosen plants, and fortunately, there's reclaimed water that's close by, so we've connected into that, so all the landscape will be watered through reclaimed water, which is important now that we're in a drought. I'd like to point out, the building is, exceeds code the board set before us to achieve 10% greater than the minimum building code, and we reached 30% on this facility due to the installation of the facility, venting, LED lights.
I have one question before you go to your next slide. Nine dorm rooms, are those single occupancy dorm rooms?
Yes, they are.
Thank you.
I guess since we've interrupted it, too, is this the first one, first fire station with a cistern?
Yes, it is. It felt, it came in nice, cisterns only capture the water when it rains, and it fit really well into, like I pointed out, the agricultural facility, it has kind of a barn style, so the cisterns on the outside really fit into the architect's.
Oh, so it's not, it's not underneath? The cistern's not under the building, it's?
We just chose to do that, yes. No, it's not a lead. Fire District, we build the lead silver, but we don't get the certification.
So, where is the cistern? It's, where is it located?
Supervisor Parks, I'm not exactly 100% sure, but there'll be down, there'll be down drains from the roof system that lead into the cistern itself, and then there'll be an overflow once it fills, if it's a heavy rain, and then it'll spill out onto the parking lot, and hopefully get absorbed through the pervious pavers. If it makes it past the pervious pavers, then it goes into bioswell, which hopefully additionally cleans the water and infiltrates it.
Really, kudos on the environmental design of this as well, speaking in with the community, but I would like in the future to hear how it works when we have rain. I would, I think it's a great model, we haven't, I can't think of any other county building that has incorporated one yet, so I'm delighted to see that. Thank you.
Thank you. This is, I apologize for this, it's kind of difficult to see, but this is the general layout of the facility, and here are the dorm facilities over here, apparatus bay here for the engines, general hangout area, I guess if you like to call it, for the firefighters is up on the north side, offices up over here. Yeah, it is.
You've got a few of them shaking their head behind you.
And then this is our entire site, 2.63 acres, that they'll be exiting out onto C Street here, and coming in through either, most likely this area here, and then this area will be used for the command center, which is located here in training area.
Mr. Cooper, how far are you from 126?
126, we're basically probably 300 feet.
Oh.
Yeah, I can go back Supervisor Zaragoza.
Okay. 300 feet, that's pretty close.
It's a good location because it's right by the business sector that's going to be developed, the new school, the residential, it's really an excellent location, and being that close to the 126.
This is 126 right here Supervisor Zaragoza. And there's a light right there for exiting, and this is the skate park right here, and there's a Catholic church right there.
That's pretty heavily traffic, I mean.
The C Street, no, C Street is, but 126 is, yes, and we're fortunate that we have singleization there, we've gone through Caltrans on this, so everything will be automated when the trucks leave.
That's excellent, thank you.
And lastly, I just wanted to bring the slide up to your, your knowledge is, we hope to be coming back before your board in the late fall to award the contract for the Ojai Fire Station 20. And that concludes my presentations. If there's any questions, I believe.
Another nice-looking building.
The residents here to answer any.
Supervisor Long?
I just have one.
I just say, we make pretty fire stations.
Yeah.
I was gonna say the same thing, I like your architects, they've done a great job of really making that stuff work, and I think the guys can, and people that are there can enjoy being in really nice facilities, and I think the community will like those looks, that's great.
Thank you.
And functional for the long term. The former fire station, which is off of, it's the other side of town, off of, it's not Guyperson, Telegraph, whatever, it's on the other side of Fillmore, asked about, they've been working on what to do with it because it has been a co-location with the Forest Service, so we're working the long-term lease so that we have that Forest Service co-location housed there.
Madam Chair, one quick question, Mr. Cooper, because it looks beautiful. So, how are people going to know it's a fire station?
Excuse me?
How are people going to know it's a fire station? Good sign?
There'll be a signage on it, there'll be a light.
For emergencies, you know.
For emergencies only, correct. Not for our skateboarders when they get hurt to come on over to be attended to, hopefully not.
And they, in addition to being green and nice architecture, they really fit in with the environment, too. That's looking like the Newberry Park one, looks kind of industrial, but hey, it's right in the middle of industrial area, you know, this would not, you know, a little farmhouse would not look right there, so.
Yeah, I think with the guidance of the Fire District, the chief and his staff, I think all the fire, our fire stations now are kind of really fitting into the community. Ojai will be more of a craftsman-style looking facility, this one is more agriculture, so yeah, I think through the vision of the chief and his staff, we're doing a good job on that.
And again, Madam Chair, just to, appreciation to the chief and his staff and everyone for working on this closely with the city of Fillmore, as you know, they have their own service, but we have a great relationship with them. The volume of business in this part of the community can escalate quickly, whether it be wildfires, or the fact that the 126 is heavy traffic and incidents that occur there. With the growth that's going to occur in northern LA County, with both housing and commercial, and just the growth in that area, we expect there will be even more activity in the valley, so I think it was a good move to build this and to move out of the former site and have this right on this corridor, and it's an excellent project, so certainly very supportive of it, thank you.
We did hear the cheering when you came up, right? A lot of cheering. Okay, with that, we?
Madam Chair, you have a speaker.
I have a speaker, Mr. Perillo.
Hello again, Madam Chairman. I'm just wondering, I did not hear anything about, is the building solar panel equipped? Having just come back from Philadelphia and having the tour bus explain how the Philadelphia Eagles football field is able to generate their own power with some minimal wind turbines on the roof, and the entire facility covered with solar panels, I don't see anything that appears to be a solar panel, and I'm wondering if somebody can answer that, because I think thinking in the future would be a good idea to put that, especially they get a lot of sun in Fillmore.
There are solar panels on the carport, but it's not as much solar panel as we could have, correct?
Yes, Supervisor Bennett, there are solar panels, we have a 26-kilowatt system there, which is located on the carport, which will be located here. The 26 kilowatts equals about 48% of our electric use for the facility, will be covered by the panels. At the time, we haven't chosen to do more panels, due to cost on it, but there are options to put it on the apparatus bay if the district chooses to add additional panels when funding's available.
Do we get credit for that? Are we still under the credit, Mike, under, you know, from, okay, so that's 48%, it's very significant, then? Yep, good.
Did you want to comment? Any other comments, questions? No.
Motion.
Motion in a second. And I believe that concludes our regular agenda, we have till 10:00 AM until we come back for our time-certain meetings.
We know they work in there.
So, let's go ahead and move to closed session.
and monument to commemorate those who lost their lives as a result of the collapse of the St. Francis Dam on March 12th. Congresswoman Brownlee has cosponsored this legislation with Congressman Knight. It has passed the House, referred to the Senate Committee, and it commemorates this tragedy, and we now have a couple of PowerPoints, so you can see what, the importance of this. The St. Francis Dam is registered as a California Historical Landmark, Number 919. However, there's been no federal recognition of the event or the devastating loss of life that occurred. Two and a half minutes before midnight on March 12th, 1928, the St. Francis Dam catastrophically failed. The exact number of victims remains unknown. The official death toll in August of 1928 was 385, but the remains of victims continued to be discovered years later. Many victims were swept out to sea when the flood reached the Pacific Ocean and was never, and were never recovered, while others were washed ashore, some as far south as the Mexican border. The collapse of the St. Francis Dam considered to be one of the worst American civil engineering disasters of the 20th century. The Santa Paula Historical Society commissioned the warning. It's a sculpture that is on display at the corner of 10th and Santa Barbara Street in Santa Paula. It's a steel sculpture by Eric Richards to speak to the heroism of Luis Gipe, a night operator in Santa Paula, who relayed two police officers, who relayed two police officers, Thornton Edwards and Stanley Baker, who were motorcycle officers who rode through the night to warn sleeping residents about the devastating floodwaters that were coming through the valley. The St. Francis Dam collapse is a story of destruction and grief, and a story of hope, courage, and heroism. There's a poem written by Ron Pinkerton in 1979, 50 years after the collapse, reflected the only witnesses left today are some pieces of concrete, weathered and gray. They are the stones that mark the site of the chain of events on a cold spring night. Yes, the effects of a disaster have long been gone, but the St. Francis legend will always live on. And this map depicts the area to be protected, and that the Congresswoman has led the way to recognize this, to designate it, and to honor these folks, and I'm very pleased to invite up, to speak to us, Congresswoman Julia Brownlee. Good morning.
Good morning. It's really wonderful to be here with all of you this morning, and I first wanted to thank Chairwoman Parks and all of you for your extraordinary leadership, making Ventura County such a wonderful, wonderful place to live and work, so thank you very much for your leadership. And I am a proud, proud co-author of this legislation, as Supervisor Long mentioned, with Congressman Steve Knight. We have been working to build a bipartisan support for this legislation in Congress, and as you know, the bill passed the House of Representatives on July 5th, and it will establish a national monument honoring the St. Francis Dam disaster. The St. Francis Dam was designed and built between 1924 and '26 by engineer William Mulholland to provide a water reservoir for the rapidly expanding city of Los Angeles. The dam was located in Los Angeles County about 10 miles north of what is today the city of Santa Clarita. Tragically, three minutes before midnight on March 12th, 1928, the dam suffered a catastrophic failure. The massive wall of water crashed down the canyon, turned west along the Santa Clara River, through Ventura County. Five and a half hours later, the torrent of water reached the Pacific Ocean. In its wake, many towns across Los Angeles and Ventura Counties, including the communities of Piru, Fillmore, Santa Paula, and Saticoy, were left totally destroyed. Hundreds of Ventura County residents, men, women, and children, perished in this disaster. Entire families were gone. As the wall of water swept westward, some area residents rushed ahead, trying to warn residents in low-lying areas. California Highway Patrol Officers Thornton Edwards and Stanley Baker crisscrossed streets on their motorcycles, wailing their sirens to alert residents. And telephone operators, including Louise Gipe in Santa Paula, and Riesel Jones in Saticoy urgently called as many residents as possible. The St. Francis Dam disaster was a story of epic loss for many families and business owners in Ventura County and Los Angeles County. However, it was also a time when our county pulled together to rebuild and to recover homes and businesses. The dam's failure also led to significant engineering improvements, as the lessons learned from this horrible tragedy were used to build better dams across our nation. As Ventura County's representative in Congress, I believe that it's very important for our nation, our entire nation, to remember and honor the victims of disaster, and to commemorate this significant part of our regional and national history. The St. Francis Dam disaster is the second-largest disaster in terms of lives lost in California, second only to the 1906 San Francisco earthquake. Yet, this major historical event remains unknown to many of our area residents. I am hopeful that the creation of a national monument will not only help to educate Californians about this chapter of our history, but also honor those who lost their lives and the heroes who tried to save others during the disaster. Again, I thank you again for this opportunity, and look forward to a very positive vote moving forward on this, and moving forward certainly in Congress, we still need to move this through the Senate and get it signed by the President, so thank you very, very much for your support.
Thank you, Congresswoman. Any comments on?
I just want to thank you for your, thank you for your work that you're doing.
I want to thank you for your, thank you for your work that you're doing for us in Ventura County, and you continue to do a lot of good work in not only this monument, but also with the veterans and all the work that you do for Ventura County. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Zaragosa. Thank you.
Supervisor Bennett?
I was mentioning that, I want to say it was a couple of years ago, that the Santa Paula Oil Museum, now called the Santa Paula Museum, actually did, ran for a couple of months a full display of this tragedy and what occurred. And that did lead to raising the monies for the sculpture that now sits in the park. And so there's still a lot of family history in Santa Paula, and I think certainly Fillmore and certainly Piru too, of this disaster. So it's wonderful that you've stepped up to recognize this and work with Congressman Knight to carry this forward. And I certainly with our support, we hope we can get it through the Senate and it receives that recognition. And then I'm sure there'll be a coalition of folks who'll come behind to see, okay, now how do we memorialize this?
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Bennett?
I'm sure that the painfulness of the event is one of the reasons why people didn't do a more proper recognition earlier. And now is the time, before it gets too far down the road, now is the time. So we really appreciate your step forward to this. Thank you very much.
It is something that doesn't, a lot of people don't know about. And when you think about Mulholland's legacy, very few know of this part of that too. But I think if you haven't seen already, the entrance hallway into our Public Works Department has these huge photos of this particular disaster, the newspaper accounts and all. This substantial tragedy in Ventura County.
I heard Mulholland's niece talk about this at a Calafco conference.
Christine?
And she's, he stepped down after this incident and was, obviously it impacted him severely. So it never was the same. So tragedy all the way around on this. But, and I always appreciated our Public Works putting that display up in the hallway and the pictures. And you see them and you think about being sound asleep at midnight.
That's right.
And starting to get these calls and this warning. And, you know, the most of that valley has such, today even, such flat lands. And so to think of that flood coming through in five hours.
Yeah. I believe the engineers, some engineers had identified that it was starting to crack and just no one moved to fix it.
One thing that happened to a lot of families who were affected from, all the way from Piru to Oxnard, you know, Ventura, and, you know, family members.
Well, the entire county. I can't imagine as a board member.
That's right.
What had to take place in responding to this. Anyway, so.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I move the recommended action that we do support the efforts here in the legislation.
Okay, that passes. We'll go to our next agenda item.
Thank you.
Yes, item 32. And this is a quitclaim property with the Navy. Hi, Mr. McNamee.
Good morning, Chair Parks, members of the Board. Todd McNamee, Director of Airports. This is an item to accept land being transferred from the Department of the Navy back to the county of Ventura through special legislation. In 2010, the Navy vacated a parcel of land at the Camarillo Airport Business Park, measuring just over four acres. Working with a team of talented people, we're here today to accept the quitclaim deed for the parcel to be used for future development on behalf of the Department of Airports. There was no cost for the land, although the Department of Airports did pay $91,000 for an environmental condition report. A couple of items were discovered along the way, some asbestos-lined pipes and some contaminated soil. Both of those items we have dealt with in the past at the airports. We're not concerned. We're confident we can move forward with development. And then just to put it in perspective, this four acres of land, if we were leasing it out today at today's rates, would generate just over $200,000 a year in revenue for the airport. So I wanted to take a quick moment to recognize and thank a team of people that helped make this happen, some of whom are here today. From the Department of the Navy, Kathleen Mallory, Rebecca Kelly, Diane Bentley, and Amanda Fagan, just over here. From our Federal Affairs Team in DC, Tom Walters and Don Gilchrist. From the CEO's office, many of the staff, but specifically Sue Hughes. Public Works Real Estate, Keith Villagarde. Department of Airport Staff. And certainly, last but not least, someone who is mentioned by you supervisors, has been championing many things in our county and certainly been a champion for aviation issues, Congresswoman Julia Brownlee and her talented staff. The Congresswoman actually sponsored House Bill HR 1581, which made this all possible. So I was hoping she would say a few words.
Thank you, Todd. I appreciate it. And again, thank you to all of the supervisors for the opportunity to speak today. And I just wanted to add that Todd, there's not a better advocate for aviation than Todd McNamee. He does an extraordinary job. Many of you know that I now serve on the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee in Washington, DC. And so I have a lot of advocates. I sit on the Aviation Subcommittee. So I have a lot of advocates across the country that come and talk to me. There's not a better one than Todd. So it's a joy to work with him and look forward to future opportunities. And as Todd said, 2010 was an important year because that was the year where the Department of Defense vacated property right here in our Camarillo Airport Business Park. The property was formerly part of an Air Force Base and more recently owned by the Navy. In vacating the property, the Department of Defense had demolished the structures and announced that it no longer needed the land, so the property was sitting vacant. Since the federal government no longer needed the property, its location was really ideal for further economic development and for expanding business opportunities at our airport. As I said, working with Todd and the Airport Department and working with a great, great team, I introduced legislation to transfer this land to Ventura County. And my staff and I worked very closely with the Chairman and Ranking Member of the House Armed Services Committee. And I was, we were able to incorporate the bill that I carried into the National Defense Authorization Act of 2014. So the bill became law in December of that year. And I was so pleased that my very first bill that I introduced in Congress actually became law and would help to grow our local economy here and expand jobs throughout Ventura County. I really do view everything I do in Congress through the lens of how it will create jobs and grow our economy, from our ports, to our large and small businesses, to our naval base, to our agricultural community. I strive and work really hard every day to advance federal policy that will support our diverse job creators in the county. Our local general aviation airports contribute over $300 million annually to our economy. I know all of you know this very, very well. Our airports also support more than 2,500 jobs in our region. The transfer of this federal land to the county will generate over $200,000 in additional revenue for the county. It will also provide opportunities for local aviation businesses to grow, to expand business opportunities, and to create more jobs right here in our local community. I'm honored to be a partner with the County Board of Supervisors in helping to grow our economy and support businesses here in Camarillo and throughout Ventura County who will benefit from growth and opportunity at our local airports. I'm also so pleased that the deed formally transferring the federal property to the county is being accepted, I hope, accepted today by the Board. And I look forward to our continued work together on behalf of our mutual Ventura County constituents. Thank you again, really, for this opportunity to join you. And again, I just can't emphasize more how much I appreciate each and every one of you individually and collectively for your extraordinary leadership to make Ventura County a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful place to live and work. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Congressman, I want to thank you again for your excellent work. And every time we go to DC, your door is open. You help us out with RDP 21 when we go to DC, you know, to save our bases out here. The, what do we have, about 20,000 employees, a $2 billion budget, the airport authority, the harbor, you know, the dredging, helping the city of Port Winnieby, and many other things that you do. So I just want to thank you for your excellent work for, again, for the county of Ventura.
It's a truly a team effort.
That's right.
And with extraordinary staff that helps and assists to make all of this happen.
And I want to thank your staff because they're very, very good. Whenever we call your office, they're very responsive too.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Also extend appreciation and working closely with our administrator. This is a key piece of property. We have a successful business park there. It really helps with the public-private relationship on this property that keeps our airports healthy. And this will be a significant link in that. So thank you so much for your work on it.
Thank you.
Mr. McNamee, can I ask a question?
Sure.
The four-acre site has had tanks underground. And I'm just wondering, it talks in the report about that if contaminant, contaminated soil is discovered, it will be dealt with at that time. The contamination you're looking at is potential from a petroleum?
Yeah, so they had four 500-gallon tanks underground in that location. I think it ran a boiler system that provided heat to a lot of the facilities there in the park. And there was some contaminated soil discovered during the removal in 1989. The site was deemed clean and closed in 1992. So we don't anticipate anything, but we've experienced this before where it's deemed closed and clean, but when you're digging, you find contaminated soil. And it's just a matter of disposing of that soil properly, handling and disposing. And we've dealt with that before, so we're confident. If it does occur, it won't be a big issue.
Not too much expense?
Yeah.
And I hate to ask too, but have we done any radiological testing there too? Because I know we have had some spots at the airport, right?
We have, but this isn't a location on the airport that was used by the Air Force for some of those other programs. This was barracks, buildings, and things like that.
Okay.
Todd, if I could just ask you, I appreciate you guys working together to get this done. Land that just sits, that has no value and it doesn't produce anything. So is, do we have anything left on the airport that we're, that she needs to work on or what?
So I'm glad you bring that up. There is one more parcel we are actually hoping to do simultaneously that Department of Homeland Security owns directly adjacent this one that they've vacated recently. We tried to work with them just locally and we're having a tough time. But we may bring that one forward sometime in the future, but right now, we're really excited to be accepting this deed today for 4.34 acres.
That's a tremendous amount of land right there. So that's great.
One piece at a time.
For both of you, thank you.
Good work, Todd.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. That passes unanimously. Thank you, Congresswoman.
Thank you.
We'll go now to item 33. And this is a special resolution recognizing a special lady on her retirement. And I'll send it to Supervisor Bennett.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And it's a real pleasure. We have a resolution and we have Mr. Goodwin here to recognize and honor Mary Garcia, 39 years of service to Ventura County. So Mary, would you mind coming up to the podium so that everybody can feast their eyes on you while we do the talking? I'm going to read this resolution, Mary, and then we'll turn it over to Mr. Goodwin to continue the appropriate ceremony, recognizing your retirement. This is a resolution of the Board of Supervisors honoring Mary Garcia for 39 years of dedicated service to Ventura County. Whereas Mary Garcia was born in Oxnard, California, raised in Ventura County, and graduated from Santa Paula High School in 1975, continuing her education and attending Ventura College and UCSB. Mary began her career with Ventura County's Assessor's Office on October 6, 1975. As an office assistant, she later moved into the Appraiser Series, receiving eight promotions to her current position as Lead Senior Appraiser. Mary married her husband Fred in 1982, and I believe Fred is here. All right, there we go. Thank you, Fred. Having her son Freddie in 1986 and her daughter Victoria in 1988. Mary worked in all major sections of the Assessor's Office, beginning in document control and the Appraiser Job Series. She worked in all valuation divisions, residential, rural, commercial, industrial, boats and aircraft. During her 39 years, Mary worked for six assessors, Ed Schreiner, Lee King, Jack Waterman, Jerry Sanford, Glenn Gray, and Dan Goodwin. And Mary has proven to be a highly valued employee. Her ability to coordinate and work effectively has served the Assessor's Office well. Mary's longtime service and her wealth of knowledge makes her a very versatile and reliable employee and leader. The quality of Mary's work is consistently at a high level, which has contributed to the successful completion of 40 assessment roles. Mary diligently tackled new assignments and demonstrated what it takes to excel as a lead appraiser. Over the course of her career, Mary took a major role in the important task of workload review, handling not only her assignment, but always willing to help others. Because of Mary's knowledge of assessment and appraisal, she is one of the few who processes specialized assessments such as Proposition 58, 60, 90, 110 Assessment Exclusions, eminent domain, calamities, affordable housing, track bonds, and assessment appeal closeouts. With her knowledge and through her special assignments, Mary acted as a liaison between the Assessor's Office and the other county departments. Mary provided training and mentoring to many appraisers over the course of her career, motivating and inspiring them, as well as instilling confidence in the taxpayers through her competence in explaining property tax laws and rules. Through her example, Mary contributed to a culture of teamwork, which included the morale of the office through her work on the Office Social Committee, SOLAR, planning retirement parties and office-wide events. During her 39 years, Mary contributed to the success of many changes in the business practices, which included the introduction of Proposition 13, the supplemental rule, and advances in office automation and technology changes, always maintaining a high level of professionalism. So before I read this last thing, Mary, 39 years of having somebody just steadily just get better and better and more and more competent is exactly the kind of service that we've come to expect in Ventura County because of people like yourself. So I want to personally say thank you. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors takes great pleasure in honoring Mary Garcia for 39 years of dedicated service to the Ventura County's Assessor's Office and the citizens of Ventura County. Presented this the second day of August 2016. Thank you very much, Mary. Mr. Goodwin?
Thank you Supervisor Bennett, and good morning, honorable members of the Board, Mr. Powers. It's an honor to celebrate Mary Garcia. She is a fabulous example of what every, every department head would love to have as a person that was on their team. She's helped six assessors be successful in their, performing their duties. But in a bigger way, two things I want to point out about Mary, both her professionalism and her perseverance. There are many things about her life and her character that people love and appreciate. And the example she's been through, through the years in the Assessor's Office has benefited many of our employees and certainly the ones that are newer. I know she's mentored many and their abilities and their performance in the years ahead are going to be superior because of the contribution that Mary put and the fingerprint she has on their life. As Supervisor Bennett read, a lot of her professional experience and all has shown itself in many ways. But what a lot of people would never see is her perseverance. Mary is a person who's productive because she has an internal drive to do well. She has a pride that says, I want to do well. I want the things that I'm a part of to succeed. I want those around me to succeed. I want everybody to be better as a part of me. And when she's had some health issues over time and she had to work through those challenges, she would persevere and always is a person that could do, did way more than she even gave herself credit for. And so it's, and then one last one I want to talk about is her perseverance on behalf of taxpayers. it's, and then one last one I want to talk about is her perseverance on behalf of taxpayers. She's had the opportunity to have hundreds of taxpayers send letters saying, "Mary's a wonderful person." She would help, you know, there's a situation that some of you have heard about from time to time where a property owner in their later years will buy another residence, they want to transfer their base year value, and there can be some complications and things. Mary is one of the key people that I could always count on to lead that process, to make sure it was done right. And on occasion where somebody would apply and their circumstances did not fit the legal requirements, she would handle the difficult job of explaining to them what the law is and how that went. And when it was all done, they still would appreciate Mary, even though the outcome wasn't the one they had desired. You know, it would take all day to just go through the reasons to appreciate her, but I can assure you, she's a fabulous person first, and then she's also a fabulous person to have as an, have had as an employee these 40 years at the Assessor's Office. Thank you, Mary. You've done a wonderful job. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Mary, we'd like to hear from you after 39 years.
I don't know. You know, Ron here seems to think that I can't do this without crying because I'm not a great speaker, but thank you, Supervisor Bennett, members of the board, CEO, Mr. Powers. I'm going to have to read it, but here it goes. Dan Goodwin once asked me to prepare a speech for someone else, and I remember looking at him and saying, "No way. There's no way. I can't do that. I'm not comfortable speaking in front of crowds." And he looked at me and he said, "If you just speak from your heart, you're going to know exactly what to say." So, here it goes. So, they say that life is not measured by the breath we take, but by the moments that take our breath away. Well, I have to say that this is definitely one of those moments. Being able to stand here before the board after 48 years of service to the county of Ventura is not only breathtaking, it's surreal. I blinked and it happened. When you work for one office your whole entire career, it's not only your place of employment, but it's your other home and your other family. I have worked for six assessors. I have closed 40 assessment roles, and I've seen the best of the best, which made me work harder since I wanted more, and I've seen the worst of the worst, which made me realize how truly blessed I am. Since I have added millions and millions of top dollars to each assessment role I closed, I thought maybe this would be a good time to ask for one last raise. Maybe a small percentage of what I added to the role could be added to my retirement check when I leave. I take pride in saying that I have always given my all to the county of Ventura and its taxpayers. To say that I'm grateful for the opportunity doesn't even begin to express my gratitude. I have not only been able to earn a living, but was able to make my life. Since starting with the county 41 years ago, here are a few of my life's breathtaking moments. Of course, marrying my husband Fred and my best friend, Fred in 1982, having my son Freddie in 1996, buying my first home in 1987, having my daughter Victoria in 1988, tuition payments for private schools for both my kids as they were growing up, college tuition for my son Freddie who graduated from Channel Islands University, college tuition for my daughter Victoria who graduated from UCLA. Then, if that wasn't enough, she went on to get a double master's studying abroad from the University of Maryland and the University of Malta, which is on a small island off of Italy. Now, that didn't take my breath away. I know it took our money. So, then, the birth of my first grandchild, Elijah, in 2012. With as much joy that it has given me to be able to say I am retiring, it is also bringing me that much sadness. Will I miss this place? Of course I will. My profession has been a huge part of my life. It has molded me into who I am today. I started straight out of high school and with the support of the county have been able to make my life. If you ask me today what my biggest accomplishment in life was, I would tend to want to believe that most people would say it's my job. Although it's close, it came in second. My husband, children, new grandbaby, and my family are my biggest accomplishment in life, and I feel so blessed to have been able to make that, feel so blessed to be able to make them now my first priority as I head out to my retirement and to create more breathtaking moments and memory. And for this, I thank you.
Madam Chair, Mary, thank you so much. And I thank Fred too for allowing you to work with the county for so many years. And I hope that maybe you trained quite a few people to do the job that you did for many, many years, and I think this is extremely important. And you probably saved a lot of people a lot of money, and you also generate a lot of money for the county. So, thank you so much for your good work. And sounds you had outstanding family too, you know, and well-educated kids. And thank you again for, there's 39 out there, but you're saying 41, so you probably started two years that Mr. Goodwin didn't give a credit for.
Maternity leaves.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Mr. Goodwin's already spent that assessment. Let's present you with this resolution, Mary. And Dan, will you come up and join us for our pictures? And then, we're going to have your family come up after this. We're going to do that.
Well, let them take photos, and then we have a couple more comments here at the board.
In a second, a few more comments.
Go ahead.
Well, thank you, Jim Parks. Just thank you. Boy, if you can get compliments from taxpayers who are paying taxes at the same time, that's good customer service. And also you talk about perseverance. I never even heard of this one. If you can process exemptions related to calamities, that shows a lot of perseverance. But really, more than anything, I just wanted to thank you for your service, your skills that you've developed, and as Dan touched on, the office culture. Those are hard things to measure, but they make such a difference, right? That's the joy of coming to work and building that positive culture, and you can see how you built it. So, with that, I would just say thank you to you and your family for committing 40 years of service to our county and making it so much better. Thank you.
I too just want to say thank you for your long-term service, your professionalism. I hate, you came up here and I'm thinking, you should be smiling, but now that you are, and it is a momentous occasion, another momentous occasion in your life, but thank you so much for your service.
Thank you.
So, are you retired?
Yes.
With his family and then what are going to do with several employees, your family members, if you come up for a moment?
One for you, John.
Most stations close up, you know, follow the floor.
One of the staff, would you come down?
Thank you for letting her do it.
Thank you very much.
Enjoy your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next two items on the agenda are both from Supervisor Bennett, and so we will pause for a moment.
Coastal Area Council Youth of the Year, Sarah Ruiz, and the 2016 Overall Boys and Girls Club of Greater Ventura Youth of the Year, Sarah Ruiz. So, Sarah, thank you very much. I'm going to read a little bit about you, and then I would like the board members to be able to hear your presentation that you have been making that has allowed Sarah to win this great distinction. Sarah began attending the Boys and Girls Club of Ventura at the age of six. She soon distinguished herself as an outstanding club member and role model for other youth. Sarah is an A student, carrying a challenging and advanced curriculum at Foothill Technology High School in Ventura, where she'll be a junior next year. Sarah's contributed countless hours of volunteering at the Boys and Girls Club, where she organized the files of new members, enhanced the organization of the Transportation Department, and generally made herself an invaluable member and leader of the club. Sarah's strong commitment to the Boys and Girls Club and what it does for youth, her dedication to helping other youth succeed, her taking under her wing club members with medical conditions or other challenges, have all distinguished Sarah as a remarkable young woman who cares deeply about helping others. Sarah competed in the 2016 Boys and Girls Club Youth of the Year competition, and on the strength of her public speaking, interview, and accomplishments, Sarah was selected as the 2016 Boys and Girls Club of Greater Ventura Overall Youth. Sarah went on to compete at the regional and state levels, winning the five-county 2016 Coastal Area Council Youth of the Year Award, and from there, competing at the state level, where she had lunch in the governor's office, met with Senator Hannah Beth Jackson to discuss the importance of after-school programs, and later toured Harvard University with Other Youth of the Year. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors congratulates and commends Sarah Ruiz upon being selected as the four-county 2016 Coastal Area Council Youth of the Year and 2016 Overall Boys and Girls Club of Greater Ventura Youth of the Year. Presented this the second day of August 2016. So, you've had quite a journey here. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And we look forward to both hearing your speech, and I'll come down then, and we'll have a picture and present this resolution to you. Thank you very much.
Good morning. First of all, I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to share my story with you guys. Ever since I was a little girl, I remember my childhood taking place through the club walls. I remember the excitement that would fill my stomach as I got off the school bus and entered the clubhouse. I have been attending the Boys and Girls Club of Greater Ventura for nine years and counting. I started coming here as a shy little girl at the age of six, along with my brother and two sisters. My grandma sent all four of us here for multiple reasons, and I am so glad she made this decision. I can honestly say that this organization has shaped me into the young woman I am today. It has provided so many opportunities that are very hard to come by. I would have never thought that this building could supply a lifetime of happiness, provide structure and safety in my life, which I needed. As my middle school years came, so did all my problems. Since my parents were always under the influence of some type of substance, it caused violence and broken relationships in my family. I was still coming to the club, but I stopped embracing as much as I had earlier. Those three years were terrible for me because I was dealing with the repercussions of my parents' choices. These events started to show through my grades, but the staff always pushed me to try harder. They have always taken notice of my potential and knew that I was not doing the best of my ability. Even though my grades started to improve, my attitude had not. I pushed the club limits way too many times, but each and every time I did this, I took notice on how the staff didn't want to give up on me. I remember coming home one night, bawling my eyes out because I knew that these people honestly cared about me. I decided to change, became involved in programming, and started making amends with the staff. Being a part of organizations like the Boys and Girls Club has helped me grow and change as a person. I feel like I owe my academic success to the club because they structured me to being the best I could be. They truly believe that the key to success is through education and did anything in their power to make sure I succeed in life, and I now see college as an option in my future. The club has also brought up my personal values and what I stand for. There are three important things the club has taught me that I would like to pass on to other youth. First, I want to educate them on the importance of abstaining from substance abuse, since I know the impact it has had on my life and many others. Second would be tenacity, the will to keep on pushing through things that might be challenging. What I want others to take away from me is that whenever you're dealing with something, you just need to put your best foot forward and keep on pushing. Lastly, advocate being nonjudgmental. I have endured many things in my short existence, and I have learned that everybody comes from a different walk in the park, and because of this, you shouldn't be judged on how you were raised or come about. This organization has changed who I am as a person, and I truly, truly feel that I wouldn't be as independent or strong-willed as I am today. The Boys and Girls Club sparks light in each and every member and touches the hearts of thousands in my community, and I am glad to be a testimony to this. Thank you.
Any question why she was picked?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I just want to thank you. You're really a role model for the kids, you know, for our youth. The Boys and Girls Club is really outstanding. They've done a good job. I know in Ontario and Weneme that, you know, I support those, and I also support Ventura and the rest of the Boys and Girls Club. But just, you're just outstanding and very intelligent young lady. Thank you so much for your good work, and you're a great role model for our youth. Thank you.
Supervisor Long?
Yes, congratulations. It was a great job. I loved hearing your story. Beautifully written. Thank you.
You've made some great decisions in your life. It's great that you want to share with others, and I know that you're going to have a great career. So, best of luck to you.
Thank you.
Yeah, life's all about decisions, and you started off in a really good way. Congratulations.
How about the other people from Boys and Girls Club? Mr. Waterman? Come on down. I've got tears, tears of pride here.
Our next item on the agenda is item 35, and this is another item with Supervisor Bennett, so we'll pause for a moment and wait till he returns the dais.
and they have to sit there and constantly work at this. So, this is one that I recognize should go, since it's the last end, it'll go down to the bottom of the list. But after spending about six months on this issue and my staff working on it and talking with the property owners, I believe that it's appropriate for us to have some modification in terms of county policy or, and that is, it's a very simple issue, but there are
Our next item on the agenda is item thirty-five, and this is another item with Supervisor Bennett, so we'll pause for a moment and wait till he returns to the dais.
... to-do list, and I recognize that it's longer than they can get done at this point in time, and they have to sit there and constantly work at this. So this is one that I recognize should go, since it's the last item, it'll go down at the bottom of the list. But after spending about six months on this issue, and my staff working on it, and talking with the property owners, I believe that it's appropriate for us to have some modification in terms of county policy, and that is, it's a very simple issue, but there are people that have view properties, like in La Conchita, and what I've always thought was the front of the house faces the ocean. But technically, our rules say the front of their house is the side of the house, the narrow part that faces the side street. And that makes sense in normal residential neighborhoods. It doesn't make sense in a coastal area, on a corner lot, where people are facing the ocean. You want people, because generally, the front of the house is the part of the house that you make the most attractive. You want people to make the front of the house the most attractive. That's the part that has the greatest exposure and all of that. So essentially, that's the issue. It's to create that modification so that we can have these lots and these particular unique situations that face the ocean, that are on corners, have this interpretation. Because the definition of the front of your house determines where you're allowed to put your fences. And you put the six-foot fences on the side of the house, and here now, this would sort of imply, put a six-foot fence in front of the long part of your house facing the ocean, and the four-foot fence or the three-foot fence on the side facing the side street. So I'd like to invite our speakers, Karen Orin, if you would come up and talk about your situation, and that's the request that we have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you, Karen.
Good morning. First of all, I actually have our inspection record card from 1972 that shows our address as 7045 West Surfside. When we first built our house in seventy-two, we had that address. At some point, it was changed for unknown reasons to us, to 7051 Sunland Avenue, which is our side street. Our front entry and our door to our home has always been on Surfside. When giving directions to our home, I always say Surfside, because that's how they would get in. As we are getting older, we've started doing a lot more online shopping, and it's been really frustrating having missed deliveries. Sometimes they don't get delivered at all, other times it goes to somebody else's house. So it's really frustrating having it listed as Sunland Avenue. The address on the corner homes facing Surfside are inconsistent and confusing to visitors and delivery people. We would like to ask that our original address be reinstated to 7045 West Surfside, and that other residents on Surfside Avenue have the same option, should they choose. Thank you very much for taking this into consideration.
If I could point out to the board, this isn't a request here to change the address. It's really a request to have us look at our ordinance and change what our definition is of the front of the house, and then these other things can all resolve once we have that definition changed. So it's to put this on the list for planning, right? Go ahead.
I have no problem. I think that's great. I would only say that that may take years, and she's kind of got another issue that if they could look at that, I wouldn't have a problem bringing it back on that one issue, but I don't know if it causes problems.
Quite clearly, I would like to move faster than taking years also in talking with our staff. This is at least, if the board supports this, then I think we may be able to talk with staff about how we could do something faster.
Okay. Yeah, because she got changed, that's why I only realized that. Otherwise, changing the whole thing, yeah, I agree with that, yeah.
Great. So if the board is supportive of this, then I think that could indicate to staff that let's see if there's something else that we can do quicker. But right now, this was the first step. Staff says, hey, before we can do anything else, we have to at least hear from the board on that, right?
I would just certainly want to hear the why they changed you, to begin with, and secondly, the effect on, for example, the fire department and things that do have that address. So I imagine it takes quite some steps to get your address changed.
I believe our research shows that they got changed because of this definition of what the front of the house is. That's why it got changed. In other words, they were just using, historically, the front of the house looked like it was, you know, facing the ocean, and everybody just was doing that. But then technically, they found that our definition was, the front of the house was the side street. When they discovered that, they officially changed her address, but it just didn't matter.
That makes sense. Now I see why you're doing this process.
Exactly. Okay, yeah, so the two are related, right?
So that goes with the planning commission.
Yeah, I know we have some strange addresses on a PCH, too, where the numbers don't go consecutively. And so there are issues like that, where we have just some wrong addressing, quite frankly, so.
And these have been very reasonable people to work with in terms of trying to resolve this, and I appreciate how they've handled themselves and their patience in terms of doing this, so.
Yeah, we'd like to do as fast as we could, but things are a little slow, so.
Should I move to recommended action? And will Mr. Brennan in my office will keep working with you, right? And I'm going to ask him to come up and see me here before he walks out. Great, thank you very much.
Our next item then is our first eleven a.m. time certain, and this is regarding our employee recognitions with employees who have served twenty-five years or more. Mr. Powers?
Thank you, Chair Parks and board members, and we love it. This is so great. We appreciate letting us take the time here to recognize county employees who have dedicated their careers to county service and serving our communities, and we thank the employees for being here to let us recognize you and your teammates and your family and department leadership as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to our HR Director, Ms. Rotten.
Thank you, Mr. Powers, Chair Parks, members of the board. It's my pleasure also to recognize the great service these employees have performed for the county. We have a few to go through today, so without any further ado, as we start, I'll ask each one of them to come forward, receive their certificate, and then stay up front until we have everyone, and then we'll take a picture at the end. So the first person we'll recognize today is Wendy Medina. She works at the sheriff's office and is an administrative aide. She's worked with the county for twenty-five years, and over the past twenty-five years, Wendy has worked for the Ventura County Sheriff's Office in the Detention Services Division. During that time, she has held three different positions within the pre-trial detention facility. She's proud of her time working for the best law enforcement agency in the county. That was a quote. And has truly enjoyed working with the many people she has been fortunate to be with throughout the years. Congratulations, Wendy. So next person on the list is Carol Fickus. I'm not sure if she's in. She probably wasn't able to make it. But we'd like to recognize her. She also works for the sheriff's office and is an office assistant, and has been here for twenty-five years. Same with the next person, Ms. Yasmin Morrison. She's worked with the public... Oh, Yasmin is here, okay, sorry. Yasmin Morrison has worked with the Public Defender's Office, is a social worker four, and has twenty-five years of service. Since becoming a permanent employee in nineteen ninety-one, Yasmin has held several positions. Her diligence, hard work, and truly genuine care and concern for the public defender clients has earned her many accolades, including being the first in the office to successfully gain a governor's pardon for a client of the Public Defender's Office. In two thousand and ten, she was the first non-attorney in the office to receive an award from the Ventura County Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention Commission for her expert work in finding placement and treatment programs for troubled youth in the juvenile system. That was a mouthful. Her twenty-five years of dedication working for the disenfranchised and less fortunate people in our society, and guiding our youth towards a successful and healthy and meaningful lifestyle is admirable. Thank you for your service. Bernadette McDowell is the next person. She works at the library and is a librarian. She has twenty-five years of service. Bernadette is a truly dedicated librarian and provides the very highest quality of library services to people from all walks of life. She cares deeply about serving the public and helping people of all ages succeed in their education, work, and lifelong learning pursuits. She's impacted many lives over the years, and we're thankful and grateful for her hard work. Eric Ostrom. Eric works with the General Services Agency and is a certified building maintenance engineer. He has twenty-five years of service. He began his twenty-five-year county career with GSA Fleet as an automotive service worker before being promoted to maintenance engineer in two thousand and seven. He has previously worked at the juvenile justice facility and now currently works at the Todd Road Jail. Eric's hard work and dedication to his position and the agency are admirable, and we thank him for his continued service. Ricardo Vasquez also works at GSA and is an auto mechanic, too. He has twenty-five years of service. Ricardo enjoys spending time with his children, grandchildren, and his lovely wife, Elizabeth. He especially enjoys family barbecues by the pool, and on behalf of the county and GSA and Fleet Operations, we thank you for your many, many years of service at the county. Your attitude and diligent work over these years has been outstanding. Thank you very much. Daniel Anaya works in probation. He is a deputy probation officer and has twenty-five years of service. Daniel has worked numerous assignments as a DPO, both with juveniles and adults. Daniel consistently exhibits calm, a positive demeanor, positive work ethic, and has been a dependable team member for all these years. Daniel is an asset to the profession of probation and provides a community with outstanding service. Thank you, Daniel. Catherine Ariano works with the Human Services Agency as an employment services three, and she has twenty-five years of service. Kathy demonstrates a great work ethic and goes out of her way to provide excellent customer service, not only to her coworkers, but also to her clients. She always carries herself with the utmost professionalism, both in person and over the phone. She is a team player and has constantly demonstrated this by volunteering to assist her coworkers accomplish their daily work and team goals. She always goes the extra mile for her clients by providing great customer service and is extremely resourceful to clients and coworkers. Thank you very much. Maria Rangel from Human Services Agency. I don't think she could be here today, unfortunately. She's a client benefit specialist supervisor and has twenty-five years of service. Maria Nunez with HSA, she is a case aid two worker and has twenty-five years of service. Maria is flexible when priorities change. She is compassionate with the clients she serves. She has a positive attitude and is trustworthy. When Maria was the primary administrative support assigned to the monthly CalFresh renewal process, she reconciled the whole center's CalFresh team's caseload each month and met all the deadlines for timeliness for clients receiving the renewals for completion. Excellent work, Maria. Thank you. Thank you for your service. Mariela Garcia is also with the HSA. She's a client's benefit specialist, too, and has twenty-five years of service. Mariela has been a client benefit specialist for the past twenty-five years. She started with AFDC, an intake at the Oxnard office, and the last twelve years, she has worked with a child-only office and currently teleworks from home. Mariela has outstanding customer service skills. She is reliable, friendly, and encompasses a positive attitude. It's a pleasure working with Mariela. Thank you very much. Juanita Holgwin works at probation. She's a supervising deputy probation officer. She has twenty-five years of service. Juanita has proudly worked for the Ventura County Probation Agency for twenty-five years and is currently the supervising DPO who oversees the placement unit. She has taken the lead in assisting the probation agency with implementing the continuum of care reform changes pursuant to Assembly Bill 403. After twenty-five years, her daily commitment and dedication to being a good leader is truly inspiring to others. Esther Aguilar works at the healthcare agency and is an office assistant three. She has twenty-five years of service. Esther was hired in nineteen ninety-one as a clerical trainee for the VCMC Billing Records Department. With all the changes throughout the years, Esther has proven to be dedicated and committed to VCMC. Her work ethic and integrity are something to be admired and sought after. As a custodian of records for the Financial Administration Department, we truly appreciate and value her ability to retrieve and track records from the past. Thank you for your service, Esther. Azella O'Connor also works at the HCA Healthcare Agency. She's a circulating operating room nurse, and she has twenty-five years of service. Did I mispronounce your name? I was good, okay, thank you very much. She has twenty-five years of service. Azella has been an employee at the county for twenty-five years. In that time, she's worked in both the PACU and in the Surgery Department. Most recently, Azella has been managing the Surgery Department at Santa Paula Hospital. Azella is a dedicated, hard-working employee and is a true asset to Ventura County hospital system. It's an honor to work with her. Thank you for your service. Dale Hewitt also works at the healthcare agency and is a mental health associate. He has twenty-five years of service, and we're honored to congratulate Dale on the twenty-five years of service today, where he has expertise, diligence, and wit. Dale has served Ventura County's most vulnerable constituents in their toughest moments. With tremendous gratitude, we acknowledge Dale's dedication and commitment to the agency and the community. Thank you so much. Timothy Low also works at the healthcare agency, and he's a circulating operating room nurse. He has twenty-five years of service. Tim has served in many capacities in the Surgery Department. He's trained many of our operating room nurses and is one of our instructors in our yearly competencies. Tim's vast experience is a constant resource to the staff. Tim is a dedicated nurse and always has time to take on additional duties. It's a pleasure having an employee of Tim's caliber at VCMC. Thank you, Tim. Baljeet Gill also works at the healthcare agency, registered nurse, too, with twenty-five years of service. Baljeet, did I pronounce your name right? Thank you, Baljeet. Baljeet is a longstanding employee in the obstetrics department at VCMC, providing excellent care to low- and high-risk obstetric patients. Her knowledge is respected by fellow nurses as well as physicians. Baljeet is very dependable. Quite often, she will come in on her day off if the unit is busy. She's very flexible and has trained many of the nurses over the years. Baljeet is an advocate of breastfeeding and has helped numerous mothers get off to a good start. The OB unit has been very fortunate to have Baljeet. Thank you. Thank you for your service. Marissa Montgomery also works at the healthcare agency. She's a licensed vocational nurse. She has thirty years of service at the county. Marissa has worked in obstetrics as a lactation consultant for many years, providing exceptional care to our mothers and newborns at Ventura County Medical Center. She has helped our hospital achieve baby-friendly status, making us the only hospital in Ventura County to achieve this honor. Marissa is dedicated to our mothers, assisting them successfully to breastfeed their newborns. She's worked with the mothers in NICU, helping them overcome barriers that might otherwise prevent them from being able to successfully breastfeed their infants. She's a community advocate... She's a community advocate and brings her passion to work every day. She works tirelessly and patiently with our mothers, often working above and beyond to help them achieve success in providing a very important service to them and their newborns. Thank you so much for your service. Maria Rangel works at the sheriff's office as a service tech, too. She also has 30 years of service. Maria has been with the Ventura County Sheriff's Office for the past 30 years. During that time, she's worked various assignments in detention, court, and West County Police Services Division. Maria has thoroughly enjoyed being part of the sheriff's family and has made many lifelong friendships. Thank you for your years of service. Thank you. Edith Tham works at the healthcare agency. She is a management assistant three and has 30 years of service. During her 30 years with the county of Ventura, Edith has worked exclusively in the healthcare agency's Behavioral Health Department and is currently assistant to the Behavioral Health Advisory Board. Edith has reached the highest level of achievement in Toastmasters and is a distinguished Toastmaster. She's participated in this worthwhile program for eight years and is currently the club president of the Kerry Speak Toastmasters, having also been the area governor. Edith is very knowledgeable in her field and is an instrumental member of the Behavioral Health Department team. We wish to congratulate her for her dedicated years of service. Thank you so much. Alan Devers works at the sheriff's office. He's a sheriff sergeant. Sergeant Devers is thankful to work at the sheriff's office for the past 30 years and feels blessed to serve the citizens of Ventura County. Sergeant Devers has worked a variety of assignments, including custody, patrol, multiple investigation assignments, including internal affairs. Sergeant Devers' current assignment is working in the city of Moore Park, where he resides. Thank you, Sergeant Devers, for your service. Peggy McGrawery works in ITSD. She's a desktop support analyst and has 30 years of service. Hi, Peggy. Peggy is compassionate and a remarkable person who is valued and respected by her colleagues and customers. When Peggy isn't tinkering with the latest technology trends and gadgets, she enjoys competing in Cool Breeze Century and Ojai Valley Century rides. The IT Services Department and the county are lucky to have such a wonderful resource on the team. Jenny Barstad works at the healthcare agency and is a clinical nurse manager. She has 35 years of service. Jenny has filled many roles at VCMC during her years of service, from a dedicated bedside nurse in neonatal intensive care unit to its current manager. As a manager, Jenny is always there to help in any way that's needed. She truly cares for her staff, patients, and their families. Jenny helped set up the first pediatric intensive care unit in Ventura County, all while continuing her duties managing the NICU. As an active member of the new hospital planning committee board, she's given valuable insight in the planning of the new hospital's NICU layout and has offered input to meet current standards. Jenny is dedicated to staff she manages and VCMC as an organization. She inspires all through her everyday commitment, knowledge, and caring acts of kindness. Thank you so much. Jim Bradley, Public Works Agency, is an equipment operator three. 30 years of service. Jim began his career with the county of Ventura in February of 1985 as a maintenance worker in the Water and Sanitation Division of Public Works. In 1995, he transferred to the Road Maintenance Division and was promoted to equipment operator one in 97. And then he promotes to equipment operator three as a striper operator. He has been married for over 31 years, congratulations, and has three children and three grandchildren. Jim treasures spending time with his family and loves going camping. Fishing is another of his hobbies, with ocean fishing being another love. Some of you may know that Jim has a passion for motorcycles, fast ones. You may know that he raced in Speedway events in the early 80s. Thank you, Jim, for your years of service here. Jane David works at the sheriff's office and is a communications operator and has 35 years of service. Jane started her career 35 years ago at the old government building on Poly Street as a dispatcher. When the Fillmore Police Department contracted with the Ventura County Sheriff's Department in 87, she transferred to their substation as their office manager. Thank you, Jane, for your service. Holy, my bad, holy. Anita Gutierrez, Sheriff's Office, and she's a senior sheriff's custody supervisor, rec supervisor. She has 35 years of service. Anita feels fortunate to work, has been fortunate to work for the sheriff's office for the past 35 years. This has given her the opportunity to work with so many great people. She's enjoyed watching the department evolve to meet the needs of the community and is glad to be part of the change. Anita is dedicated to providing the best service possible, and the job still remains challenging to her today. Thank you so much for your years. Rudy Munoz, Public Works Agency, is a public work superintendent and has 35 years of service. Rudy began his career with the county in 1981 as a maintenance worker one. After several promotions, he became a public work superintendent in 98. Besides having a long and successful career, this hard worker with a serious side is also a dedicated family man. He and his wife, Frances, are the proud parents of two daughters and a son. Rudy has also a creative side and with several interesting hobbies. He enjoys photography, skilled model building, and playing the electric guitar. Thank you. Anne, thank you for your service. Anne Marie Lopez, our last employee to be recognized to date. Anne Marie Lopez works at the sheriff's office. Did I pronounce your name correctly? Very good. She's a management assistant three and has 40 years of service. Anne Marie started her county career working for VCMC Social Services in 1974. She transferred to the sheriff's department in 76, where she has held various positions within the department. Currently, she works for the Assistant Sheriff, Guy Stewart, in detention services. Anne Marie considers it a pleasure to have worked with the many sworn and non-sworn personnel in her years of service at the department. Working many years of shift work, including holidays, coworkers become extended family. "It's truly been a pleasure working for an excellent department," this is, I think, a quote, "thank you, Anne Marie, for your dedication, dedication to the county of Ventura." Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sean. Yeah. Wow. That's a lot of service, right? I did the math over here on my abacus. It's 810 years of service. Just amazing, but I really just want to thank you. I mean, I think, when you think about all that dedicated service, during that time, you're building your skills through experience, and you're honing your skills, and you're sharing that with your coworkers, and you're serving your community more and more effectively. That's what makes our county strong. You know, when I go out in the community and they ask, "What's the state of the county?" And there's a lot of good measures and so forth, but I look at it in terms of the quality of our people, how much you all care about the work that's, not just a job, right? You care about the work that you do and the people you serve. That's what makes us strong. So when they ask, "What's the state of the county?", because of all of you, we say, "It's awesome." So I would just say, "Thank you so much for your service and congratulations."
Are there any further comments?
I just want to thank, you know, all the employees for many, many years. Anne Marie, I must have been 10 years old when you started with me. But you looked great, you know, and thank you to all the workers. You know, that's a lot of years, you know. When I became supervisor, I was working for the city of Oxnard, not working, it was a customer there, and we had employees with many years, but I didn't realize the county has so many good employees and so many years of service. Thank you. 800-plus years is a lot of years, and thank you again for your good work. Thank you.
And a lot of that, I know, is hard work, too. Appreciate that, whether you're serving directly our constituents or indirectly. Your service matters a lot, and you have given your professional a lot of your life. I loved hearing that you see this as your extended family, because we do talk about the county family, and we are so happy to have you in it. So thank you so much for your good work. Yes, do we get a photo?
We'd love to take a group photograph. I'm told the view is better if the supervisors, if I may ask you to come down, and we can take a picture this way, right? May we do that?
Sure.
I think everyone will, which way do you want me?
We want everybody facing that way. Come here.
Phil? I think you're going to face that way. Thanks for your indulgence.
Remember, we're all county family here. Okay, here we go. One, two, three. Try one more. One, two, three.
Thank you.
That's a lot of years. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Good job.
So you know Mr. Frank Adina, right? I'm the senior.
Really? Oh, yeah, he's a good guy.
Yes, he's a great guy.
I've known all my Masala Adina sessions. I used to work with Gilbert. It's a pleasure. Goodness. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the Board of Supervisors for our August 2nd meeting and our 1:30 time certain item, and this is a report, it's a receive-and-file report on a workshop for our short-term vacation rental units in the unincorporated county. I know we have at least 20 speakers, so I will limit it to two and a half minutes. Had to decide whether two minutes or three minutes. We'll go two and a half minutes, so hopefully you can pare your comments down, and you might actually hear someone say the exact same thing, and you can say what he said instead of repeat it all. So at this time, I believe we'll go to our staff or supervisor. Okay. Shall we begin with the staff report? Does that sound like a good idea?
Yeah, your board asked us at your last hearing to study the issue of short-term rental units in residential areas, and Mr. Stevens primarily from RMA has conducted that evaluation.
And I'll have to say, too, a really good report. Nice.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Chair Parks, members of the board, Mr. Powers, for the record, I am Chris Stevens with the Resource Management Agency. And as the CEO said, I'm here to provide you a report back on the short-term vacation rental issue. A couple of things before I get started, let you know that the treasurer, tax collector, and his staff are here as well, if you have any questions about the transient occupancy tax and its association with the issue, and also the planning directors here, should we get into any questions related to the zoning ordinance and our coastal zoning ordinance. Couple little bits of housekeeping. You should have received another packet, handout, another packet of comments that we received. Those are the comments that we were receiving this morning up till noon. I believe as I was leaving my office here, we saw a couple more come in, but I didn't have time to make copies of those. We'll make sure we get those to you after the hearing. But what you should have in front of you is a compilation of all the comments that we've received up until noon today. And also to let you know that we've revised one of the slides in the PowerPoint that you'll see here shortly, the final slide with the table of some of the status. It's a pretty dynamic process, and we caught some changes and some things that we found out even this morning, so made some changes there, just to alert you to that. So here we go. What wanted to do very briefly was kind of highlight some of the actions and the discussion from the board meeting in December, kind of as background before we get into talking about the issues themselves. As you recall, in December, you directed staff to prepare the report that we have brought back to you today, and you also asked that we issue that report to the public at least 30 days prior to your hearing to give them an opportunity to review and comment. We were able to do that, and that is, I think, largely why you saw so many comments that we've received and passed along to you today. At your December hearing, the board also articulated three objectives for the regulation of short-term rentals, and in fact, they're listed here on this and the next slide, and you also indicated that you would consider these to be in priority order. And I think it's important to emphasize that that first priority was that the quality of life in the neighborhood, the fabric of the neighborhood, be first and foremost in whatever regulations the board directs us to prepare. Secondly, the issue of the impact of short-term rentals on our supply of particularly rental housing, and the impact that it has on that needs to be considered, and our priority is to not unduly restrict the availability of long-term rental properties through whatever regulations may be decided upon for our short-term rentals. And then lastly, the board objective was that these regulations, whatever they are, that they enhance our local economy and not be a detriment to that economy. So with that summary of actions, I wanted to touch briefly on some more background information that we provided to the board in December. We described for the board the advantages and disadvantages as they have been described throughout the discussions of this issue and not just here in Ventura County, across the state and the nation. I think just about every day in the newspaper, there's an article or two about this issue and how local governments are grappling with it. This highlights some of the more common advantages that are often referred to, and I would highlight the first one, this defray of homeowner costs is often described as allowing individuals to retain their home by bringing in that extra income so they can afford the mortgage. I think that was particularly the case with the recession and allowed folks to retain their properties, but that's often cited as one of the greatest advantages of the program. The disadvantages are listed here, and I think you'll see in the comment letters that you've received, that that first one on the list is of foremost interest of the community and neighbors, and although the others kind of flow from that, but the primary issue, I think, that local governments have been grappling with is the impact on the neighborhood from a short-term renter, and the noise, and the trash, and the parking, and the traffic, and issues of that nature. There we go. Talk a little bit about the existing environment we described for the board, that the treasurer, tax collector has defined short- about the licensing and permitting and tax options. The, just about every ordinance that we've looked at in the state of California requires an annual business license and the payment of transient occupancy taxes. For some communities, that is the extent of their regulations and those are usually, the vehicle for that is a standalone ordinance. That's not something within their zoning ordinance. It's an ordinance that is under the purview of their equivalent of their treasurer tax collector. The, a number of them, in addition to that, require what I'll call an administrative or ministerial permit. And those are, that kind of is a hybrid, some of the ministerial permits, they establish fairly specific requirements and then that, that permit is sometimes done within a zoning ordinance and administered by a planning division. Other times, it's within that standalone ordinance. And because it's ministerial, it can be administered by the treasurer tax collector. So, that kind of, kind of flows both ways in terms of the responsibility for administering those ordinances. The, some require a discretionary land use permit. That would be, for example, the city of Fillmore recently took action to require conditional use permits for their short-term rentals. And those are within housed and administered, obviously, through the planning divisions. And then lastly, there is something, and we have this in the county of Ventura's ordinance for our film permits, what I will call is a ministerial permit with a public review element of some kind. There's many different ways that communities approach this. What we do, for example, for our film permits, for certain types of filming activities, we require them to obtain waivers from their neighbors and, and have to get those waivers signed for the neighbors to accept the activity to take place. Some communities that we've looked at actually provide a notification to neighbors and it could be, for example, as we do here in the county, a 300-foot radius. And then if any of the neighbors request, then they hold a public hearing and go through a hearing process. And then lastly, we put up there homeowners associations. That was an issue that came up in December with the board. And that may be an option as well to have some sort of a permit that has a role for a homeowners association to, for a review, request for hearing and/or a waiver type approach. Not sure how, how that might look, but it seems to me that it's, it's certainly in the realm of the waiver process that we have in place for our film permits. So, it's something that I wanted to throw out there that I think the board might be interested in.
Could I ask the one where they have to get the neighbors' permission, how that would work? I know there are some instances, you were saying, that we have.
Yeah, well, the, the way our process works for our film permits, there is a, we have a simple ministerial permit for film permits. Then we have another level where you think the activity may have a possible impact on neighbors and then you can get a film permit with waivers. And it requires the applicant to get a signature from all of their neighbors that indicates that they are aware the activity is taking place and they are, in essence, okay with the activity taking place. And then that's part of their application.
So, that way, areas that where residents have no concerns about this would be, wouldn't have to be impacted by greater regulation potentially?
That's correct. And, and I think in, in this case, it would be a requirement that we would also assume would greatly encourage the operator to abide by the standards. Because if they, if they do not, the chances of getting another waiver in the future certainly would be greatly reduced, I would imagine. But it's another way to encourage that kind of activity. Wanted to talk a little bit about the options from an operational standpoint. There are occupancy and visitor limits. That's a fairly common operational limit that's used within communities. And that can apply, a very common one, and it's described in the report, is a limit of the number of persons per bedroom that's in the unit. That's probably the most common. There are some other locations, actually, that just simply put a cap. Kern County, I believe, caps it at six people. There can be no more than six individuals in a short-term vacation rental. There are parking requirements also, there'll be, that is, that is a common problem and it's something that we've heard about in our beach communities in particular, where parking is at a premium regardless of short-term rental units. And there are some communities that have established off, excuse me, onsite parking requirements to ensure that there is adequate parking to serve the units. Quiet hours, and that's something that we have often in our permits regardless of whether they are ministerial or discretionary here in the county.
Men chair. Chris, is our time ten o'clock or eleven o'clock at night? What's the, what is the?
Is it, is it about ten o'clock at night?
At ten o'clock is he? Nine o'clock?
I'm looking back at the planning director, she provides the conditions, but I, I believe it's something on the, it varies depending on the use. Yeah, I believe, I believe it's probably.
Nine or ten o'clock?
Ten o'clock. But it, but it also varies depending on the activity as well. So, it's not necessarily hard and fast because it is a discretionary permit where we apply them there. So, there, there can be differences, but typically, I believe it's ten. The rental day limits, and that is, that takes a lot of different forms. Sometimes it is in the form as you'll see when there's, even for hotel rooms during peak season, you'll need a three-night minimum or a four-night minimum. Some do it in that sense, choose to approach it in that way. And then others do take it from the other side and say, there can be no more than, you cannot rent this out for more than seven days per month. So, something of that nature. So, there's any different number of ways to approach that.
I want to stop and ask you some questions here in terms of, of these regulation policies that you have. My first one is, what's your sense in terms of the cooperation that we, that, that local governments are getting from Airbnb in terms of any kind of local regulations and stuff?
I would say from what I've read, it's not been tremendous. But a lot of those discussions have been related to the collection of fees and, for example, in the city of San Francisco, they actually put in place an ordinance that would allow them to find Airbnb directly, which has obviously raised issues. So, it, it's hard for me to say that on these issues, there's been a problem, but I think in general, there's been conflicts.
Is there any evidence that on these issues, they've been cooperating? Have they been cooperating on, we won't let you advertise it for more than a certain number of days per month? We won't let you advertise it for a cer, more than a certain number of people? Are they cooperating with local governments in terms of that?
From, from what I've read, and it's, I don't, I'm not the definitive source, they have not been. That their position has been, that is the responsibility of the operator and local government. We are simply a platform for them to advertise.
And then my other question is, when it comes to rental days, when it comes to the number of people, are you hearing of local governments that are feeling successful in enforcing those? I think those two by themselves strike me as nightmares for people like yourself, you know, and getting those, there were eight people here and there were supposed to be six and it was Friday night and all of that kind of stuff. Are you hearing of local governments that have found successful ways to do those kinds of specific regulations?
We have a slide later on enforcement, but I, the short answer would be no. It has been a challenge and a difficult thing across the board. Just about every jurisdiction I talk with has found, in fact, not, not just these, the issue in general has been very difficult. Even, even those communities that have banned them have found it very challenging to prove otherwise.
Great, thank you.
Lastly, on seasonal controls, and that's just a reference to some communities electing to prohibit short-term rentals at certain times of the year. So, in essence, you might say, instead of quiet hours in the day, these are quiet months during the year for the, for the, for the neighborhood. Property management options that we talk about, one of them is, is limiting short-term rentals to homestays. That's City of Santa Monica that came up in December. That is an approach that they and other communities have taken.
Will you please explain, will you please? Will you please explain what a homestay is?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. A, a homestay, generally speaking, is a reference to a short-term vacation rental where the owner still lives in the unit and is renting out a portion of that unit. So, Santa Monica has taken that approach, just some other communities, because in, in units where the owner is present, they're a lot more sensitive to the neighborhood and their renters are more respectful of the owner who's on the property as, as well as, as the neighbors.
But Steve, the owner has to stay, has to be there.
That's right. We'll talk, in the last slide, Los Angeles has kind of taken a slightly different tack on it, but generally, I would say, generally speaking, the owner is onsite. The, the other, our, our issues that we, I think we talked about in December, the 24-hour contact and timely response requirements, the posting of the standards within the units themselves so that those that are renting them have right in front of them the, the quiet hours and all of the other, the parking, the number of, of tenants and whatnot are in front and very clear to them. Number of communities have required an initial property inspection to verify the number of bedrooms, the proper ingress and egress requirements, you know, fire, fire alarms, all of the things that we want in place to make sure that we have a safe unit. And then lastly, the webpage posting and, and that takes several forms, one of which is a posting on the web of all of that same contact information and rules so that neighbors, if there is an issue, can actually go to the web and get that very quickly if they wish. And then another requirement that communities have, have pursued is that where you have an authorized vacation rental, they are issued like a license number, that whenever it is advertised on the web, it has to include that license number. So, in other words, so the potential renter can see that they are an authorized vacation rental. And that's, that's kind of, what's interesting about that is that then they have established advertisements that don't include that number as potentially being a violation of their ordinance. That's another way to bring in the advertisement issue to the enforcement. It's kind of an interesting twist on that. The location and density is another, another issue that's been looked at to a number of communities. I think first and foremost is kind of the restricting it to specific zones. And then in the last table where we kind of summarize what's been going on in some of the communities, what's been done primarily is prohibiting them within residential zones is one approach to take. Another one, and this is in part based on a, a letter that the Department of Conservation issued, is to not allow them on properties with Land Conservation Act contracts because they are inconsistent with agricultural activities is another, is another approach that's been taken. One is limiting the number of units per block. I don't, I haven't been able to talk with anyone from communities that do that to see how that's working. That would strike me as being fairly challenging to determine how to do that given, given the process, but, but that has been done in some communities. And then lastly, has been not allowing them within their afforded, their identified affordable housing stock. That's to help address that issue of short-term rentals squeezing the affordable rental market. And so, within our housing element, we identify second dwelling units, farm worker dwelling units and mobile home parks as housing stock that's more affordable for our community. And so, you prohibiting these activities within those types of uses is another approach that's taken by communities. So, we're onto the enforcement options. The very common approach that I've found in communities is that they have established a permit process that these are annual permits. And while it's a pretty young industry and these ordinances are fairly young, the, the idea is that every year, there'll be a new review and that if a short-term rental has not abided by the rules or has had a number of complaints against it, rather than institute a permit revocation process and all of the work that goes in with that, they simply do not renew the permit. It has expired. And so, that seems to be a very common approach within communities. Many of them require compliance deposits because of the, and I don't want to say extraordinary, but we'll say often extra work that's required to monitor these units. They are often having, requiring staff to go out after normal staff hours, for example. If you have a quiet, a violation of quiet hours or they think there's too many people there in the evening, you have to have staff perhaps go out after the normal business hours. That's an extra expense. And so, what they do is they require a larger compliance, permit compliance deposit. A number of them have what I will say clearly defined revocation standards that make it easier for them, if they wish, to revoke a permit. And then last but not least, and this is, this is an issue that's come up, I think the board's even discussed it with respect to events, particularly wedding events and whatnot, is the idea of a substantial penalty. If you recall, we had that with some of our special events and weddings where our, our penalty amount was simply not enough to counter the amount of revenue that was brought in by the activity. And so, some communities have, have taken the step of establishing within their ordinances a fairly substantial penalty amount so to encourage greater compliance with the ordinance There, I just wanted to touch on, we provided it within the report, a survey that was conducted by the city of Oxnard. This was an online survey. It's, it is by no means statistically significant, nor is it, you know, intended to describe the, the general feeling of, of the community. It is just provided in the report as additional information. It was something that the city did and they happened to get some responses from individuals from the unincorporated area. So, we wanted to provide that to you and, and just share with you some of the information there. And, you know, I think it indicates that there is a keen interest in regulating these in some manner, certainly. I think certainly some of the responses indicated they, their form of regulation that they prefer would be a ban or a prohibition, but others indicated there were other elements of the regulations that they would like to see. So, just wanted to kind of emphasize that we did not, I mean to imply that we thought this was a community-wide survey or anything, as I said, statistically significant. It's just, we thought good additional information for the board. And then lastly, this is the table and this is what we kind of revised for you in your packets, different than what was posted earlier and what you had provided to you. We kind, we decided to break out those that prohibit them in residential areas and that's, and there's quite a number of them there. You can see, they, a number of the communities that have prohibitions are actually, as I was looking at them again this morning, a number of them are, are in the moratorium category. So, like a lot of these things, everyone's grappling with the issue. It's a very dynamic process and so I wouldn't, this table would change tomorrow perhaps. So, I just wanted to make sure I emphasize that for you. The, there was also, and you've probably read about them in the newspaper, there are lawsuits in various communities about actions that they've taken. I'm not sure where the, where those will all end up. And there's also an issue that we will have to grapple with here in Ventura County with respect to coastal zones and coastal areas. The Coastal Commission has a role in this. They have, they have sent letters to some of the beach communities you see on the list that have prohibited or severely limited them and expressed to them their concern that that is counter to some of the local coastal act policies to encourage visitor-serving activities and visitor-serving development on the coast. Not sure how that's going to play out depending on what direction we get from the board today. One of the, one of the first things we will be doing is having a discussion probably with Coastal Commission staff and, and kind of get their feedback on what their, what their thoughts are.
Could I ask you, City of, of Los Angeles, does the city of Los Angeles go from regulations to homestays? And by the way, the word I'm going to be using is home shares. That makes it more clear what it is. Do they?
You can see, the, a number of the communities that have prohibitions are actually, as I was looking at them again this morning, a number of them are in the moratorium category. So, like a lot of these things, everyone's grappling with the issue. It's a very dynamic process, and so I wouldn't, this table would change tomorrow perhaps. So, I just wanted to make sure I emphasize that for you. The, there was also, and you've probably read about them in the newspaper, there are lawsuits in various communities about actions that they've taken. I'm not sure where the, where those will all end up. And there's also an issue that we will have to grapple with here in Ventura County with respect to coastal zones and coastal areas. The Coastal Commission has a role in this. They have, they have sent letters to some of the beach communities you see on the list that have prohibited or severely limited them and expressed to them their concern that that is counter to some of the local Coastal Act policies to encourage visitor-serving activities and visitor-serving development on the coast. Not sure how that's going to play out, depending on what direction we get from the board today. One of the first things we will be doing is having a discussion, probably with Coastal Commission staff, and kind of get their feedback on what their thoughts are.
Could I ask you, City of Los Angeles, does the City of Los Angeles go from regulations to home stays? And by the way, the word I'm going to be using is home shares. That makes it more clear what it is. Do they go from a regulation status to home shares, or do you know?
They, yes, as a matter of fact, that's a very good question, and I wanted to highlight them because you can see I put "draft," although it gets cut off of the screen there. Sorry about that. Los Angeles currently prohibits short-term, the City of Los Angeles, short-term rentals. They have introduced a draft ordinance, and they've reached apparently an agreement with, I believe Airbnb, perhaps VRBO, I'm not sure. Their draft ordinance will allow home stays or home shares only, but they've defined them a little differently. They've defined them, in essence, as a primary dwelling. So, what their draft ordinance would allow would be for you to not only rent out a portion of your unit, of your primary residence, you could also rent out the entire unit, for example, if you were on vacation. You could rent out the whole entire unit. So, that would allow that kind of home sharing and that goes on and not prohibit it, but it can only be your principal residence. So, in other words, there can only be one. And I believe the idea there is that that stops that speculation issue that comes up that individuals or companies are buying multiple units to operate a broader business. So, it allows only, only the one principal residence. So, they've taken a little bit different approach.
Madam Chair, so Chris, if I have a home and live at the beach, and I'm going to do the home share or home stay, if somebody wants to come in, they can rent for three days, or two days, or seven days, or up to whatever that owner wants, is that...
That would depend on the regulations that the board might settle on, but I mean, without any further regulation, that would be the case. They could rent it for any number of days that they...
Because individuals that buy a home just to rent it out as a rental unit for three days, and they don't live there, they rent it for three days, or a week, or a month, or whatever, that's like a business, as opposed to the resident being there or the homeowner being there all the time.
Right, right. If the board were to direct an ordinance that would allow only home shares or home stays, the, if you did not live in the unit, you just purchased the unit to rent out, you would only be able to rent it out for 30 days or more. You wouldn't be able to rent it out for less than 30 days typically.
Quick question for you, I don't want to drag your thing out. City of Santa Monica, they have home shares, not like Los Angeles, they just have home shares. You've got to be in the, you've got to be in the place for their issues, right? So, City of Santa Monica, are you aware of Coastal Commission's objecting to what they're doing, or any objections so far? I mean, legal, you know, actual legal objections to Santa Monica?
No, I'm not aware. I have not seen anything as we've kind of searched, you know, primarily the internet, frankly, and for what, you know, that has its limitations, obviously, but we have not identified any lawsuits or concern from the Coastal Commission with respect to that.
Thank you.
And when you say permitted and prohibited, does that mean certain areas in the...
Correct. So, they permitted and prohibited in residential zones. So, they have allowed short-term rentals except in residential zones. So, they have specifically limited them to commercial or mixed use or other zones. And you'll see that there's only three communities in the county of Ventura that are on the list there. They are the City of Fillmore, which, as I mentioned earlier, requires conditional use permit. The City of Ventura regulates it through what is a standalone ordinance, through their equivalent of their treasure tax collector's office. And I think you probably read in the paper, their council has directed their staff to take another look at their program. And then, the City of Ojai has prohibited all short-term rentals.
So, to be really clear, excuse me, just to be really clear, they prohibit, they permitted them in non-residential zones, column two there, but they prohibited them completely in residential areas.
That's correct.
Not just home shares. They just said, you can't do it.
I...
You don't know for sure about home shares.
That little new ones, I'm not sure about, so...
Great, thank you.
And would you anticipate that the prohibition in the City of Ojai may increase the demand in the unincorporated area around Ojai?
I would think that, from what I learned in college economics, yes, there's a likelihood of that occurring.
Yes, Supervisor Foy.
The last thing I would just mention on this table, as I mentioned, the three communities in the county that are on there, the remaining seven cities, as well as the county that are not on the list, all treat it the same, which is it is not, it is not specifically prohibited in their ordinance, it's considered a usual and customary use, and so it is allowed and not regulated. That is the same as it is treated in Los Angeles County and Santa Barbara County at this time. So, that's not an uncommon approach.
Seems like we do just the opposite with marijuana, but that's a side issue. It's not in the ordinance, so we say therefore it's prohibited, but Supervisor Foy.
That was an interesting one. Chris, I'm looking at these beach communities, I'm looking at some of these cities, and I'm wondering, you didn't seem to go to any mountain communities, you didn't go to where lake communities, where it seems like there's a lot of people who live in the mountains and they live there full-time, and they have rentals that come, I might have a place in Big Bear, I don't rent it out, but, you know, it only's got 10,000, 12,000 people, but when you get a big weekend, there's 100,000 people there, and there's all, and it seems to work, and I don't know what they're, but I do see little signs on things, say a number of people that can rent there. I was just curious why we didn't see some of these other areas that had...
And they're, yeah, they're, they are out there. South Lake Tahoe has been grappling with it, they certainly allow them. The County of Sonoma, which you see up there, they actually have different rules for the Russian River area, which is a tourist area. And I know there's a number of communities that treat their, I'll call it their traditional summer visitor areas differently.
Resort areas, right, yeah.
And, yeah, they, there could have been quite a few others on the list as well.
I was, as I said, I was just looking...
It's not a complete list.
No, I was just trying to find the balance where they do, like you said, there is those kind of areas, because, you know, there is a beach community, and beach communities like that. Ojai has some uniqueness, they do some things up there. I was just curious where they've seen those kind of things, and they seem to work.
Madam Chair, if I could, the, just in response to that, I don't, I don't have 100% guarantee this is the case, but this is what I've been told. Mammoth wrestled with this, and Mammoth finally said, "We have to create a residential area only because our employees and our residents are just getting aced out." There's no place for employees that work in Mammoth. So, Mammoth is a high tourist area, and so I don't have all the details with that.
And I was going to ask you, because I was going to say that some of this, I think, has to do with what we allow too, because if you go to some of those areas, there's lots of hotels, and a lot of places you can go and rent to be on the beach or to be placed, but we don't have a lot of that. So, we kind of balance with, we have to say, "Come to this beautiful place, but there's no big hotels, and there's no on-the-beach, so the only place I can get is a house," so I guess we try to figure that out.
Philosophically, I'd say, if that's your issue, you know, I mean, if that's a concern, then we should build more of those things if we want. The solution wouldn't be to just, well, we'll just convert our residential housing stock.
No, 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 I agree with you. I'm just saying, there is some of that that you've done, but it's some of the struggle we deal with.
And the only other thing I just want to mention to the chair is, when Mr. Stevens finishes, I do have one other question I'm going to have for you, but I will let you get through your report so that we're not slowing you down.
No, I, here you go. There it is.
Well, I just also note that it is certainly, as we see, a lot more important in certain areas where it really affects the neighborhoods. There are places in my district I haven't heard from at all, you know, Santa Rosa Valley, et cetera, where you don't have the concern that you have, obviously, in these great tourist areas, really, people's neighborhoods.
Great, thank you. You know, a quick response to that is that I would suggest that you may not be hearing it now, but if there are no regulations, eventually you'll be hearing it in Thousand Oaks and in Camarillo. It will just keep expanding, and that's basically what you're seeing is, you know, it used to be only in San Francisco and a few of these other places here. Now, it's, you know, all kinds of communities are getting it, and it is expanding. But I want to address the question, just so we get it out there before the speakers start to speak. The issue of our policy, Supervisor Parks alluded to it, when marijuana was in front of us, our planning position was, since it's not allowed, it's prohibited. But in our, but it's, but there is nothing in there that says short-term rentals are allowed, and yet, they're currently allowed. Now, I understand that the difference is, there's also nothing in our ordinance that says long-term rentals are allowed. Okay, so, so you could, but, so you could, you could make the case that, well, we're allowing long-term rentals, so certainly if you allow them to rent for long-term, you should be allowing them to rent it for a short-term. But I would ask the question a little bit differently because long-term rentals, I think many planners would say they fit under the definition of residential use. That's your residence, that's your, where you go to work from and all of that stuff. A vacation rental is not a residential use, so that's, I think, where you'd say it doesn't fit into residential. So, my question would be this, if somebody in a residential neighborhood said they wanted to buy a decent-sized house, and they wanted to turn it into Motel 6, and literally put a sign up and say Motel 6 on it, would they be allowed to do that without getting all kinds of zoning changes and everything else?
No, they wouldn't.
Right. But, but the way we have, and I'm not criticizing every, every, every place in the country that's wrestling with this, but the way we have interpreted this, if you buy the house and you don't put the shingle up, but you put your shingle up on the internet that says this house is available anytime you want for a short-term rental, that's legal at this point in time in the county.
Yes.
Right, okay, and that's, and that's, you know, so it comes to the question that Supervisor Foy brought up, which is, we don't have, if we don't have enough tourist stock, right, then we should have that conversation and we should figure out how to get it. But who should our residential housing stock be for, is my question. Should it be for our residents, or should it be for people visiting here? And it, I think it's pretty clear the way I'm asking the question, you know, what my thought is on that. And we've all done, not we all, but many of us have done Airbnbs. And so, we all go, "Well, we did it." When that all began, you sort of didn't realize what the impacts are, now it's in a different spot. But mostly, I wanted to get that, not as a criticism, because it may come up, but I wanted the speakers to know, basically, our planning department has said, "If you can rent it long-term, it doesn't say anything about long-term or anything, then you can rent it short-term." And we have not had at the board level a policy discussion as to what is a legitimate residential use in an area-zoned residential. And so, like every place else, it's basically been allowed unless the policy board says it's not allowed.
But long-term homes are needed, you know, because we have a 1% vacancy rate, is that what it is? So, we need the long-term rentals, so, thank you.
Which is another aspect altogether, is that we have a limited housing supply. Well, with that, shall we go ahead to our 20 cards? And we'll go ahead and I'll call who's up and who's on deck so you can be ready to come on up.
Madam Chair, if I could say one other thing as you're starting, and that is, you know, when we, when we left, I don't know how many of you were in the, how many of you were in the meeting the last time that we had it here? So, yeah, about half of you, all right. When we left that meeting, number one, we, as the board, appreciated the meeting in that it was, people really handled their comments well. This is a hard subject, it's a hard public policy issue, we're trying to create good public policy, and we do it best when everybody's really rational and, you know, healthy disagreements are all great. We also then challenged staff to try to make this a really transparent and open process. We required that their report be out 30 days before this hearing, so you didn't have to rush and get it done that weekend. And so, I want to compliment staff, I think they did a great job with this, and I just want to bring that up. That's the approach that we've had so far with this, and I encourage us to stay that way, and we'll get our head around it and come up with good policy. We have the best chance of coming up with good policy that way. Thank you.
And then, we do have the 14-page, 16-page report, Options and Issues for Regulating Short-Term Rentals in Unincorporated Ventura County. Great report, very helpful, and a good way to get us kicked off today. I'll start with Deirdre Frank, followed by William Werick.
Good afternoon, my name is Deirdre Frank. I'm a member of the Oxnard Planning Commission, although I'm not here in that capacity. I'm the president of the Mandalay Shores Community Association. I'm not here in that capacity, although our board was elected, a majority of our board was elected on a short-term rental ban platform. I'm here to address your staff report and the findings of the alleged survey that was made, taken. The survey could be accessed by one person using 20 different computers. The survey recognizes the computer address, not the person's address, so one person could have compiled and created all of the responses that you received. Having homeowners associations step into place as the enforcement, or the permitter, or the permit reviewer is going to bankrupt your HOAs, okay? We don't have the capacity to have meetings, we're lucky if we have a meeting a month. We're volunteers, we don't have the capacity to regulate whatever ordinance you decide to come down with. By allowing short-term renters, you are precluding the expansion of commercial development in your county. Short-term renters don't rent offices, they don't buy cars, they don't go to the doctor, they don't go to the dentist, they don't have an accountant here, they don't have their stocks held here, they don't bank here, okay? So, what you're doing is bringing in a transient group that, great, they go to a restaurant. In my neighborhood, in the shores, what they do is they go to the grocery store and they barbecue in the backyard. They're not really out there spending that extra, extra money. The city entities, the public entities are watching you. The city is waiting, City of Oxnard, I know, is waiting to see what you do, so there's some continuity in policy. What you decide is going to impact the decision-makers elsewhere. I urge you honestly to consider the people who live here, who vote here, who shop here, who work here, not, not just for the sake of transient occupancy tax. Thank you very much.
I have a question, if I might.
Yes.
Ms. Frank?
Yes.
Is there, and I'm not asking, you said you're not here with the HOA, do you have an opinion one way or the other of an outright ban?
Yes.
Or are home stays possible?
Yes, well, let me, let me share with you the difficulty with home stays. Just this last weekend, I had about, a group of about 25 walking down the street with their four dogs that were out there, and I said, because they were right outside my fence, and I said, "What are you doing?" And he said, "We're walking our dogs, you got a problem with that?" And I said, "No, I don't have a problem with that, I just want to, I didn't see the dogs." He says, "Yeah, my mother-in-law's cousin owns the house at the end of the street." Well, that's not true, that's not true, it's a short-term rental, we all know it, okay? So, anybody can say they're the owner and be there. We had a tenant in the shores, long-term tenant rented an oceanfront house, then he took an apartment in Agoura so he could work there, and the tenant rented the house, Airbnb. So, you know, I don't know how you police that either. So, I just don't think they belong in residential areas, and I think your example of a Motel 6 is exactly, exactly the point. Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Frank. Also point out that the survey you're referring to, that was by email, I think that was a city survey, not the counties, right? So, our next speaker is a council member from Ojai, William Werick, followed by Joel Freeman.
I didn't finish my remarks until just before the meeting, so I did put a handout together for everyone, Chair Parks, members of the supervisors. I am representing the City of Ojai in the sense of our policy and our decisions, and then I have personal comments that I wanted to make about, I'm alarmed at the staff interpretation of the non-coastal zoning ordinance. Our position, very succinctly put, is that after six years of suspending enforcement of our zoning code, the council decided, multiple votes decided that we are going to enforce our current code. So, we never passed any new law to ban anything, we decided to start enforcing what we have. And if you read the non-coastal zoning ordinance, it parallels very closely to Title 10 of the City of Ojai, which gets to my point. Imagine a unique neighborhood, meandering streets, representing one of the defining residential zones within the City of Ojai. The interpretation of staff of the non-coastal zoning ordinance allows the following outcome. On one side of the street, nothing but residential properties with homes, people participating in the community, and on the other side of the street, in our neighborhood called the Arrolada, nothing but vacation rentals, all non-hosted. That is what the... That is what the interpretation of the non-coastal zoning ordinance as, as short-term rentals as accessory use allows, inside our sphere of influence, in one of our defining neighborhoods. Again, it's all based on the idea that a short-term rental is an incidental, appropriate, and subordinate use to residential. I think Supervisor Bennett already spoke about this issue, in that when you have residential use that is allowed, when you have business uses that can go on in a residential neighborhood, you get nonsensical outcomes like the one I described. In the time I have allowed, I'd like to ask two things. One, oh, and by the way, I've talked to two city attorneys with multiple decades of experience, and they've never heard anything like this kind of interpretation for accessory use in residential properties. Beyond all of these points I want to make, I would ask simply one thing of this, of this board. Consider directing staff to look at the interpretation of the non-coastal zoning ordinance with one change: Short-term rentals are not a residential use, period. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Joel Freeman, and he will be followed by Adrienne Peck.
First off, to address the issue that a short-term rental is really a Motel 6 without the sign on it, I don't think that's true, because Motel 6s don't necessarily have kitchens and living rooms that everybody gets to use, you know, it's a lot different. And the people that are renting, for example, a family renting a short-term rental home that's going, because they want to be with their family, is not the same as six people that are different renting a motel room, that are staying in their own separate motel room. And so I don't think it's a fair equivalent to make. But my thing is, is I think, as I put in my comments that I sent, my written comments, I think we really need to get a better handle on the data, the data, and what happens, and I think the only way to do that is to do a licensing and permitting. And that way you can track things, because then you'll have a number, a license number, and you'll know how many VBROs are out there, how many people are at least registering to do it, and then you can collect data and follow through with it. Also complaints made to the police, by, to the police or to a unit that's responsible for taking the complaints, can refer to a license number, you know, and then you have a location, and so then you'll be able to get more data, and with that, you'll be able to make regulations that are minimal and not overreaching. And I think that way you, you increase the number of options that your citizens have by not restricting too many freedoms, more than you need to do. An outright ban, if you did that, you'll never know where the line is, because you will never know, you won't incrementally get there, you'll just ban it outright, and you'll never know if you could have done it another way, that it allows people to do VBROs and allows visitors to come and stay in that experience, whereas if you did it slowly, you'll be able to find that line, where the citizens are protected and the people that own homes, that can need the supplemental income can do that, and then visitors will be able to come and experience a different way of visiting your city or your county. And that's what I think.
While you're calling up the next speaker, Mr. Stevens, am I correct in that in your report, you made the statement that in general, compliance with licensing runs at about 10%? Did you make some reference to that in your report?
The, the, yeah, there has been information on, that's the licensing here in Ventura County, those are our estimates based on a comparison of what is currently registered with the Treasury Task Collector and what we see on the platforms.
Great, thank you.
Can I have a couple more seconds? Could I add one thing? In regards to that?
Okay, a couple more seconds, please.
With regards to the licensing thing, you would put a penalty, a large penalty, if you didn't get a license, and if somebody made a complaint, you would then enforce that, because a complaint, you know the address, you'd be able to see if they had a license, and then they obviously have violated that, and then you could penalize them for that. So that's almost a self-enforcement, at least dealing with only where the complaints are derived from. You know, if there's no complaints, it's going to go under the radar, but we're really trying to solve the complaints.
Thank you, and thank you for the perspective of trying to gradually figure out where that sweet spot is, if you will. So we have Adrian Peck, followed by Robert Murphy.
Hello, thank you again for letting me speak. I spoke here in December, and I turned in a letter that the clerk of the board told me was approved and actually on your agenda as of yesterday morning. I am a homeowner and have been in Hollywood Beach since 2003. Right next door to me, we have a long-term rented home, which turned into about a year and a half ago, a short-term rental. I do have problems with that. I've actually had, you know, our home and those around me are zone R1, RB1 is the original zoning of the single-family houses in the county residential community of Hollywood Beach and the outlying Channel Islands Coastal Service District neighborhoods. The zoning for the residence of the one next to me, 4025 Sunset Lane, and the majority of properties in this area is residential, not business-owned. I did include in that letter that I wrote to you that was distributed yesterday, that I've had to call the police on multiple incidences from parties, I've had to contact the owners and text or phone call about barking dogs. People come to the neighborhood, they allow a dog, they lock up the dog, the dog continues to bark. My home is built with a three-foot area to the fence next to the one, this property that I'm speaking of, and everything can be heard. Most of us do not have air conditioning, we have our windows open because we enjoy the sound of the ocean, we enjoy the ocean breezes, and when you're forced to shut your windows because a party's going on or barking dogs, it makes it a nuisance, and it's really a horrible thing for us as residents who are there full-time to have to endure. The Airbnb complaint I made, the response was the fact that they will not take any, they'll pass on the information, but they will not be responsible for any third-party nuisance. So I, you know, and I honestly, the neighbors next to me have told me multiple times, go ahead and talk to the tenants, go ahead and call the cops, that's the response I'm getting from them. And then I'm offered, that I'm told that they will kick out the noisy tenants, they don't do so, they allow them to continue to stay for the time that they've booked or reserved. So I've kind of at a point in my, my standing that I've tried to be nice, I've tried to get along, I've tried to do whatever possible to be nice to the tenants, they come to rent and party, they're not there to be part of the residential neighborhood. And I do hope that you guys banned, ban all the short-term rentals. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peck. Robert Murphy, followed by Vicky Carlton-Burn.
Good afternoon, Supervisor staff, my name is Bob Murphy, I live in Oxnard Shores, and I am here as a private party, but I'm Vice Chair of our Neighborhood Council, and for the last two years, I have been on the HOA, Community Association. And I'm here to talk to you and take a little bit different slant about this STR thing that we normally do. If you could picture, let's say there never was a problem with any of the STRs, no noise, no nuisance, no barking dogs, no people next door, residents are still penalized and still have a bad problem to overcome, and what happens is, we're required by law, by the California Department of Real Estate, to disclose that we have STRs on our street. It's a requirement. So, let's take the typical scenario. Here we are, I'm living in my house, you're living in your house, we're living in a residentially zoned neighborhood. Now along comes an out-of-town investor, who buys a house nearby, and basically what he does by having an STR, he's opened a commercial real estate business in a residential neighborhood, advertises the business on social media, advertises it with real estate companies on their websites, and then, or they manage it. He pays them money, and pays them out of his proceeds that are coming. Soon he starts to collect his commercial income from the weekly transits, but it's never used as a residence. It functions like a commercial motel for visitors only. The only thing really lacking is the commercial signage, they referred to Mr. Bennett. Well, then where does this owner live, if not in the house in the residential neighborhood? You know, he lives all over the place. They live in Agoura Hills, we have one guy on my street who's building his second home, he lives in Las Vegas, we have people from Sherman Oaks, we have people from Colorado in our neighborhood that live there. Back to the real estate disclosure for a second. It's obligatory that a nearby resident like me, or you, if you're living there, disclose those operations. Now, I've got six on my street, does that mean I've got to disclose it six times? Right? My next, my neighbor, two, three doors down, just lost a sale, she's a real estate agent, she lost a sale, when she was told, when she had to tell people that there's STRs in our neighborhood. She lost the sale entirely. So when these six disclosures cause my house to fail to sell, or I have to, I'll wrap it up. I want to ask you this, who's going to make me whole when that happens? There's no noise, there's no problems, there's no barking dogs, there's just people renting their house out as commercial property, but I'm penalized because I'm not able to sell my home because of these required disclosures by the California Department of Real Estate. I have a lot more to say, but I guess we'll save it for next time. Thank you very much.
I just want to follow up that by making a comment that, he's making a good point about one aspect of how residents are penalized, but another way residents are penalized is, they have to compete with those investors for the purchase of those residential homes, and those investors can make four, five times as much as you could make in normal rent with vacation rentals. So what you're doing is, you're taking housing stock off the market for people who want to use them as true residents, and driving the price up for those people that do want to use them as true residents. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
And I'm sorry to cut you off, if you find that there, your issue isn't raised, let us know at the end, all your issues. Vicky Carlton-Burn, and Marcy Toshier.
Thank you. In the interest of time, I'll be blunt, Supervisor Bennett, I believe I can answer your earlier question. There are, all of the little issues and suggestions that were made for regulation, I've seen every single one of them sidestepped and broken in the City of Ojai. I live in Ojai, for almost three and a half months, I've been mapping short-term rentals in the Ojai Valley. I believe the county report understates the amount of STRs in this, in the county. I have mapped almost 250 myself in Ojai, not in city limits, all through the Ojai Valley. When I began, the grace period suspending enforcement in the city was coming to an end, and so I expected that short-term rentals were going to be ceasing their operation. Instead, at the beginning of July, of the 60 STRs that I personally identified in the city limits, 43 were still operating. All the owners were very quickly morphing their listings, but of even greater concern to me is what Airbnb was doing behind the scenes. The two biggest companies, as you know, are involved in STRs, they not only don't share data with any local governments, they actively work to block data that can be used for enforcement. In May, I spoke at a city council meeting about my mapping, 48 hours later, Airbnb dropped street names from maps across the country, from all of their listings. A month later, street names were moved entirely, and about two weeks ago, I saw that there are listings that are hidden from an Airbnb map of Ojai, but you can still access the listings directly, if you know what to look for. There are cities, many cities have tried to grapple with this, as been mentioned, Anaheim is one such city that finally gave up and about two weeks ago banned STRs entirely, and now Airbnb is suing Anaheim. So based on my experience, I've come to the conclusion that there really is no compromise position, I know that's a horrible place to be in, it looks very harsh, but I don't see any position that can be legally or practically enforced, so I support a complete ban until such time as the Airbnb lawsuits make their way through the courts and hopefully leave us with something that will give us some decent enforcement tools. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Marcy Toshier, Toshier, excuse me, followed by Craig Woodman.
Good afternoon. I'm here on behalf of a fellow Ojai resident and business owner, and this is her letter. We live on Kayuma, Cayama, the, in the unincorporated area of Ojai, we have two STRs next to us. Ventura County Zoning Section 805-1.3 states, "No use or structure is allowed unless expressly identified or determined to be equivalent." I was told that the planning department is determining that a short-term rental and an accessory dwelling unit are equivalent. So a house that has been converted into a hotel, advertised on multiple platforms, and has a third-party corporation take money via credit card for each night is the same as a home? And in a year and a half, we have literally seen hundreds of people come and go. Would you want over 100 neighbors? How is that the same as a home? Deeming hotels and homes as equivalent has put us in the position of living in a neighborhood that has lost its residential quality. Who is protecting the rights, our rights to enjoy our home in peace? Sleepless nights and tired days never to get back? These hotels are bypassing all zoning laws and property security and management that a legitimate hotel must have. Our residential zone does not even allow bed and breakfasts or boarding houses, so how can you allow STRs? Time and time again, tourists have proven that they do not belong vacationing in residential neighborhoods, they are far louder for far, far longer and later than any legitimate hotel would permit. These STRs are expensive, so multiple families pile in, when 10, 20-plus people are partying, staying up late, and disrupting the environment, who is looking out for our health, peace of mind, and right to enjoy our home? No one. Please instruct the planning department to start correctly interpreting the code and Ojai zoning. Thank you.
Our next speaker then is Craig Woodman, followed by Chris Gardner.
Good afternoon, my name's Craig Woodman, and I represent Jackal &amp; Pop, who has owned a small bungalow in Hollywood Beach for 56 years. And our family regularly visits the home, and in between those times, we have professional property managers rent the place out on a short-term basis. I'm here to support professional management of STRs. I'm here to say that the Options and Issue paper regarding STRs fails to distinguish between STR properties that are professional, local, property management firms, fails to distinguish between those, and then properties rented by Airbnb and VRBO that don't provide a structure for active oversight or management or response to complaints, some of the problems we've heard about today, I know are difficult, and those types of organizations don't provide that, that support. In contrast, and this isn't, you know, a plug for them, but our property is managed by Coldwell Bankers, which is literally, they have an office a few minutes down the road, all the locals know them, we know them, their phone number, 24/7 phone number is posted on our property. We pay a good proportion of rental fee to them to ensure that the tenants don't cause quality-of-life problems, that all TOTs are paid, and that all tenants are screened to ensure they're appropriate for the neighborhood and for the size of our property, which is a small one-bedroom, can sleep four, six, but no more than that. You know, in addition to the local contact information, we know all our neighbors, we've known some of those neighbors since 1960, our family has, and they have our phone numbers, our email addresses. We want to make sure this neighborhood stays quiet and fun, the way it has been for a long time. So I, we believe that property owners like my mother-in-law, who already pay for active professional property oversight, management, and response to complaints, should be exempted from obtaining individual business licenses and permits.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Gardner, followed by Kathleen Ruus.
Good afternoon, Board. My name's Chris Gardner, I'm a representative of Plan Don't Ban, which is an organization started in the City of Ojai after the council confirmed a ban, their words, on short-term rentals. So over the last couple of months, we actually, within two weeks, obtained over 800 signatures, or 20% approximately of the residents in Ojai are in favor of limited licensed locally-owned STRs. Unfortunately, our petition was denied on a technicality which we're looking to overturn. First off, I'd like to congratulate the staff for what I consider a balanced report, highlighting both the benefits and the issues of STRs. Compliment you at your efforts at a discussion based on data, not anecdotes. Majority are in favor of regulations based on what we've seen in Ojai. Our online poll, also not scientific, was very consistent with the one done in Oxnard, we had over 80% support of 300 people who responded to that poll. In door-to-door campaigns, over 90% of the people we talked to signed our petition. The opponents seemed to attack this data for validity- The opponents seem to attack this data for validity because they don't seem to like the results. So for staff and council, I'd just say it's a good job, well-started. I hope you can continue to be open and transparent, and I would definitely reflect Mr. Bennett's comments in that regard. Be aware of the noisy few. There are a lot of people who come, they share their anecdotes, it's all interesting, but all the public information I've seen to date, even votes in places like San Francisco, suggests the majority want good regulation, not an overall ban. In Ojai, in fact, citizens would like a vote, but our government doesn't want this to happen. They fought us aggressively against this. So please don't be like our local Ojai government. Please try to do the right thing by the people.
Could I ask you a question?
Mm-hmm.
What do you think about the proposal that you have to get permission from the residents around you?
So we wrote, I actually wrote the ordinance with a few other folks in our organization. Many of the regulations that you put up, in fact, the majority of them are in our ordinance, very tough regulations, local ownership, both controls on number, location, et cetera. We put in what we call a good neighbor policy, which didn't require, but said that you would do, make a best effort basis to get the phone numbers and contact information of all your neighbors.
But it didn't require their approval?
It didn't require, we would not be opposed to that. We wrote it that way. I would, if I wrote it again, I'd probably say, do what you do with a permit, 300 feet, get the stickers from the county, send out notification. Again, I probably wouldn't require permission by neighbors, because I think that's-
And that, that was the question that I asked.
But I think I would set up notification and, you know, just like a permit.
Thank you.
Your word.
Kathleen Ruse, followed by Perello.
Good afternoon. I'll try to be very, very quick for you. I think allowing short-term rentals would be prioritizing loop-de-loop business owners over the quality of life of the people who are residents of our neighborhoods. I don't think you can regulate human behavior. We've actually proved that through firework laws, the fireworks going on. It's been outlawed in the city of Oxnard for years now. It was usually around 4th of July. Now it's like fireworks are all summer long. You call the police department, they can't find them, they say, "We can't do anything until we can identify where they are." They're coming in more and more with a lot of the short-term rentals, but if you can't regulate something that's already on the books, this is, this is going to be a cha, a challenge beyond what I think we, we can deal with right now. I came back from Iraq, I'm diving under the bed all the time with these short-term rental people bringing in the fireworks. We're told to call the police department when RE/MAX or somebody can't deal with their short-term rental people. They say, "Well, call the police department." The police aren't here to be our managers for short-term rentals, they're not here to manage your unruly people, that's up to the managers and their short-term rental owners, and that's not happening. It's not happening on a consistent basis. I've actually moved from the shores, Oxnard shores, Mandalay Beach shores, to go up to the lake, Pine Lake, to get away from the fireworks and to get away from the short-term rentals, especially during the summertime, and it was just as bad up there, so I had to leave and come back. And I slept in my car with my dog, you know? So I, it is a problem. I know people say that the anecdotes are not sufficient. They are, we have plenty of data with the police department calling them. I think we've proven that we can't regulate these things. RE/MAX and some of the other management companies have really dropped the ball on saying that they're going to be in charge, and they just tell you to call the police department when you have a problem. And that's about all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Ruse.
Okay.
Our next speaker, Bert Perillo, council member from Oxnard, but not representing the council today, right?
Yes.
That's right. And then also Brad Marcus.
Oh, Chair Parks. Bert Perillo, I am a council member from the city of Oxnard, and I will just give the anecdotal information from Oxnard, then I'll give you my opinion. As a council member from Oxnard, I'm called numerous times from residents that have concerns about the short-term rentals and the issue that they have with the local police department being called numerous times and not able to really control the problem. The problem will die down. Within an hour, there's more noise, more problems, the police department gets called back. This has become a problem for our city management, having to deal with it, and now our planning staff. I believe, and now I'll get to my opinion, I believe the short-term rental issue is out of control, and I'm hearing this from other parts of the area. It's very interesting, the concerns that they have. I have nothing against capitalism. This is a terrific opportunity to make money. The city would love to, and the county, I'm sure, would love to make a fee off of all of these things. But the quality of life and what's impacted for the person that bought a home to live in as a residential unit, and what is being done to these neighborhoods, neighborhoods, damaging them, is wrong. Question I have with your staff, and there was, there's been some accolades with your staff, and I'm only taking this from trying to work with my staff in the city of Oxnard. There were several questions that the board supervisors asked that were, went unanswered, so I don't consider that complete work. And with that information, there was an issue if we have a family member live in the home when you rent them out, one family member in. I have a question for staff, and I hope one of you will ask it. If we have an underage family member that lives in a second home, and we claim that's his original home, will that fly under the radar, will that be accepted in the item that was given? The survey that was given showed 76 responses. City of Oxnard is over 200,000, I think 210,000, 220,000 people. The method, even the residents that are not near the beach in the city of Oxnard have questioned that survey. The area and the question, the biggest one in my mind, is if it's zoned a particular way, it should be operated a particular way. We have businesses in Oxnard that are run out of garages, and we have residents who are complaining about that. This issue, where people are able to run a very lucrative money-making business, where there are no sanctions against the owner, other than call the police and complain about the renter, and there's no sanction against the owner, if you do take a step to put this in place, there's got to be sanctions against the person that owns the property. You've got to cut him in his pocketbook. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Brad Marcus, followed by Pam Warden.
Good afternoon, Honorable Supervisors. Thank you for looking into this. It's a matter of urgency, and why is that? Because the world has changed. It used to be there were two-week rentals over the summer, the local real estate people handled it, there weren't so many people around, and it was not a problem. But the world has changed because five years ago, until the smartphone really came, ruled to rule our lives, businesses like Airbnb and Uber could not exist. So that's how it's changed. And the result has been that we who live on the beach now see a whole new group of people. Every other day, every other weekend, we have to look at our neighbors, though they're not our neighbors, there are people that are coming here. We love seeing people enjoy the beach. The beach has good access to it, every block has access to the beach, there's parking by the harbor. But when you're living on a 35-foot lot with three-foot side yards, and you've got 20 kids next door having a great time, which we all say, "Well, isn't that nice?", until it goes on and on and on, and you've heard the war stories, I don't have to repeat that. But it's urgent that we do something about it now. You've got a whole scope of opportunities to select from. Your staff did what I think was a very good job outlining the problem. You have to select those things that are important, and I ask you to do so with the idea in mind that you are living in this house on the beach, and you are considering, well, what would be fair for my next-door neighbor to be subjected to? And we who live there wind up, unless there's going to be restrictions, we wind up being the police and the hall monitors to make sure that the behavior isn't too far out of hand. And the idea that there's a phone call, or we could call the sheriff, we shouldn't have to do that. We shouldn't have this flood of people coming onto the beach for short periods of time. So there are things that we can do, that you can do, and we ask you to do, to put limitations on it. Nobody likes restrictions, but on the other hand, we all have to live together, and we're asking you to think about being in a house on the beach, and how would you like to have your next-door neighbor regulated? Thank you.
Thank you. Pam Warden, followed by Julie Han.
Good afternoon. My name is Pam Warden, and I've lived in Muscle Shoals since 1972, only Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, and then I have to go back to work. But I have been doing it since 1972. I have never rented my house out, nor do I plan to ever do that, so I'm not here to speak about that. I have, we do have and have had weekly rentals in our neighborhood as long as I can remember, and they cause no more problem than some owners do sometimes when they have big parties and drink too much and stay up too much. So it isn't just renters that do these things. I'm not sure how I feel about the short-term rental. I, I see the one and two, and we haven't had too much problem with that. We have, I have a couple right next door, but I do want to say that I don't, I can't say transparency. I found out about this by walking along the beach and talking to one of my neighbors, who had gotten an email from the homeowners association president, who, I had no idea. I have one other person here with me, and he, there are 55 homes there. If there are two people to a house, there's at least 100 people there in Muscle Shoals, and we've heard nothing of this. This is through gossip? I have to find out what the government's doing? I want to say to you, I want to know what's happening, even if I won't agree with you in the end, at least I'll know that's happening. I had no idea until two days ago that this was happening. What I did, I sent an email out to everybody who was part of the email I have, which is not Ken High's half of the homeowners association. So everybody knew at least about it, but they found out about it Sunday night. Can we have some more information sent out? You send my tax bill right on time. I get it every year, and it, twice.
We don't mess with that.
And, and it's always right, and it's always there. Can you do the same if you're doing something this monumental by having me notified so that I can at least speak or at least know what you're doing? That's all I ask. Can we have more transparency by soliciting comments some way from people, for Muscle Shoals, that's all I can think about, because that's all I live in, is Muscle Shoals. Can I just have some kind of communication with you through Muscle Shoals? Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I, I'd just like to, to, to respond to that. Faria Beach and Muscle Shoals and those areas, we had people from those homeowners associations here at our, at our meeting that we had about six months ago. I, I think that there was, there was good representation from that group. There certainly has been no attempt to try to hide it. It is difficult when you have 800,000 people in the county to find a way to communicate to everybody about an issue, but this, this issue had tremendous newspaper coverage. This, this issue has not been something that people have tried to hide, and I think that, you know, short of trying to contact every house in, in the county on, on, on every issue, you would always have somebody saying, "I didn't know about it." But the major, but, but certainly significant players in the homeowners association, I know in Faria, were here, and when they heard that we at least were, one of the policies we wanted to look at was for homeowners associations to be able to petition to the county to exempt themselves from any kind of ban that we might put on. That seemed to have the people from, from Faria at least, and I'm not certain about Muscle Shoals, feel more comfortable, and I think that may be why they didn't go back and have significant conversations. And I see Chuck Menzel here, and I know he's from Faria Beach, and he may have some, some additional information, but there, at, at least one of the major places in my district, which is the beach rentals down there, I think feel very different than the residential neighborhoods that we're talking about in Ojai, et cetera. And we, we specifically have asked staff to see if they can carve something out for those homeowners associations, because they've got decades of finding a way to make it work, and-
Please don't refer to me as a homeowner association. I do not belong to it. I'm not able to-
Great.
I, I would rather not have a debate, but we are, I believe the point is taken, your concern of not having notification or an opportunity.
So anyway, so I'll be curious to hear from Mr. Menzel. I think you put in a card, Mr. Menzel? Great, good, thank you.
And again, Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yes, I, I just want to assure that, to me, this is really important, that the public knows, gets notified. In fact, I've had that concern from my district, but it was in the newspaper, it was in the radio, and, and also one of the things that we've done with some of the residents is they, they can apply to get an agenda. You know, the, I know that the clerk can, can also then send an agenda to the homeowners association, to the individuals, and they are available, and Brian here is, is concurring with me that you have that opportunity to have the agenda sent to your home or to your association, but, and I, one of the things that we told, directed staff to do is to come out with at least a 30-day notice prior to this meeting, and I think Chris talked about that earlier. So I think it's important that everybody, everybody understands that we're having meetings like this, or any meeting for that matter, and the agendas are available, and you can get them through the, through the clerk's office.
Mr. Powers?
Thank you, Supervisor. And just to mention too, it was on the draft agenda for the last six weeks as well, to further get the notes out.
And also, though, we do have the opportunity in this day and age to utilize the internet pretty well, and, and something like this, we can post, and you can put comments in, and you have your ability to, to send comments in also. So I just, we need to do what we can to reach out so people know about it, and the point is taken. Pam Warden we had, and Julie Han we had, so now we'll go to Beverly Park.
I'm, I'm zero.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just grading.
Okay. You're Julie, that's right, sorry.
Hi, my name is Julie Han, and I moved to Ojai in August 2014 to pursue my research into healing and caring modalities that promote the body's natural ability to heal. I began my relationship with Airbnb officially in January 2016 as a bridge to, as I developed my retreat model. I was initially not clear on my potential relationship with Airbnb to cultivate my retreat model. As I became more familiar with the venue, I realized it had incredible potential to attract people like-minded. I've had doctors from the Cleveland Clinic, nurses from NIH, a group of Reiki practitioners from Harvard Medical. Recently, I was asked by the Ojai's Visitors Bureau to be a part of their wellness tour for spirituality and health. I was asked to submit an article on my work to help promote the healing community of Ojai. What have I learned about Airbnb? I have complete control over who I book on the property. Airbnb verifies guests and handles all financial transactions. This is very important to neighbors and myself. I know who is coming. They have been reviewed by others. If a potential guest does not have reviews, I do not book them. Two, I develop the house rules that honor my intention to create a healing environment. I set the parameters for my guests. I let guests know that I live on the property and let them know that I am available to support them for their time there. I also let them know that I have full access to the property at my discretion to ensure that all house rules are followed. I take a large security deposit and inform them that there will be penalties if the house rules are broken. I limit the number of guests to six, as well as the number of cars. My neighbors are curious about Airbnb. It is a hot topic in my community. I realize there's a great deal of misinformation on the topic. I share with my neighbors my learning of Airbnb and the potential for this platform. I communicate with my neighbors, my neighbors come first. I get to review the Airbnb guests on the platform. Thus, there is a way to vet guests who are not appropriate. In return, guests also get to review me. This system is very effective and provides a venue for learning and managing expectations and standards. Next, the Airbnb, Airbnb website is very sophisticated. I have instant messaging for myself, my guests. It provides a sync calendar, statistics, transaction history, and secure communication that does not share my address.
And your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Beverly Park.
Shepherd.
Shepherd. And she's followed by Michael Haley.
Good afternoon. I've already sent in a letter, so I'm going to short-circuit that. I would like to talk about my personal experience. I know those are only anecdotal, but I think they're important, because after all, we're the anecdotes that live in your neighborhood. I don't live in the Ventura County. I have for 30 years, just down the street, up the street from us, I've lived there for 30 years. I now live in the city of Ojai, thank goodness. My city has supported the banning of short-term rentals, and I really appreciate them for doing that. We really had to study it and put our comments into it, and they, in their graciousness, have decided that it's important to, to- have decided that it's important to protect our neighborhoods, keep them safe, and have them peaceful and quiet, just like Ojai has always been. My neighbor, my daughter, who lives in Ventura County, just two doors past that line that Mr. Wierich was talking about, she is not so lucky. She lives next door to an STR also. Oh, I forgot. I lived in the city of, I live in the city of Ojai, but next door to me was a short-term rental, which I had horrendous problems with, calling the police, et cetera. But my daughter now lives next to a short-term rental, and she has no protection. Her family has to be surrounded by short-term rentals, including a winery right across the street, who puts them out as, puts themselves out as a short-term rental. Because of our personal experience and our digital, our diligent study of vacation rental issues around the world, and I have studied them, I've done, I've been a researcher, and I have researched everything, we are convinced that the regulation of these residential hotels will never allow anybody to have a reasonable expectation of peace and quiet or respite from the business world. Enforcement of these rentals are impossible, as cities and counties are now finding out. Regulation versus an outright ban on STR pits neighbor against neighbor. Any enforcement regulation rely on your neighbors to enforce them.
Your time is up, too.
Sorry, that might not be in your ordinances, but that's who regulates these STRs. This past June, just after the city informed us they were keep, they were going to enforce it, they kept, we had to keep taking pictures and peeking over the fence.
Okay, but your time is up. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Michael Haley, followed by Rachel Ulrich.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to come and talk to you about this. There's a lot I have to say, so I thought maybe I would just respond to some of the things that I've heard here today. I'm a, I just moved to this area from Napa County about seven or eight months ago. I was a wine grape grower up there for 14 seasons, and I noted the comparison with Sonoma and Napa, and I wanted to mention why that is. Sonoma's four times the size of Napa. Napa's actually a very small county. And Napa has restricted short-term rentals, vacation rentals, for decades, the whole time that I lived there. And they have no problem with that. I think it's because they've been doing it for so long, and they got on it, and occasionally they do have a problem. And what they do is they sue the people. They give them, you know, maybe two, three chances to stop. When they don't stop, they file a lawsuit. There's been several high-profile lawsuits that went on where they thought they could fight back on property rights or state law or some way or another. They invariably lose. They lose a lot of money. I had lunch, actually, with the last people that tried to do that, and I said, "You're out of your mind. You're going to lose a lot of money." And they're just so angry, you know? I mean, they did. And so what happens is that everybody just stops. My concern is the economics of the situation. Napa is very concerned about housing. The difference between Napa and Sonoma is Sonoma has plenty of housing. Napa doesn't have housing. That's why they've been so strict about it. Ventura looks a lot more like Napa to me than it looks like Sonoma. So I think the lack of housing, not just affordable housing, but housing in general here, is very severe, and there's no way around it. It's going to cut into housing. The other point I wanted to make is that I think you need to dig deeper into the economics of the situation. I'm the one that wrote the letter about crowding out hotels. Napa would not allow vacation rentals, but they made an aggressive push to get high-end hotels. You're getting, I'm getting 30 seconds, you're getting $300,000 from 95 vacation rentals. That's pretty low. I mean, the city of St. Helena has 25, and they're getting $144,000 in TOT. But you're going to spend that much, probably, enforcing it, especially if you add all these complicated rules. So I'm out of time. You know what? I'm going to write something more about that, because I really think you need to take a deeper look at the economics, because it doesn't pencil out. It doesn't pencil out at all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And anyone also, feel free to write us, we do read it. Rachel, followed by Stephanie Roddy.
Good afternoon. I applaud you guys for your patience. I know it's a lot of speakers. I am actually here from Ventura. I am not in the county and area, but I want to speak to what we are experiencing in Ventura. As I grew up in the Pierpont area, and my husband as well, 42, 43 years, went to Pierpont School, promptly moved back after college, medical school, graduate school, and have raised our three kids. And I have lived on the same lane that I grew up in. I could speak to the alarming change in the nature of our neighborhood. When we first moved back to Ventura in 19, excuse me, 97, we had seven families with multiple children. We would all walk our kids to Pierpont School. It was a neighborhood that I grew up in. And we started having about two short-term vacation rentals, two, well, about five years ago, six years ago. In the last year, we are now at seven. We have gone from two to seven. And let me be clear, nobody lives in these houses. These are out-of-town people that own two and three houses. Some even own three to four short-term vacation rentals. It's a fantastic business model. So if you're looking for a great business model, it works perfectly. But as a residential neighborhood, it's really starting to change the neighbor, nature of our neighborhood. And this year, Pierpont Elementary has a severe, significant decline in their kindergarten registration, and I can attest to that, because we no longer have any kids on our lane. And so I'm concerned that it's really going to be exponential in the next year or two, and we really need to address this. And so Ventura is going to be affected by what you guys decide, and Ojai and Santa Barbara. And so I would like to be a part of a solution, because I really do want to preserve the nature of our neighborhood. They're very special, and I don't want to price out Ventura County residents from owning beach houses. And that's kind of what I've seen, because the people that bought the properties on our lane are not from Ventura. And the people that were moved out of the rentals are Ventura people. And so I urge you guys to seek residential neighborhoods for residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ulrich. Stephanie Roth, followed by Mark Rochan.
Good afternoon. I would like to speak about the city of Ventura's nuisance report system for reporting issues with short-term vacation rentals and their owners. In its report, the county recently lauded the system, saying that it is a success. It is not. It is an unmitigated disaster. No one uses it, because it is impossible to use. 23 years ago, my husband and I bought a home in the Pierpont community of Ventura. We bought in an R1B zone neighborhood, a residential neighborhood. According to the zoning laws, commercial uses of homes were not and are not permitted. Today, we find ourselves in a mini-hotel zone with seven mini-hotels on our short lane. The quiet of our once-residential neighborhood is being destroyed. The majority of the owners of these mini-hotels not only do not live on our lane, they do not even live in Ventura. None are in the homes when they rent them out to vacationers. Some flagrantly disregard the city's rules, even advertising online on several sites that the homes can be rented to more people than the code allows. There is no code enforcement. The city has set up a system that leaves the burden of enforcement on the neighbors. If we want to complain about these inherently illegal mini-hotels and vacationers they house, we must police our own neighbors. Every time vacationers block our driveways or park in the middle of the lane, blocking access for emergency vehicles, every time they crowd the homes with far more than the allowable number of people, every time they make bonfires on the beach because they do not know the fire laws, we are expected to first call the owner, be the police, and complain. At best, know the fire laws. We are put in an untenable position. I want to just enjoy my home with neighbors who know and respect the neighborhood laws, both written and unwritten. I didn't buy a home here to become a policewoman. I hate how it makes me feel, as do many residents. When I have to complain to a neighbor, so I often don't complain, and then I cannot fill out the form, because it won't go through without the date and time you complained to the neighbor. The choice is live with the disturbances or live in conflict with your neighbor. I'd like to, well, I was going to give a brief example, but I guess I'm not. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mark Rochan?
Rochan.
Thank you. Thank you. And then followed by Stan Green.
Dear Board of Supervisors, I'm Mark Rochan, and I'm here to say short-term rentals have been here for 50 years and continue in unincorporated Ventura County. And it's a beach area. We're in a beach area, which is a vacation area. It's for visitors. It works in Big Bear Lake and has been working there. As a 40-year resident and family of Silverstone Beach, it's clear from the survey done and by the most part of the testimony at our December meeting, we, the majority of the residents, who may or may not be here, desire STRs and believe they are a positive impact on our neighborhood. I was going to emphasize some quotes from the report that you guys actually have. Some of the benefits, their ability to help homeowners defray homeownership costs, so they can remain in the home. They bring additional visitors to local businesses. They generate new revenue for local governments. They create unique experiences for visitors and hosts. Ventura County enacted the TOT in '78, which continues to be implemented. The survey, which has been discussed here, it is the survey. We do have documentation. 70% of the respondents were homeowners. 48% of the respondents believed STRs were having a positive impact on their neighborhood. 68% reported that STRs should be allowed within a single-family residence. The city of Ventura even says in the report, too, that 24-hour contact information being provided to neighbors and revocation of licenses when problems are not timely addressed. And they said that that has been proven effective. The actual staff has said this. And of course, back to the coastal condition, one of the state's primary goals is to maximize public access and visitor-serving opportunities within the coastal zone. And the Coastal Act policy states lower-cost visitor recreational facilities shall be encouraged. So I would just like to go over some of the STR regulations you guys are evaluating and give my input on to it. The enforcement, you guys have placed in the report, automatically revoke a permit after three verified complaints. As you can tell, I humbly ask you that you do, like the city of Ventura, revocation of permit when problems are not timely addressed. Because as you can tell, there is people out there that are emotional and adamantly not patient, and will do anything to destroy a bona fide business by continuously faking and falsely making numerous complaints. And with the three abilities, that could definitely do that. Operational limits, I would hope that you guys consider entire unit STRs limited to a maximum number of rental days per year that allow the visitor-serving opportunities with the coastal zone during the peak visitor season of Memorial Day through Labor Day and weekends and holidays during the rest of the year.
And your time, too, is up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Stan Green, followed by Kelsey Zimmerman.
I've been up here a number of times, but not recently. So I'm a little confused, and I don't envy the position that you're in, but what's the history of what's going on? And why did this become a major issue now? And I've been thinking about that, and the history is that we now have a technical method of connecting people with short-term rentals. So who benefits from that? Obviously, the people who are renting places, because they can get a lot more money on short-term rentals than they can on rentals, ordinary rentals. The impact on the community is what we're discussing a lot. If we make a hotel out of an entire community, are we serving anybody in the long run, or are we just grabbing the platforms to become billion, billionaire people, which they have become? Obviously, it's a very popular thing. And I don't have a problem with them, because they're doing what the market is dictating. So they're doing very well. And if they don't like the rules, they sue, and they've got resources to make it difficult for small communities to fight back. The impact on the community and its nature is very important. The impact on schools that don't have people moving in with children, because they're not bringing children in, they're only there for the weekend. So schools are beginning to lose their nature by losing their students.
Your time is up, sir. So your time is up.
I only, I only got started.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I know it goes quick.
Can I get to a conclusion statement?
Well, you have exceeded your time, so if you can wrap it up, maybe a sentence or so.
We're actually looking not for good neighbor policy, you know, which has been put out there. We'll have a good neighbor policy, and that'll take care of it. We're really looking for good neighbors.
Thank you. Kelsey Zimmerman, followed by Jim Estomo.
Hello, Supervisors. Thank you for creating the opportunity for me to speak today. My name is Kelsey Zimmerman. I live in the unincorporated area of Ojai with my husband and two elementary school-aged children. I own a small business, and my children to public school, volunteer in our wonderful community, and have a long-term rental that is rented to Ojai residents. My family have been lifelong residents of Ventura County. My husband and I now live on the same street as we grew up on, so we see the difference STRs have caused. For the past three and a half years, we have also lived next door to a larger house hotel in what was a quiet residential neighborhood. When I bought my home five years ago, there wasn't even a thought that crossed my mind that two years later, we'd be living next to a hotel. Never mind five years later, that there would be 11 STRs within a three-quarter mile of our house on our street. The trend of renting whole homes have proliferated due to money, plain and simple. The amount people can rent their homes is astronomical, and have left neighbors to deal with the shrapnel, noise, strangers here today, gone tomorrow, or after the weekend, increased traffic. Our street is a two-lane road at best. Very few places to turn around, and ends with a dead end at the end of a private road. I want to bring up two things, even though there is many more facets to STRs that affect our community. One, quality of life and right to enjoy my property as a residential zone neighborhood. And two, the effects that STRs have on small businesses, the very businesses that employ our residents, being able to find employees, as well as those employees unable to find housing, never mind affordable housing. The amount of house hotel rooms being rented on a three-quarter-mile section of my residential neighborhood can house anywhere, anywhere between 110 to 150 visitors per day. This is a conservative estimate, based on the STRs owners' advertised amount of occupants on VRBO, Airbnb, and personal property manager sites. The STR rates in my neighborhood range from $320 per night up to $10,000 per night. So you can see why it's a very lucrative business. My next-door neighbor lives on a three-acre property, leaves town during the rental times, and allows 12 people at once, often have gone beyond this. She is renting her home for $1,295 a night, $6,500 for the week. The city of Ojai recently upheld their zoning laws. I live two houses from the city line. I would request that you consider expanding the enforcement of zoning laws to match the city of Ojai for the Ojai Valley. We are a whole valley that is very much impacted by each neighborhood. The city is actually relatively small compared to the valley. I live in the county, but my school district is in, is a city school. In fact, our school district's majority of schools reside within the county, not the city. Two, I'm a community-based small business owner. My business is not tailored to tourists. I have three to five employees, along with a business partner. My business partner, three years ago, got divorced and still struggles with housing availability and affording.
Can you wrap up, please?
Her daughter goes to public schools. One employee, I recently lost, she had been asked to leave her studio, because she got evicted because of an STR going in. My other studio manager, she works three jobs to afford her house, and she can't find a housing. studio manager, she works three jobs to afford her house, and she can't find a housing. Our residents are competing with tourists for housing in our residential neighborhoods that are designed for residents to live in. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Estomo, are you still here? I do not see him. We'll hold his card if he comes in. Karen Brooks, followed by Chuck Mamo.
Hi, everybody. I'm Karen Brooks. I live at Oxnard Shores. I am a native of Oxnard. I know that's kind of a rare thing, but I am. My husband and I decided to retire to Oxnard Shores, and we bought a house about five years ago. And we're severely affected by STRs. I am so tired of listening to my neighbors complaining about not getting sleep, about their fifteen-year-old daughters having to keep their curtains closed in the middle of the day because drunken revelers from next door are peeping at them. My neighbor has to escort his twenty-six-year-old daughter to her car at night because he fears the... Well, I don't know what to call them, so leave that to you. But we have a house about a half a block from us that advertises at Sleeps Twenty-Two. Recently, they rented to an entire fraternity from Cal Poly. There were forty young men drinking and partying for three days straight, hence the dad wanting to walk his daughter out to her car. We've had cheerleader camps, bachelorette parties, weddings, and graduations. Don't have a problem with my neighbors having their birthday parties and their christenings and other celebrations in their homes. These are my neighbors. We're usually invited to the parties, so that makes it more agreeable. But to have forty or fifty people showing up at a house and partying for days straight and leaving, and I'm telling you, there is no way to deal with these folks. They tell the neighbors to basically F off. They tell the police the same thing when we get them to show up. I've been hearing a lot of sympathy for people who can't afford their homes, and they need to rent out on VRBO in order to make their mortgages. But for ten thousand dollars a week, I'm not feeling too sorry for these grandmas who are about ready to lose their homes. I haven't so far met one of these grandmas that's about to lose their home. The folks that own these places are out-of-town investors. They own multiple houses, and they're making a lot of money. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks.
For an anecdotal story, that's a very effective anecdotal story.
Chuck Mamo, followed by Derek Dammers.
Steve alluded to, I am Chuck Menzel. I do live up in Faria Beach. I am a resident of Faria Beach. I also manage fifteen homes all along that stretch of beach. By chance, I started off with one or two homes, and homeowners came to me because they wanted someone to have that kind of oversight. Faria Beach started about sixty years ago, and it was always cabins, weekend, summer cabin. So I think, I may be an exception to all these other speakers in the sense that these homes have always characteristically been summer homes. Right now, about sixty percent of them are non-owner occupied, or I meant not full-time occupied, thirty percent of them are vacation rentals. In the three years that I've been doing this for homeowners, I've rented to over six hundred different summer rentals. And I can tell you right now, I've never had a party, never had a wedding, never. But it comes down to, if you don't have any regulation, if you don't have any compliance, if you don't have any support from the community as to how to regulate it, you're going to get into a situation like you've got right now. You basically have a free-for-all within the county. We don't in Faria Beach because our homeowners' association embraces it through rules and regulations, as well as if you have a proper contract. I do have one home now that I'm managing in Pierpont, and you do have to jump through some hoops to even get within their STVR program. You have to have code enforcement now visit the home. You have to give a proof of your contract. There is oversight. The tax benefits to the county, as I see it, just within our community, is very large. But if you don't take that money and put it into some kind of oversight and compliance, I think there is a balance there. I don't know if the balance has to do with various regions within the county. But I think just having a broad stroke across all STVRs characterized across the entire county and banning that type of situation would have some pretty heavy consequences, at least in our community. I am not managing a bunch of businesses, a bunch of new investors. I'm managing multi-generational farming families that have owned these, and it's now split into the multi-generation. They use them sometimes, but they also use that income to support the house. Nobody's banking a bunch of income in our area. It's basically part of the culture within our beach community.
Madam Chair, if I could, I just want to, it seems appropriate at this point in time to repeat what I said at our last meeting, which is, I just think you have to look at a place like Faria Beach and Muscle Shoals even as a different, just like you said, it didn't evolve as a residential community. It evolved as a vacation community. And that's exactly, I think, one of the issues out there, is that it almost maybe needs a new designation, right? If it's not a new designation, at least some way that it's not treated the same as these residents where people are experiencing this kind of activity. So I just want you to know, I asked for that kind of stuff at our last meeting at the same time. Something for Faria, you know, that's not a place where, we're not getting any complaints from Faria. So how Faria is doing it, and that's why one of the things we put down there was the possibility for a homeowners' association to ask for an exemption if they feel like they, you know, that represents the character of the people in that neighborhood, and specifically because it would fit for Faria Beach and some of the other areas up there in particular with that community. So thank you for coming.
What was your, would you say that the full-time residents there are, present?
This is just, this is me going down the community. There's one-hundred-and-ten homes, and about thirty, thirty percent of them are full-time residents. One final comment I do want to...
I agree with you, Steve. I think that's exactly what this was set up, is I know some of those people down there, and the family's had it for years, and somebody built something down there fifty years, seventy years ago, and they've been keeping it. I agree. There's just, there's different areas, no question.
Madam Chair, you have an HOA, is that...
We do.
Oh, so the HOA controls that then? You can control what's happening?
Actually, the HOA doesn't want to get into fines and things like that. They're very concerned about, you know, extending that kind of reach. But we do have rules and regulations that we have residents post within the houses that are being rented out.
So if somebody has a wild party, and they stay up to two, three in the morning drinking beer and so forth, they can go before the board and report it?
They have the ability to go before the board, or they have to actually call that...
Or complain.
It's a small enough community where everybody knows each other in that regard.
That control, I think, is different than what we're talking about.
One final comment I do want to say is, I do respect the city of Ventura and how they've approached it. They do seem to have a pretty strict approach to it. The one rental that I did within that week that I signed that homeowner up, I got a random call auditing for a forty-five-minute response time. So, you know, I do hear, and I'm not going to minimize what people do, there's always going to be those really extreme exceptions of things getting out of control. But it just seems like you can't just start creating an STVR in the city of Ventura and get away with just a haphazard way. And I don't have a lot of experience at that short of this last year, and I thought it was very, very well constructed.
If I could, I just, the idea in my mind is, somebody pointed out, they don't want, the HOA doesn't want to sit there and become the regulator. I don't even think we can empower the HOAs to be regulators according to our county council. But I think it's possible for an HOA to say, we want to be exempt from, you know, the interpretation that says, you know, hey, short-term vacation rentals don't fit in residential areas and a homeowners' association. And then that would allow, because the way things are enforced, quite frankly, I think it's peer pressure. Everybody knows everybody, and you don't want to, you know, if you're part of that community, you don't want to get a bad reputation in that community because you wouldn't rent to the whole fraternity, right? It just wouldn't happen at, you know, at Faria Beach and stuff. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'd just also point out that there are other areas in the county, like in my district, and not hearing concerns in Santa Rosa Valley, for example, and other places that people would probably like to come lease out of place. But the idea of the homeowners' association having a say in whether they want to be excluded would be an option. So our last speaker, I believe, is Derek Dammers.
Perfect pronunciation.
Most people miss that one. Thank you very much for having this meeting. It's really informative. I've stayed all over the world in Airbnbs, and it's been such a pleasant experience compared to staying in a hotel. And in a lot of ways, I want to give back and share that with visitors from other parts of the world. I live in unincorporated Ventura County in Oakview, on five and a half acres. It's just my wife and I, and we have a guest house. And we are owner occupants. We would be there when we would have a guest there. It would never turn into a problem whatsoever, much less to say that we're going to disturb anybody. You can't hit a three-hundred-yard drive and reach another house. So, and when we traveled, we went to Austin, Texas recently, where they had, were dealing with this same issue. And one of the things that they did was, is they made it legitimate if it was an owner occupant doing the rental, you know, with a short-term rental, which is a nice situation because it's not, you're not going to have a whole fraternity taking over an individual house. We live there, and we want to take these people in as our guests. And so it's a nice way for people to come to an area and meet local inhabitants and be part of that community. So it can be a very positive thing, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's a good point about the owner occupant. Supervisor Zaragoza?
Okay, I think we're done with the speakers.
I think so. I just want to make sure Mr. Estomo, whose card I called, isn't still not here. So that does complete our speakers, and we'll go to board comment.
Yeah, Madam Chair and Board of Supervisors. First of all, I want to thank, I want to thank Chris, you know, and his staff for doing an excellent job. You know, I think he followed our instructions.
And he may also want to give a response back to the public comment, too, so I might have Chris come back.
Okay, we'll have him back.
But I bet he doesn't.
And also, I want to thank all the speakers. You know, I think that's really, really good information that we got today. But I'd like to share a couple of items here, especially regarding Silver Strand and Hollywood Beach. You know, those areas are really specific. They have some specific issues having to do with lot sizes and parking problems. In fact, those two are huge factors, probably in more than any other part of the country. Some of the residents mentioned today, I mean, you can reach out and actually touch a neighbor's house. And the street parking is probably nonexistent, you know, in Silver Strand. There's a lot of problems there with the parking. I'm sure that other areas of the county have the same reason, but not as much as Silver Strand. Vacation rentals have a long history in Silver Strand and Hollywood Beach. That was a thing that people used to do before. They used to come to the beach in the summertime, and there was very little problems then. Owners rented out their houses for the weekend for a beach rental. Beach rental signs were there all the time for people to rent a piece of property, and they enjoyed that. They rented out the second home, and that worked out pretty good. But that's no longer the case. That is no longer the case because now with the internet, that's a game changer. And the game changer is Airbnb's and short-term rentals. And some people are buying homes just to make a buck. They buy the home, they rent it out from one day to thirty days. They have to live there at the expense of the community. And to me, that's really not reasonable. And this has become now a commercial business, as is said by a lot of the people. So my thinking right now is, the way to go would be with the home share. Home share would probably be, probably the best thing that I would like to see. Home shares because that owner can be responsible, that owner can then make sure that he's there when he rents out the property, make sure that the renters follow the rules, and make sure that they are following the rules and respect the people, because this is a quality of life issue. I would want to have it in my home or my neighborhood, have an SDRE next to my house, because that, I mean, it's just not a good, not a good thing to have. So I believe that the owners should be responsible, and I'm leaning more in that respect, to have the home share rental, have staff study that home rental business, and maybe we can go that route. But I believe that if they don't follow the rules, if we do go that route, then penalties could be assessed to individuals that do not follow the rules. But I believe that ninety percent, let me back up a little bit, I think with the Oxnard survey, there was ninety percent of the people that said they wanted the home share end of it, instead of opposed to the three-day or two-day or seven-day rentals. So I would really like to go with the home share end of it. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I could, I hope I can get this PowerPoint to come up, but would you try and see, and having success with the laptop right now? And if it doesn't, I'm not going to spend time on it. Okay. Yeah, that's all right. That's okay. It's really, I've got, I've modified things so much, listening to testimony. And again, I want to compliment everybody. I thought it was good testimony again today. Heard good speakers from both sides of this issue. The first thing I'd just like to point out is that I think we heard a few people talk about, if this is done right, and I think it's true about any business, if you do a business right, you could do a business in a residential neighborhood and have people go, that's not a problem. In fact, I'm sure it happens all the time. The issue isn't, are there some exceptions where people can do it right? The question is, is it the right thing to do in a residential neighborhood on a pervasive scale like this that is out there? So that's my first point. The second is, if somebody wants to run a business in a residential neighborhood, and that business is going to affect the other people's ability to have the peace and tranquility that we all expect when we buy a home in a residential neighborhood, when you buy a home in a residential neighborhood, you expect the people around you, your neighbors, to be residents. And if you want to run a business instead and sort of, for lack of a better word, violate that sort of basic tenet, the burden is on the person who's going to profit from that business to make sure that the regulations are, that they come up with, you know, almost they should be the ones to come up with, how are you going to do this? How are you going to make this function? But instead, this has all been turned on its head because there is so much money to be made by this proposition. I appreciate this woman talking about, she really likes Airbnb. You showed her a great way to do a business model, and I respect that you do it very well. But Airbnb's making a fortune off of this also, and they know the best way to do that is to keep frustrating local governments from trying to take even the most basic steps to make this work. So I would offer, over and over again in this county, I think we've said, that if you want to profit at the expense of your neighbor, the burden is on you to try to not unfairly disadvantage that neighbor in that situation. So again, there are lots of profits, and those profits make it very difficult to come up with good regulations that people won't try to get around. Airbnb is not going to cooperate with local governments, which they could make this very easy for local governments to do some kind of regulation. So at the last hearing, I asked, I was trying to take a very balanced approach to try to say, how could we do this? We heard from people. We heard from the grandmother that was, the only way she was surviving was the renting the place out kind of thing. And I asked for a number of grandfather provisions in there. If you've paid, if you've been paying the TOT tax up to that day, because you've been a good player, even if there may have been problems, I asked for that kind of grandfathering, other kinds of grandfathering things in. But basically, staff didn't put that in the report because they basically said, we don't have the legal ability to do that. We wouldn't be able to make those kind of distinctions. The third thing I'd like to share with the board, if we don't fix this, nobody will. These residents can't fix this on their own. They can't do it. If we just sit back, there's no question Airbnb's will grow and grow. The, you know, Kelsey Zimmermans and the Rachel Ulrichs will have, they'll go from seven and eleven, they'll go to, you know, twelve and fifteen, and it'll just grow and grow. And we'll have those impacts. I appreciate the gentleman said, Airbnb's been very nice. They're nice, but you have to look at what the impacts are on the residential communities that are out there that are suffering from that. They're nice, but you have to look at what the impacts are on the residential communities that are out there that are, that are suffering from that. So, I've spent a lot of time trying to find regulations that would sort of square the circle, that would find something. And I think you just find, they, they don't work. That's why people, that's why Santa Monica gave up. They just said, it doesn't, it doesn't work. We're going to, we're going to ban all of them except for actual home shares where it's the person's primary residence. Now, I've already expressed, I'm willing to work in those places where we say, we want tourists. Okay, then designate it a tourist area. Go ahead, have the battle about whether this is going to be tourist, designate a tourist area so everybody knows. This is a tourist area. If you're going to buy a home in this area or if you want to live in this area, you're living in a tourist area. But it's unfair to have people just be able to turn residential neighborhoods into tourist areas without the, the neighbors being involved in that. So, I don't see regulations enforced by undermanned local governments being able to outwit and outfox and be able to do anything rational with the amount of profits, with the Airbnb, with all the things that are, would be done to try to frustrate that. I give you just two examples. How about the, the entities that are saying, you're limited to six in the home, right? Just imagine trying to enforce that and the appeals and, no, it wasn't six and they were only visiting, they didn't spend the night and... Could you, I, I just, I know Chris Stevens' answer. I don't want to ask him, actually say it. I know Chris Stevens' answer, but he wouldn't want to be enforcing that. He wouldn't want to put his staff in, into enforcing that. Same thing on how many days that month was it rented out? And how do you, how do you keep track of that? Well, it's my cousin that came and he didn't rent it and, and all of that. So, the, a couple of other quick points and I'll be finished here. If this was the vocal minority, as, as was portrayed today, you wouldn't have all of those cities and counties up there trying to deal with this. This is an explosion in terms of the impact that is out there. It is not the vocal minority. And even if it was the vocal minority, the vocal minority would have the right to not have literally the Alpha Beta Capadorm come and legally be, you, you, you wouldn't put up with that in a normal residential neighborhood, you know, in, in terms of that. Quite frankly, I think whatever action we take, if we took the most, if we took the strongest action and said that, you know, just the interpretation should be, these are businesses and businesses don't fit in residential neighborhoods, which is what I think is actually the appropriate thing. And then, that doesn't mean this all goes away forever. It means the burden is on those people that want to do a business activity, come to us with a solution. Maybe it's the Faria Beach Homeowners' Companies Association coming and saying, we want to be exempt from that interpretation. Okay, let's have the hearing, let's get that clear and do that. You know, I think there are ways, that's would be the appropriate way. But again, put the burden on the people that are renting these homes out at very expensive. I mean, the prices in Ojai, the, Kelsey Zimmerman's testimony, I thought was spot-on in, in terms of, she's got a business, doesn't cater to tourists. And you're going to hear this, you're going to hear people say, hey, the tourists spend money and that's good. That's good for some businesses, but it's not good for all businesses in a community. It's not good for her employees and that's not good for her business. And we have to be a whole community, not just saying, hey, what, what kind of tourist area do we want to be? Tourism important industry in Ventura County. Let's figure out where the tourists should be and where the residents should be. That's what Mammoth has decided to do. Mammoth has said, okay, this is where the tourists are going to be and this is where our residents and employees working in those tourist industries have to have a place also. So, I thought that was great testimony and just a number of people really spoke very well. So, the final thing I'd leave you with is, I'm trying to craft, I'm trying to have us take the next step. We will not come up with an ordinance today or anything else. The board's going to be dark until September 13th. I'm sure we're going to direct staff to come back with something. So, there will be time for people to evaluate it. But I would like to find out from the board, if the board is receptive to the idea of saying, we need a more appropriate interpretation. We need to define short-term vacation rentals as what they are. They're businesses. They're not residents. So, define that and then direct staff to come with, with appropriate solutions where we can. That's what, if, if the board, if, if, if there are three people on the board, if there are two other people that say, you know, that's an appropriate starting spot. I'm willing to work with the community, with the tourist community, with our staff, with the other board members to find all the appropriate exceptions. But start with, protect the neighborhood first. The residential quality of the neighborhood. If we don't make that sacrosanct, I kind of don't know what, you know, what is our core value? That should be a core value for us. Make that, and then, let's start working on the exceptions. And, and I'm open to homeowners association's exceptions. I'm open to home share exceptions under limited circumstances. But I don't want to, with the home share, create a loophole where it's, well, it's grandma that, you know, you know, and, and, you know, and so, I don't know how, I don't know how to do it for this gentleman who I completely trust is going to run it just fine, you know, his guest house. I don't know how to do that. And so, I think the burden should be on him to work with our staff to say, this is, these are the regulations that would make that happen. I don't know how to do that for, she should say, these are the things that, I think there is, there is a way that you could accommodate some appropriate businesses in residential neighborhoods. But have them jump the hurdles, have that, have the burden be on them that they're protecting the neighborhood and start with that first interpretation. Even if we start with that interpretation, I would leave you with this, and that is, and this will be my, my last comment, that it would be quite some time before we actually enforce that interpretation. I'm not saying, hey, we make that interpretation and that's it. Because we have all kinds of things we have to adjust, we have the people that are doing it and everything else. But that ought to be the trajectory that we would go down. So, I'm curious with my colleagues, whether they would be supportive of that interpretation. Because I think that then gives us the strongest legal defense when people come after us. We're not as, you know, we're not grandfathering some in, we're not picking winners and losers and that. We're going through an appropriate definition. This is a business and now this is how we deal with businesses when they are asked for an exception to operate. Wedding venues in residential neighborhoods. We do it, but the burden is on the wedding venue to get that permit and all that. Thank you very much.
I would ask your opinion on the concept, and we do it in other places, in terms of if the neighbors are okay with it, you get the signatures of the neighbors, you know, that that would be something that we would consider giving a permit for. It, it just seems that there are, instead of a blanket ban, which this could turn into over the entire county, there actually may be places that are residential, but let's say they are estate lots with, you know, 20 acres and that, and that's not something that's going to bother the neighbors. But I, I would just want to be cautious about putting the same rules across the whole county. One thought, and I think one way to get around that is by saying, you know, if the residents don't mind, you know, it's something that isn't an issue with them and you've got the signatures of them saying that's okay, now why should we say no?
I, it's, it's a fair, I, I think it's a fair thing to look at. I would just offer, in, in my research on it, it is a very difficult thing to set up. Because it, it, it creates this neighbor versus neighbor, peer pressure, all of that kind of stuff. That doesn't mean it can't happen. But again, the burden of proof ought to be on the people who want to start running a business in a residential neighborhood to come up with, so how can we do this so that, you know, maybe it's, at, at the end of each year, what, what, I mean, what do you do? At the end of each year, the neighbors have to vote again?
Yeah, I think it would have to have a...
How do you contact them? How do you run those votes?
With a lot of this, I think we need to make sure that it's for a limited time so we can revisit it. Whether it's a conditional use permit that lasts for a year or, you know, something that we need to revisit. But we, I know they do it with roosters in some cities. You've got to get all your neighbors saying, okay, it's okay to have roosters in our county. We do it with film permitting, the idea of just checking the neighbors.
The advantage of that is, is it does mean the person's going to be much more respectful. So, I'm, I, if, if we started, if we started with this proper interpretation, I'm open to having that conversation, but again, the burden of proof is, come up with, how do you do that so that it's workable for staff? How does staff do that? How, how do you do that so it's workable for neighborhoods and you don't create wars in neighborhoods and that kind of stuff?
Supervisor Ford?
I think, I kind of understand where you're coming from. I struggle with some of it. Because part, part of it, we don't have a definition when you say a business. I mean, is a business when you rent it one weekend a month, one weekend a year? Or, you know, you rent it to your uncle who comes from whatever, you know, across the country every year and you're doing that? So, we have to, we've got to start off with some definitions because that's, like Supervisor Park, you're clear. That gets kind of blanket. We've got to be careful of that because, I mean, I don't think probably most of these people say, you know, oh, no, there is, that guy, that, my, my neighbor's sister comes out every year and they rented a week from them and that's not a big deal. And their uncle comes out and it's two weeks, probably not a big deal. I think what they're concerned with is every weekend, there's somebody new every, I think that's when we could talk about the idea of rental as a business, we've got to be careful that we define what that is and, and how many times that is and stuff. Because a lot of these people have probably had people next to them for years that, you know, I've seen this kind of the same people come out every year or somebody new, it's not a big deal. Now that it's, like you said, the Airbnb, it gets every weekend, every, you know, every five days, every seven days it's rented. That becomes probably a little bigger for them and it becomes more problematic. So, I want to make sure we're careful. And then, there is other areas where a gentleman come up and like Faria and those places where that has always been a, pretty much a beach community that has been there. Non-residential people come up and we are friends or whatever. And so, I guess I'm just trying to find that balance without taking away these people. Because the other side of this too is, these people live in those communities? If they ever want to sell that house, all of a sudden, you say no? And then, nobody can rent those and all of a sudden, boom, they're done? And all those investors and all those people that dump 150 homes on, you know, Silver Strand and the beach, they're going to lose the value of their homes. And I mean, we, we've got to protect, there's a lot of balancing protection here that, that goes on. We've got to try to figure that too, so.
Could I, I appreciate the conversation. If I could, I, I really, I mean, I think those are appropriate things. With regard to the issue of what I think you're really talking about is de minimis business use, you know, occasionally doing it, et cetera. You know, essentially, that's sort of how this evolves, you know? Nobody really ruled that this was legal, but it just, you know, it, it started happening. But my point is, you're going to have, we'll be lucky if we get reasonable enforcement, even if we go with something as clean as, hey, those are businesses, you're not allowed to have them. That still, doesn't mean they won't happen. It'll be difficult to do. But if you have a strong rule, it's easy for the neighbors to overlook it. Your neighbors don't turn you in, it's, it's not an issue, you know, it's easy. But if you have a rule that you start to craft the exceptions in, you just put a red flag out there for all the people and, and, you know, the, their lawyers to, to try to, oh, look, this fits under the de minimis exception. So, I, I'm, I'm not trying to get, you know, where grandma who comes out or somebody rents it. I think that, I think that kind of thing can happen just because it, we will, we'll never be able to enforce it tight enough to catch those. We'll be lucky if we catch the most extreme. So, that's one side of that.
I agree with you on that. It's just that some people, you can't rent here, so you never can have anybody come around. I wasn't renting, I just, somebody let me use my, their property without all the complaints and all the problems.
Again, so if you have a strong rule, it's better than if you have a, a rule that has the exceptions in it and then you don't, you know, and, and then you're fighting that. So, that, that's one. The other is, you know, people can still rent their homes if we do this. It's just that the definition ought to be 30 days or more. You have to rent the home for 30 days. Then, that's a resident, somebody that's there and actually, you know, what I mean. So, we're not ending the rental of homes. We're ending this exceptional rental of two days, the weekend, the fraternity, you know, literally, it's not a residence at all.
And that's why I mentioned, you know, the home share is probably one of the, I'd like to have staff look at that. Home share is probably one of the reasonable ways of doing it.
One way to control.
They can control it, the owner has to be there. And I think maybe that's maybe a, a, one of the solutions.
That'd be one of the exceptions.
Exceptions, yeah.
Thank you. And thank everyone for coming in today to speak to this. As you can hear, it's, it's a tough issue in the sense of, is there a happy medium? I, you know, I have the Airbnb app on my phone. I, I've used them. And that doesn't mean that that model fits every community by any means. And nor should I think we position our county in, in any litigious position to have an outright ban where we then are looking at potentially litigation. I, you know, I, I think what we try to do here is we really do try to see what's, what's, what's the community's desires first for that quality of life. And then, two, what, how to make something fit, a rule fit that's going to be as applicable to the broader community and, than, than not. And we, we have tools, we have our zoning laws, we have CUPs, we have director permission discretion. I, I look at the list that you provided in the PowerPoint, Mr. Stevens, and see that Monterey County is on the list of one that does permitted and regulated. And I'd like more information on what did they end up with? Because I think Monterey is probably closest to being like us in the sense of county size, coastal county, agriculture, tourist attractions and long history of, of housing stock that's, has decades of, of history there. So, I'd like to see what they're, what they ended up with. I think to start with a homestay position where it has to be owner occupied, potential rental use would be something to further consider and explore. The horror stories from, from these folks out here who've experienced and to have your entire block that has been a, a family, community-centered neighborhood turn into six or seven rentals is, is unacceptable. I live on a cul-de-sac, I can't imagine that. I would hate that. And so, so finding that happy medium. And how can we, how can we design the right tools without going into a whole, well, we are in a general plan update. Do we want to do a whole revision of zoning code? No, probably not, to the degree of, of, you know, designating tourist areas that, that may or may not be acceptable uses. And also, to, to really hear from, are there communities that they say, well, this is okay with us? Faria Beach has that history. And I, I think other areas in the county probably do and that it may be more acceptable to. So, finding the happy meeting, medium on this, I'm not there yet, there's more work to be done. I'd like some more information.
If I, if, if I could, I appreciate that, you know, your first comment was, you know, you don't want to do a complete ban and open ourselves up to litigation. I, I don't, I'm not the lawyer and I think we want to ask our county council. But it strikes me that we actually may more likely protect ourselves from litigation if we have a clear definition. Right now, I think if we try to do some regulations, we may actually have, we may be opening ourselves up to more litigation because we haven't clearly defined these things as, because why are we regulating these residents versus those residents? Well, that's because we haven't said what a residence is, we actually open ourselves up. So, I, I don't think I want to put county council on the spot, all right? But that would be one of the questions, that'd be one of the questions I'd like them to research for us, is what are the benefits of us being clean about identifying these things as businesses? So, therefore, we do have the ability to come up with appropriate exceptions when we find them. The neighbors are willing to do a home share, et cetera. You know, but we're allowed to put those rules on because we clearly identified these things as businesses.
I think the definition that we need to, and I know that county council's going to say, should we have commercial and residential? And that's what's happening now with the, with the STRs. There's commercial and residential and I, I don't think that's appropriate. So, we need a clear definition, are STRs commercial or are they residential?
You've got to be careful a little bit of that.
I think it'd be liquid.
Because you go to the beach and it's all residential and then there's a grocery store right there at the corner and so there's a mix.
But is zone appropriate?
I think it would be a business in a home. That's what we're talking about, not zoning it to a commercial.
But if we have, we have a grocery store at the beach, they're a zone commercial.
Yeah, I understand that. But I also want to be careful because there could be somebody who says, I'm down at the beach and I'm, and I'm not renting my house, but I do run my business out of my house. I want to be careful of that. We allow certain things that you can do for those kinds of things.
That's a business in a home.
Yeah, you know, that's what I'm saying. So, I want to be careful that we don't just blanket that. Because I don't want to stop anybody else, but I know where you guys are coming from. I've just, you know, there's always unintended consequences that we hurt somebody else. Hold on, I'm not renting and you guys are killing me with these kind of things.
Well, this is a great... Well, this is a great example. A business in a home is a lot like home share, that you're at the home. But what this, what this woman who was having the, you know, the fraternity party next to her house, that's not a business in a home, you know, by any means. But county council looked like he started to say something and I don't know whether he wants to or not.
I was only going to make a non-controversial observation.
What's the fun in that, right?
We were going to agree, it's always better if the law is clear.
So, could I try this? I'm really just in good faith trying to do this.
We're trying to give some direction, right? That's what they're asking.
Yeah. So, that's what I'm saying. So, could I try this just to see what, and that would be to ask our staff to examine the board of supervisors, the benefits of the board of supervisors taking a position of interpreting short-term business, short-term vacation rentals. And that would be rentals under 30 days as businesses. And then have our staff look at, look at the advantages and I suppose disadvantages. But actually, I just want to stay at the advantages. The advantage of doing that. And what kind of exceptions could be considered? That would be exceptions that those who are profiting, those who want to do it, have to develop with our staff to come up with some workable thing. Like if it's somebody, you know, we had a couple of people testify last time, said, you know, I've been doing this for 20 years. I'm the only one that does it on my street. Everybody on my street loves me. Okay, that person has to somehow get a permit to say, I want to run a business on my street. And everybody on the street says it's okay and they get permission and it goes through. But again, it puts the burden on them. And so, it would be whether it's the neighbor or home share. Home share is being done by Santa Monica. And so, examine home share and, but come with us in terms of, but again, the home share burden would be, the person who wants to rent their home out has to show us that it's not having that negative impact. So, it's not a sham home share even that was out there.
The motion's getting kind of long.
Well, so I've got two. You know, so I got two right there.
Because they're typing it up there.
Okay, I'll go back and re-say the thing, but I want to try to be clear mostly. And that is that we start with that definition and we ask staff for that advantage of that definition. And then we ask staff, and I'm just using examples, we ask staff to also come with exemptions that the person who wants to run the business can demonstrate to staff satisfaction that it's not, that it's appropriate, an appropriate exemption in a residential neighborhood. But we, that holds up as the priority. Residential neighborhood's got to be protected first and not sham-protected, not, well, here, here's the phone number. Just want to go with something that would be, here's the phone number of the property owner and you can call them and complain. You know, that, that doesn't work for the, when the fraternity moves in next door somewhere.
If I could, just the clarification of a business, I think you refer to something like a home occupants, a business for the occupant, right? It's not that it's changing the resident, the resident to a different zone or anything. You're just talking about, you need a business license, for example. You need a business permit from the county. And that's, that's your, that's how you would regulate it from that perspective?
Not just come down and get a TOT license and it's okay. But no, I mean, we're saying that, that requires.
Well, you keep referring to it, we're going to call it a business.
But I think, I think it has to start with that.
But it's not, it's not the building that's the business or is it the person who owns it?
It's the activity that is the business. If somebody, if that grandma who's trying to make her mortgage payment, if that grandma's trying to make her mortgage payment and she wants to rent a room out for the year, that'll help her make her mortgage payment. And that would not be restricted, right? That's perfectly fine. But if that grandma wants to rent that out every weekend and she happens to live at the beach and it's to a different person every weekend and there's significantly more, significant more money there, there should be a different hurdle that that person has to jump through. And it's not just get a business license. And that's what staff would come back, what should those hurdles be? That's what I would like to have staff come back with in terms of the application of that. That's what I think would be best for our county.
I understand where you're coming from that. But then there's this definition of residential. Because we heard you even agreed that Faria Beach is not really residential. It's really, so when the way you're doing across the board like that, that means every single property in the county is under that versus then all those people got to come and we got to have thousands of people come back in. So, when you say that.
Great. Let me, let me help with that. I mean, I've been very clear with Faria. One of the things, and I think staff's already got it, staff mentioned, there could be some kind of exception for homeowners association. All's that, you know, what I think could be something staff comes with is they just come with a thing that says, the Faria Beach Homeowners Association has petitioned the board of supervisors that we not apply that definition in their homeowners association. That's it, all right? We don't apply that definition. And that could be, you could make those, it's not every homeowner would have to come and do that. If the homeowners association like Faria wanted to do that, they could come and staff would just come up with, and if they, let's say we said, let's say we say this is going to take effect next June 1st. And so, we announce this as a policy in October. And that gives everybody from October to June 1st to get all the adjustments. And we say, okay, we're going to start having this policy, you know, on June 1st.
And you're making the assumption that everybody listens to us.
But the point is, they need a permit, correct?
That's right.
They need a permit. How we structure, you want to make sure they have a permit. And there are certain entities that may not need a permit, like Faria Beach, if they meet certain requirements.
Sure.
So, okay, well, I guess part of that is, who does the permit? Is that building and safety? Is that planning? Is that, I mean, there's, we're adding a little bit of.
Well, that's.
The assessor, the treasurer.
That's, that's what, with this direction, which is not as broad as our original mandate, that's what I would hope our professionals would come back with their recommendation for us, you know. If you're going to have a discretionary permit for an exception to our rule, what's the most efficient way to do that? What's the way to do that that doesn't, you know, put staff in that?
And while you can get exemptions if you decide that your homeowners association like Faria Beach does not want to be considered in that, I think that you should also have the exception regarding the, you know, if you can get all the residents around you to support it. I mean, make it easier and help us to make sure that we can regulate it.
Can I ask Chris something real quick, though? Chris, if I can ask you.
I'm fine.
I need to get you in the middle. You can't just sit there and say, oh, so. I mean, you hear what's going on, what's being talked. How do you, in the next, we'll have you come back in six weeks with all these plans you have. Just kidding. How do, how do you see yourself even coming up with that? I know you're talking about holding public forums, you've got Realtors, you've got people, you've got, how are we going to know what really works, what doesn't work versus? I kind of put you on the spot here. I guess I'm, I just, we have some ideas. I think that's clear. But I'm sure the public has a lot of other ideas and a lot of, we talked about Faria Beach and maybe 10 other locations that are just like that or 100, I don't know.
Well, the, I think at this point, it would make sense for staff to take what we've heard from the board and try and crystallize it in something a little more specific. And then at that time, going out to the communities and talking to them about that, getting their input would make sense. It might be a little difficult at this point for us to do that without perhaps creating some confusion or even perhaps setting some expectations that aren't in keeping with what the board's direction is. So, I think it would make some sense for staff to do that. There's been a lot of suggestions made by the board. I think we need to do a little work and make sure we're on track with the board before we go further out into the community.
Supervisor Floyd, could I, could I help? I'll try to say something shorter and clearer. And that would be that we direct staff, right, to look at us taking this new interpretation where short-term vacation rentals are not considered residents. And, and asking staff to bring back sort of the best way for us to make that the policy with three things that they go to the, that they sort of advertise to everybody and say, this board, just based on here and what, this board is willing to consider an exemption for a homeowners association that asks us, an exemption for home share, and an exemption where you can get some significant number of your neighbors to agree. Those are the three things. That's what I've heard from the board. That's it. And there can be other things that come up, but that would give them a very defined task. They could go to the public and they would say, we're thinking of a home share exemption. Tell us what you think works and doesn't work with home share. They could say, we're thinking of a neighborhood exemption. Tell us what you think works and doesn't work with neighborhood exemption. We're thinking of a homeowners association, what works. And, you know, I've already heard back from homeowners saying, we don't want to be enforcing fines and all, you don't. Tell us what works for you. So, we get this report back with those three.
I could start with that. The only thing I'd ask, Chris, you do, is to come back and define what those are. Give us some definition. We can agree on the definition too. Because when you say home share, what are you going to say home share is?
That would be, I mean, home share is where the, you know, the resident is renting out their own home that they're currently living in.
I understood.
But outside of that, I agree with you. That's what they would get the input on. What's the definition of home share?
Because you said where the, where the person rents it out and they're there for a month or they're there for a year. Or are they renting it for, because remember, the person's still there. They're renting it every weekend. They're renting it for a week. Those are the kind of definitions you're going on.
A definition right now that I think we would agree on, because it would fit our thing, is if they're renting it out for a year, it's a residence. It fits the definition. If they're renting it out for six months, it's a residence. If they're renting it out for the weekend, it's not a residence any longer. And then it, that's, that, those are the ones we want to find out what's the right policy for handling those.
Right. Yeah, I mean, yeah, okay. That's what I looked for. So, definition, we had some. So, when we say certain things, it's clear and people understand what we mean by those definitions too.
Let me throw one thing in too then. Is it considered commercial or residential, if we do go that route? Can you look at that too? Is that, is that business going to be considered a commercial or is it going to be in a residential area? I know we talked about a grocery store.
I don't think we can talk about rezoning, right?
I don't know. I mean, we could.
No.
Yeah, if you were to designate it a commercial activity, it would not be allowed in a residential zone. Designated in, as a business, and for example, we have a home occupancy permit and a home occupancy standards within the zoning ordinance, which are that home business, if you will. That sounds like that's kind of the realm that you're looking at.
But a home share is not considered commercial right now, even if you rent it out for, if the person is there, he rents it out for a three-day, a room for two or three days or whatever, that's not considered a commercial.
That's correct.
Within the residential area.
And I believe the board direction is that perhaps it should be considered as such and that we should look at how to define that within the construct of our current zoning ordinance.
At least not considered residential. And, you know, I'll point out, remember, there was a list of about nine or 10 that permitted this in commercial zones, but not in residential zones. So, our definite, if we did this, we would be in that category, which is, we're just saying our residential zones are what we're protecting, but people want to do vacation rental in commercial zones and all that other stuff. This wouldn't stop that at all. So, it'd still allow all of that to take place.
So, what was the three?
The three things would be, the three things, the three things would be, home share, if, you know, some kind of neighborhood, neighbor approval and homeowner association exception, right? Workable policies for those three things. And I think if we, if we did that, we might have something that would at least give us a start on regulating a very difficult thing here. But, yeah, all of those would be some permit for those three things, right?
Just, just real quick if I made sure.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure, Mr. Stevens, while we're here and fresh in our minds, any questions that you have, just to clarify what you're, what you need to do.
Maybe the only question I would have that might be helpful to get some further direction from the board is I think a number of the board members made a comment about communities being distinct and unique and being different and perhaps some treatment of them differently. I don't know that what you've asked us to look at here would address that issue. And I just want to, just want to ask whether or not that's something that you want us to consider as we move forward.
I think, I'm sure, you know, the, you showed in the map that the, the areas that are being affected are the beach areas. You know, basically the beach areas and that maybe we ought to concentrate on those stuff.
I'm not, I'm not opposed, I'm not opposed to an examination of other unique communities that either should be in or should be out. I mean, they, like, like I said before, they should all be, we should all follow the same consistent definition and then you exempt yourself out of it is far better. So, I'm not opposed to finding out other areas that should be exempt, so.
Yeah, and you make a good point, Chris, because the problem is some areas don't have homeowners associations. They can't really exempt themselves out that way. It's really hard.
So, anyway, so if that's, if that's, if that helps the board to know that that, that would be fine if you wanted to, you know, if you wanted to explore that. But it's, but it should be from the standpoint of, we have a common policy legally and then you exempt yourself out of that policy.
Okay. When you go out and do this, it's going to have a lot of figures on how you're going to, how am I going to be exempted or how am I, you know, and my neighbors, we all, we like the idea of whatever, so. Yeah, this whole, you know, I think you're right. You can't have a blanket policy because that affects people.
And maybe one last thing that I would ask, given the comments that you've made and others earlier made about going out to the public, I want to make sure we have a good understanding of your expectation of what that means.
Yeah, I don't think we're at the point of going to the, you know, having to do workshops throughout the county. We're first trying to get our hands on what we think would be the way to go and then we can, I think, have the public endpoint at that point. But I think first we need to get, we first need to see what we get. And then maybe put a, some kind of, when are you comfortable in being able to put this together?
I knew that question was coming.
You know what, it might be nice to shoot for having, having something in place for the next.
It always comes down to follow the money.
The middle of October for the first?
You want me to give more time?
I'm thinking to have something in place be in, before the next summer season if it's approaching. So, that, that's going to take a couple of processes of coming to the board, right?
I would think somewhere in perhaps end of October, early November, we could be back to the board with this additional discussion. I think that's feasible. I'll need, I'll need to confirm that with my planning director.
Okay.
Yeah.
Even delay.
And I would add, for the benefit of the folks that are here today, while there won't be workshops, as you said, we have been posting all this information on our, the RMA website. There's a tab there for short-term vacation rentals. We'll keep that updated. That's where this report was and I would, you know. Again, we've also created a mailing list. If there's anyone here who hasn't been on our email list, you can provide that information to us. We will add it to that list so that we can continue to get the information.
And many have put their addresses on these cards, so you can add these to that list also. And if there's also a possible link where they can actually submit their comments, that would be great.
That's right. It is, I'll give it a plug. It is strcomments@ventura.org.
Did you hear that? It's.
So, so, so the motion would be for the staff to come, to come up with a new definition of STRs and also for an exemption policy for those three that I identified. Homeowners association, resident, you know, compliance and home share. As well as staff's input thoughts on whether other distinct communities should be exempt from that new definition. Is that as clean as I could make it there, right? Okay.
All right, we have a motion.
We're going to come back.
Yeah.
Did you grab that, Laurie? Did you have comfortable? We have the, there were three points specific and we added the fourth one that, from Supervisor Floyd, looking at specific areas to that on a geographical basis.
Chris clearly understands it.
Madam Chair, certainly we've heard loudness from our beach communities in Ojai, but as Supervisor Bennett said early on, this is going to come to many places in our county. I've heard from constituents in Camaro Heights and they're not an HOA and, but they're, they're seeing homes up there that have beautiful views and they're turning over to this type of view. So, I think that's, looking at, one of the tools I know planning has is they have at least some information in the database of who, how many homeowner groups are there and neighborhood groups. So, we can use that as kind of that first flush of if we're, if we have this direction and we start to get information compiled to, you know, be able to share that and get feedback from them. The Realtors Association, we should hear from them. They probably have heard lots of experiences, good, bad and otherwise. So, I think we've got work yet to do.
I, I think that's really a, a good point. And I think that the, you know, you go back to the fundamental question, our housing stock, who should it be for? Should it be for the tourist? Because in this beautiful place, you could turn over an awful lot of the housing stock of Ventura County to tourists, and it won't be just Ojai and the beach. And so if we don't take a stand, it will not happen. It won't get fixed any other way. So, appreciate the board's support for this.
Can I add that one more time?
The, the motion? Okay, so the, the four, there are four items now.
The new, the, a, a new definition of short-term rentals, defining up, so they're no longer defined as residents, and then with, with four potential areas where there could be exemptions to that definition or that impact. And that would be home shares, residents, and any neighbors approving, homeowners associations, or unique communities.
And I, I would just from a, just from a legal planning aspect, there's still a home, but it's a business, a home being used as a business.
Mr. Rick, staff to report back with new definitions in short-term rentals, no longer defined as residents, four potential areas of home shares, residents, and homeowners association, or unique communities?
That's right.
And I, I just have to say, you can't say they're no longer defined as residents. You just, they are residents that are being used for businesses.
No longer, short-term renting is no longer defined as a, as a residential activity. Is that what?
Okay.
Right.
Is only a residential?
Short-term rental is only a residential?
It can no longer be defined as only.
Yes, it only.
Okay.
I'm trying to say it like.
I'm sure staff will fix it when it comes back, but I just, I just don't want to give the message out there that they're no longer residences, because they are still residents. If we could please vote. Thank you all for your comments. They were really helpful. You're hopefully all on the list. If not, get on it, so that you, we can keep you, you engaged in helping us on this process. And we are adjourned.